Thank you, Megan. Good morning, everyone. Welcome back to the October 9th of the Kentucky Board of Education. A few notes for our members. This is the Department of Education members participating in this meeting. We will have to be very clear about what may be needed. What may be needed?
You can be inside the Teams meeting, but you have to have your speaker and microphone here.
Testing. Okay. All right, we'll try to pick back up there. Sorry, a little bit of audio difficulty this morning. As I was saying, those board members who are participating remotely, good morning, Dr. Thompson. I can see you right here. The video is, you must keep your video streaming and be sure that you can be seen throughout the duration of the meeting. KBE members, KD staff, and all visitors are required to wear face coverings at this meeting. Thank you so much for complying with that. KBE members and speakers, you may remove masks when speaking or if you are socially distanced from all other attendees. Members participating remotely, please mute your microphone when not speaking. However, all discussions must be broadcast to the public, so be sure your microphone is not on mute when you do speak. For any items that require action, because we do have remote participation, we will require a roll call vote. When you are called on, just say your name and aye or no for your vote. And at this time, don't forget to silence all electronic devices that might disrupt the audio in the room. And Dr. Brewer, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Present.
Claire Bass.
Present.
Holly Ledward.
Holly Ledward here.
Jamie Bowlin.
Jamie Bowlin here.
Elvis Johnson.
Elvis Johnson here.
Patrice McQuerry.
Patrice McQuerry here.
I'm sorry.
Randy Poe.
Here.
Sharon Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd here.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, present.
Dr. Aaron Thompson.
Aaron Thompson here.
Soliana Mespin.
Soliana Mespin here.
Allison Blom.
Allison Blom here.
All right, thank you so much. And again, so glad that you were all here today. Thanks for your attendance this morning. At this point, we will turn to items of internal board business. And the first item is the approval of a set of summary minutes. That includes August 4, KBE annual retreat, August 5, regular meeting, August 12, special meeting, and September 21, the follow-up reschedule of annual retreat meeting. You have all of those minutes in your portal? Are there any corrections to any of the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
No, lady.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. Do we have seconds?
Elvis Johnson, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. On that motion and second, any further discussion about those minutes? Hearing none. Now we have Dr. Brewer. Please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Yes.
Claire Bass.
Yes.
Holly Ledward.
Here. Yes. Sorry.
Jamie Bowlin.
Jamie Bowlin, yes.
Elvis Johnson.
Yes.
Patrice McQuerry.
Patrice McQuerry, yes.
Randy Poe.
Yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Yes.
Lee Todd.
Yes.
Lou Young. Yes.
All right, thank you so much. The next internal item is approval of outside employment requests. And General Counsel Todd Allen is here to present those two and just remind us about why we are doing this, filling out this form. Thank you, Todd.
Good morning. Thank you, Sharon Young. As the board will recall, it's your last meeting, last regular meeting that is. You all updated your policy manual based on some guidance from the Executive Branch Ethics Commission. And that is to provide for and require the state board members' request outside employment. That is an Executive Branch Ethics Commission rule. Since that time, we have circulated a form and received that back from two of the members. And that is in the portal for you to review. You'll also find in the secure portion of the portal a memorandum for each of those that I've prepared for you. As the ethics officer for the agency, I recommend approval of both of those, but we'll take them individually. So the first one is for Dr. Lou Young. And she is seeking outside employment approval for her employment with the University of Kentucky. I'll pause and see if there are any questions about that before we take action. And--
Should I step out of the room or stay? Okay.
You can stay. But I think Dr. Young is recusing herself, so we may have Dr. Robinson take over as far as calling for a motion and a vote to approve.
If there are no further questions, I'd like the board to entertain a motion to approve the outside employment request for Dr. Lou Young.
Holly Ledward, I need that we accept that.
Thank you. There's a second. Randy Poe, second. All right.
We can do a voice vote.
Can we do a voice vote? If we may, all those in favor of this motion to approve the outside employment request for Dr. Lou Young, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Thank you very much. The motion clearly carries. Thank you. Here.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. And the next one that we have is for Joanne Adams, seeking employment, outside employment approval with Sweet Homes Fund LLC. Again, that is listed in your portal for your review. And there are no conflicts between that entity and the agency. And again, as the ethics officer, I'm recommending approval of that request.
Any questions for Todd about Joanne's form? Okay, hearing none. I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the outside employment request for Joanne Adams. Do we have such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. A motion from Ms. Bass. Do we have a second?
I'll have a second.
Oh, thank you. Second from Ms. Bowlin. Any further discussion?
I will recuse myself for the vote.
Excellent. Thank you, as noted. And at this point, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving this request, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you so much. And Todd, thanks for putting all of those new structures in place. And I know some other board members are still working on their forms, so we'll see those, we'll entertain those individually as those come in. The next item is a discussion and approval of our 2021-22 Kentucky Board of Education goals. And this is continuing our conversation from both parts of the retreat. So if you would, do take a look at the goals that are included in the portal. And I think we have some slides. Yes, thank you so much, Meredith. So as you, I think the deck is also included in the portal. No? Okay, so as we take a look at our goals, just as a reminder, we had a chance to, we set the goals for 21, excuse me, 2021. And now we're looking at the next iteration of those goals as we move forward. Next slide, please. In the case of, I'm sorry, I can't see as far as I thought I used to be able to see. Sorry. So we did include some preamble language to the goals, as you will see in this, on this slide, related to our commitment to the pursuit of educational equity, which is defined as the promotion of access, opportunity, and advancement of all individuals, especially those in historically underserved communities. As I noted at retreat, Dr. Glass has often used this definition, in fact, I would almost attribute it to you, Commissioner, but this, what I really appreciate about this broad definition of equity is that it does span the entire Commonwealth to the more rural areas, as well as to our suburban and urban school districts. So really keeping in mind that anchor around equity is important in this preamble. We go on to pledge to develop authentic partnerships with other Kentucky agencies and education stakeholders in order to strengthen our efforts to maximize impact. So that language has been cleaned up since the retreat, but again, by way of situating our conversation around our goals against those values that you as individual and collective board members have expressed since our time together. Next slide, please. The first goal then, one of your all's comments from the last session was to make sure that we strengthened the verbs to illustrate our commitment to these goals and our fervor about these goals as we move forward. So this is championing the work of the Coalition to reimagine learning in Kentucky. And I'm always reminded of that meeting with you, Will Boyd, in March of 2020, when we began to really dream together about what the future of learning in Kentucky might look like. Any questions or comments about Goal 2 as it has landed for today's consideration? I want to make sure we capture both the sentiments and the technical comments that you guys shared at the retreat. So feel free to come back and jump in before the final approval, but let's take a look at Goal 2. This one really targets very specifically more of our equity aspirations. And this is to amplify our voice in support of minority students, their families, and minority educators by not only listening to their concerns and aspirations. This really captures your all's sentiments, but also pledging to leverage those concerns and aspirations to guide our actions. And this includes continued support for the work that the department is doing to foster a culture of anti-racism and further equity within our public schools. Any thoughts or feedback about Goal 2? You'll notice that we also reordered these based on your feedback from the last retreat as well, in terms of a bit of prioritization of the goals. Next slide, please. Goal 3. This is really our partnership goal. And thinking about Dr. Thompson, Lieutenant Governor Coleman, Kentucky General Assembly, the Governor's Office, our partners at the Chamber of Commerce, Workforce Development, that kind of broad array of partners in cooperation with the Education Professional Standards Board, very specifically. We pledge to advance policies and regulation reviews that strengthen the future education, excuse me, future teacher pipeline and increase the qualities and competencies of Kentucky's educator workforce. So another one that really keys into that partnership precept that I mentioned earlier. Notice 2, that we have some specific action embedded there around emphasizing the critical need for increased representation of teachers of color. Any questions or feedback about Goal number 3? All right, next slide, please. Goal 4. Promote the creation and implementation of statewide profile of a learner or profile of a graduate, identifying the knowledge, skills, and competencies that all Kentucky learners need to become successful citizens. Working back to that conversation of March 2020, I always credit Claire Bass for bringing to our conversations early on how important it is to get that whole child recognition, that this is not just about the academic preparation of our students, but preparing them for life and career beyond high school graduation. And notice, again, an emphasis on partnerships here, including the Commonwealth Education Continuum with Dr. Thompson, as well as the Kentucky Chamber of Commerce. Questions or feedback about Goal number 4? All right, next slide, please. Goal 5. This one is around, this is a big part of our advocacy work that focuses in on support for early childhood education. To read, it says, galvanize support of strong developmentally appropriate early childhood education as a path to equity by taking steps toward fully funded, full-day kindergarten and universal public preschool. This one is very much in keeping with the General Assembly's vision of full-day kindergarten funding in the last budget and our continued advocacy for full-day funded preschool, kindergarten with support for preschool moving forward. Questions or comments about Goal 5?
I see your eyes, Patrice McQuerry.
It makes me happy. It does make me happy. It would probably be indecorous for you to do a somersault. No, many thanks to those early childhood experts that sit on this board, but definitely resonates across the membership of this board as well. So I will pause and give you an opportunity to comment on, ask any questions about the next year's board goals as they exist in this agenda item. All right. I would then ask the board to entertain a motion to approve our 2021-22 KBE goals. Do I have such a motion?
Sharon Young, I'm happy to make that motion.
Thank you. Have a motion from Mrs. McQuerry. Do I have a second?
I'm sure I'll second that motion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. On that motion and second, any further discussion? Many thanks to Meredith for wordsmithing and really capturing the words and the sentiments that we've expressed over time. And Dr. Brewer, if you would, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, yes.
Claire Bass.
Claire Bass, yes.
Holly Ledward.
Holly Ledward, yes.
Jamie Bowlin.
Jamie Bowlin, yes.
Elvis Johnson.
Elvis Johnson, yes.
Patrice McQuerry.
Patrice McQuerry, yes.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe, yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, yes. Clearly, old habits die hard. I could have had a voice vote on that. My apologies. All of the voting members are here in person. My apologies. I'll pay more attention to the script, Meredith, moving forward. All right, thank you again. And thanks, board members, for your commitment to developing a set of goals that I think are important, that will make a difference in the future of public education in our Commonwealth, and for committing to the really hard work of getting us where we need to be on this set. The next item for your consideration is the Commissioner's goals. And I'll ask Dr. Glass to join me in our discussion of these, but Meredith, if you would, please pull up those slides as well. This item, of course, is a companion of the Commissioner's evaluation, which we'll be looking at today as well. And you will recall that the Commissioner's just finished his one-year anniversary with us here in Kentucky back in September. And so he's put a lot of thought and reflection into the state of his initial goals that we established in October of 2020. And with your support and feedback through the evaluation process, has developed these goals, starting with Goal 1. And feel free to comment on, opine, opine as you would. That would be great. So the first one is about this, and you will see in these, there's an iterative, continuous nature of improvement in the goals. And so the first one is to continue building on positive working relationships and obtaining feedback from education policy members, as well as KD staff, educators, education policy advocacy groups. And you know that he has done that through a series of weekly emails, as well as a survey that's underway. So, Dr. Glass, what would you add about Goal 1?
Nothing. I think that's succinct and direct. So we've done a good job, I think, gathering feedback and perspectives over this past year, and that effort will continue.
Questions or comments about Goal 1? All right, thank you. The second goal, also a continuation, to build on positive working relationship with members of this board. No, sorry, this is one that we did wanted to include at Dr. Glass's suggestion in his own self-reflection. Having worked with us for a year, he's gotten to know us better. He's gotten to know what our needs are in terms of communication, proactive as well as reactive, one-way as well as two-way. And so this goal would hone in on another round of conversations with us individually and collectively as a board to gauge the effectiveness of his current communication strategies and address needed changes there. Dr. Glass, anything to add?
Just that I think it's an ongoing effort to determine what level of communication board members prefer. And sometimes that's individualized to different board members. So one of the things that I want to put back in place, there's just a regular individual conversation. I think we've done the best we could in all the remote meetings that we had and tried to keep communication going. But I really, when I came on, I spent about an hour with each of you in an interview. And that's something I wanted to do at least annually, and then find other ways for us to fill in that communication loophole as well.
I appreciate your openness to that. I also appreciate those of you in the feedback responses that talked about your understanding of very delicate dance that the Commissioner engages in when he tries to find that right spot, the sweet spot for us as individuals, as well as collective board. So I think that's really important in the conversation, and I appreciate the openness to that. And I would encourage all of us to be really candid about what those needs are. I recall that one of the board members said that he or she was aware that some board members didn't want more information, but this board member personally did. And I think it was a woman, so I'll say she said, you know, if it's an email and we, if it's too much information, we have the opportunity to just delete it. So I'm kind of figuring out what that looks like moving forward, I think, is what this goal entails. Leading will know after working with the board. It's always interesting to try to find just the right balance, isn't it? All right, thank you. The next goal. And this, you'll see, aligns so beautifully with the KBE goals that we just approved. And this is the beginning of an implementation of a new vision, a new direction for education across the Commonwealth, based on the Listening Tours and engagement efforts that the Commissioner and his team have embarked on this past year. So this visioning, constantly moving toward the best interest of serving kids across the Commonwealth.
So in my return to the state, in addition to managing COVID, we intentionally did not begin with predestined outcome for the future of education in Kentucky. It is being designed through the Listening Tours and ongoing engagement with Kentuckians. Another important step in that will be the education summit that's coming up next month. And it will be, so the work of the Coalition for Advancing Education, summary of that that takes stock of our current state and proposed future states, that'll be another step in that journey of defining that new direction and vision. And then over this next year, what I hope to do is, if that lands well and there's consensus around, this is the stuff we need to be working on, then we begin engaging in efforts to implement that. And that may range from legislative steps, but honestly, much of the change that we need to bring about is, are changes with student experiences, so the things that we already can do. It's just bringing together the supports and an understanding of that direction and then we get an implementation.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm kidding about that word. Questions or comments for Dr. Glass about Goal 3?
I would make a comment about trying to change the direction, get people to put behind the different education in Kentucky. So the time we find a way to change the attitude about education, make students know that we're serious about it, we want to make changes, to be able to educate the whole person. We also need the population to understand, and I think the summit and some other areas of communications can help, that it's vitally important to the whole state that we get much more serious about education. The judgment is, get serious about it when we were found in contempt, the way we find it. And so we had it for a while, maybe we slipped a bit over the years, and it's time to really refocus it. And I think this concept of having a way to re-envision typically what we need, and we hear it all the time from the external voices talking down to us, that people, citizens don't hear that sometimes. And we need to be the pastor to them, the salesperson to them. Thinking attitude is a tough thing to do in a state like this in particular, but that's what we need.
Excellent.
And then I really applaud all the external communications that we can do, anything we think of to try to convince people that it's a most important thing in the state to do.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. I appreciate that, that nod to the importance of the advocacy work that underpins all of these efforts to implement a new vision for what it would look like for our kids, and that endorsement of the fact that it really is life-changing for Kentucky children and youth. Dr. Poe?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, and I agree with Dr. Todd. And I think that what, you know, especially since last week, report card news and everything else like that and COVID, that deeper learning and that summit is very important. But I think, and I'd just like to say that, I'd like to tie that into the next goal on Goal 4, because I think it's important, like Dr. Todd is saying, that we don't keep that amongst us. We've got to broadcast that out to our legislators, our governor, and the rest of the board.
Excellent. No, you built a perfect bridge for Goal Number 4, Dr. Poe. Thank you. And that is, as Randy was talking about, this is working with legislators and the Governor's Office to secure passage of KBE-aligned legislation. So it really brings this together, this, these comments about an external audience, and then, of course, advocacy at the level of the General Assembly goes with that, along with bringing the Governor and his administrative team along in that process. So do you want to add further, Dr. Poe? I think you set us up nicely.
Yeah, I think just like the education summit, I think it's, they may not attend, and it's their choice, but I think we should invite at least the House and the Senate leadership of the Education Departments there so that they can see that, so that we can have one mission together. And when we are proposing legislation, they know why we're proposing what we're proposing. You know, in conversations just earlier with Mr. Cook here, you know, we shouldn't have to be applying for waivers each year for virtual and different things, innovation. So if we can get our KRSs passed, our KERs passed, we can really get about going into deeper learning. We keep talking about deeper learning, but we've got bureaucracy that keeps us from really truly getting to deeper learning, and our accountability is one of those. So if we're proposing additional accountability, it's important that they're at the table with us going forward, or otherwise, we're always chasing the tail.
I appreciate that, yeah. I think we have both that advocacy role and that teaching and learning to make sure that we are bringing clarity to the decisions as we move forward. Dr. Robinson, you and I have talked about that a lot, too, as well.
Well, I do think that it's delicate and essential, and I believe that's an aspect of the courage and responsibility required to fulfill the roles to which we have been appointed. As public, the leadership role is about learning, and that's one of the reasons I appreciate whenever I see Jason, the leading in learning, the chief learner. I just, it warms my heart, because we are going where no one's been before, and that is to our future. And so giving some informed, focused guidance to this learning dimension of the future is what we are now called on to do. And I think we're set up to get that done. I believe that in our, I go back to our search, it was definitely on our minds to understand, to embrace, and to just claim it. We can't get there with what we've already done. So we've got to chart a course that will, that will require a path that we may in fact have to build. And we can't do that by ourselves. No single party can get it done by themselves. So part of what we're going to get a whole lot better at, if we're successful, is working together and creating a sense of unity for a future that we all want to create. And we humbly accept we can't do it well.
Exactly. Thank you so much. And Dr. Thompson? And Dr. Thompson?
I'm glad you saw my little artificial hand there, Lou. I appreciate that. You know, there's a couple of points I've been trying to figure out where I need to make them, on the last goals and Jason's goals, and I think it's important that we understand we are working also in a, in a way that we don't like to talk about, I guess, and that is that we have to talk more about the value of education as a whole. And we're, I think we're missing that a little bit with all of our goals here, and I'm not sure how to get it in. Now, I know we're talking about what we're doing and the value of that to get the message out and so on, but I was thinking about Jason's listening tour, and I think about the one I did when I first came on board. There is clearly a need for us as a collective, whether it's working with the General Assembly or whomever, to talk about the value of what we're doing and the value of education as a whole. And so somewhere, Chair, and I know it's kind of hard to fit it into something that makes sense and measure, but we've got to get this message out at a deeper level. Our last scores, it tells us one thing, but the item that we haven't really talked about fully over the years, there's been, in my opinion, a little bit of a devaluing of the value of education. So somewhere, we have to start talking about putting the value back into this proposition and our goals and our responsibility for making some of that happen. I've listened to Sharon, I've listened to Lee, and I've listened to Randy and all the folks as we talk about this, some of this rolls up to how we need to have a collective voice with whomever we're dealing with about the value proposition. So I just wanted to throw that in. I'm not sure I'm suggesting anything other than just making a statement, but I do believe it's important for us to discuss as a board.
Excellent. Thank you, Erin, and it does resonate really closely with the comments that we've heard this morning. I might suggest that we just, in our approval of the goals, capture that notion of the value of education in Goal 3. It seems to sit nicely there and should be just an easy, easy but extremely important and even profound addition to that goal, because we want both vision and action and the intrinsic value of education to result. So I think that would be a way for us to capture that thought, Dr. Thompson. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I gotta say something else, too. Harking back to going into UK's presidency and mentioning the word top 20 and watching people's eyes a little, like, that chance is not going to happen so good. And one thing I learned is if you don't win the university, you don't win the city, you don't win the state. We need, however, the teachers, we need to win the teachers, make them think we're doing what we need to be doing in order to service them. Legislators got to help all the way through that. But I came to the realization that people in Kentucky had no idea of why we needed a research university. So who's going to teach them? A research university? It's our job to make research real to the people of state. In the first place, that hit within healthcare. I got very frustrated when I was in it, and hazard when they asked all these statistics about how bad we were. Nobody talks about it. We accept it. We're sick, we're going to take, you know, all this business. And so it's time to kind of get a little different, and so I came with Kentucky ugly thing, which is probably the most important thing ever said, that you've got to put it out there. Why Kentuckians can't get upset about being where we are, and why they didn't get more excited about when they declined in CARE? And we moved up a lot, but there wasn't this excitement of, you know, kind of people say, oh, yeah, that's, okay. And I'm not sure if that legislature has got the burning desire to fight the battle to get us where we need to be. And I agree with Erin, and I'm not sure how we state that, but if you don't talk about these things, people aren't going to get it. And you've really got to be selective about who does it pay to spend time with, because you can't just flare it out there in general. You really need to select, you know, the leaders. When we went through the top 20 budget process, we selected the legislators we thought would understand what we're trying to do. You've got a $29 million increase in the base budget, waiting for extra years, but you've got to, you've got to really think about the communication piece. I really thought the work the commissioner's done to overly communicate throughout the state, sometimes I think you have what I call the foam rubber pillow thing. While you're talking to them, you've got your finger on the pillow and they're listening. When you walk away, in the case, it goes right back to where it was. We've got to keep our finger on it, and I'm not sure how to do it exactly, but it's a job. And I think this board has been structured by a governor who cares about that, who has been inundated, just like our commissioner has with this COVID situation. So we've got to do some extra thinking about how do we, how do we get this nail? We have a tendency to get two before, and you drive a few tenpenny nails in there a little bit, you think you got something, but you tip them, they fall off. We've got to drive some stuff through the board to stick, and education is one. We're responsible for that in many respects, and we've got to own that responsibility, figure out how to do this. It's not our job to do his job, but it's our job to do our job. And I'm not sure we, you know, complicated that in all we've said so far, but it's time to do something that's to move us in the positive direction of education. And I thought everything he's doing with the state needs to light it up.
Chairwoman? Yes? Can you send that simple three, would you like to see if that captures? Yes, please. I'm thinking public platform. Yep.
I think that's good wording, by the way. So, yeah, I like that.
Yeah. Chair.
You know, this, this conversation prompts me to remember one of the very first principles of systemic change that I believe we have embraced and expressed to our commissioner. He's embraced, you got to do it top-down and bottom-up, and you got to do it all the time. And this notion of the, of the listening tour, continuing to engage at the local community level, because I believe the only way to make some of these changes truly sustainable is to inform a voice of demand for this work and keep that voice well-informed, fueled, and loud. That is the way to have the communities own it and own that vision on behalf of their children and our future is the work of the hour. And I, I think that notion of valuing education, who can express that value more passionately and authentically than the local community, including employers and parents and the religious community and the civic community? And so they are our allies, and helping them vision and give, or give a, create an articulation of that vision for the policymakers is the work that we are trying to express in three, and I think in all the goals essentially. But I, it's the value of education and why we, why we have to care. Dr. Todd, about the time that you were coming to UK, I was doing some dropout convention work, and one Kentucky superintendent said to me, well, my first and hardest job is to get my community to understand that a 45% dropout rate is a problem. And now this was long, long ago, certainly before CARE, and we've come a long way since then. So putting it out there and talking about it is the beginning of getting it done. So I think, you know, embracing that vision and that sense of the future that we want to see for this Commonwealth, is talking about it is part of our job.
Excellent. Yeah, I so appreciate this thread and the real unity I hear around those voices, across those voices to hear this conversation. It reminds me of conversations I've had with Ms. Sloan before as well, and that is, this board is uniquely poised to engage teacher voice and student voice in those conversations as well. So that kind of broad representation, and as Dr. Todd said, it should come from us. We should be saturated in this message alongside Jason and encouraging him to continue working on that regard. Very powerful. Ms. Sloan?
I'd just like to add, I've heard this many times before, but I think it fits here well, a simple statement, but it means a lot, that we must tell our story or someone else will. And we've got to get the positive story out there, why it's so important to value education and to change the path of education in Kentucky and the outcomes of that, because the divisiveness right now is really painting a different picture. And it does take those of us here at the table. I think we are the ones that should be spearheading that, and I think that next year, that's something we should definitely focus on.
Excellent. Agreed. All right. Thank you so much. Good revisions, changes there to more capture the ideas that, that we've all been talking about. So thank you very much for that. Next slide, please, Meredith. Sorry, I am stirring all of my papers. Okay, yes, and this, back to Dr. Glass's goals. This goal relates to implementing KBE supports and resources aligned with our resolution on anti-racism and equity, including the Kentucky Academy for Equity and Teaching, the new Equity Dashboard, and the Equity Playbook. So I think this is putting our resources and talent where our mouths are when it comes to our resolution of July 2022.
You know, it's encouraging to see that in almost all of our goals, we have, we have aligned it with our resolution that we had. So that's encouraging to me, that we are really focusing on, on the goal that we set. In almost all of our goals, I can see that, that thread running through. So that, that's a very positive thing, and we can get it done. If we continue to work at this, at this rate and in this fashion, I think we can get, we can get it accomplished.
Thank you. I really appreciate that analysis, Mr. Johnson, and I concur. And I do believe that that brings such coherence across the set of six goals for the commissioner and five goals for us as board team. And I'm looking for the synthesis of our work, I think, is really powerful. therein lies the synergy and the ability, as you say, to really get something done. I also appreciate your admonition and that of others on the board to not shy away from important but sometimes difficult conversation. That's part of the courageous demand of us as state board members. And then the final goal, continuing to develop and add to both the Equity Dashboard and the Pre-K 20 Dashboard. You've been seeing those as they grow up. We'll look at those again today, I think. And looking at long-range goals established from last year, including baseline for new non-academic measures. So the commissioner and his team, Karen Dodd and others, have been working on that. Anything you would like to add?
Some of those measures we'll have to build, so, because they're new, but I think that's one of the more exciting elements of this preparation.
Great. And some real metrics that we, that we believe in and that we want to monitor closely as a team. So those are the goals for your consideration or approval for Commissioner Glass for 2021-22. Any further conversation or questions that you might have?
Would then like to add some.
Sure.
I hope in the future that we look, and this is part of the equity discussion that we are having, that we need to add some clarification around it. But as a special education teacher, I would not be okay sitting here not saying something. But I'd like to look at diverse learners as well in the equity picture and what we're doing to meet the needs of those learners in our state, because this is an issue that I see every day in the classroom, that we're not necessarily always meeting those. We're focused on goals and outcomes, but we're not always focused on what's happening in the classroom every day and how to meet those, the needs of the child individually each day to be able to meet those goals and to change and close those gaps, because it's a problem. We're in the equity discussion as well.
Excellent. Yes, I concur, and thank you for that. And again, embracing this broad notion of equity down to the individual learner, I think is really inherent in that. So how, what additional access and opportunity do our kiddos with disabilities need and deserve, as well as English learners, our students of color, our students of poverty? I'm really drilling down into those, and I know that's part of your aspiration as well, Commissioner. Thank you. Other feedbacks on the commissioner's goals? I also think, thinking about how those indicators grow up on the dashboard, Allison's way to one very concrete step, what we can think about in that regard. Okay, thank you so much. Thanks, as always, for engaging intellectually and with your hearts as we have these conversations. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve Commissioner Glass's 2021-22 goals. Do I have such a motion?
This is Holly Bloodworth. I make a motion to approve these goals.
Thank you. With a motion from Mrs. Bloodworth, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second from Dr. Robinson, thank you. And a third, any further discussion?
A third to the motion.
No, you're fourth now. Hearing none, I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. All right, thank you, and thank you so much, Dr. Glass. Really, really appreciated your, the time that you took to assess, self-assess and reflect on, on the goals. The next item is discussion and approval of the strategic priority and criteria for the 2022 Kevin C. Brown Award. You may recall, this was a new recognition that we added last year, and the idea is that it is around a timely, contemporary strategic priority that this bulk of board wants to recognize on any given year. So unlike our other awards that have very set criteria around certain things, this award is up to us to establish each year. So in the portal, you have recommendation there, and in our conversations, in our committee chair conversations, I believe, it may, it was either, I think it was Dr. Robinson who suggested that priority. And so you have a flyer, again, because we are still in the throes of the pandemic, looking very similar to our original strategic priority from the summer of, from the fall of 2020. This priority would be additional focus on the social and emotional well-being of students. And as you can see in the criteria there, including significant contributions to directly support the social and emotional needs of students, family, school, and/or community members, as well as demonstrated leadership and measured efforts to meet social or emotional needs of students. So that is the recommendation on the table for this year's strategic priority award. Any questions for feedback? All right, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Robinson, for that idea. It's both timely and important. So I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the strategic priority and criteria for the 2022 Kevin C. Brown Award. Do I have such a motion?
Yes, Chairwoman. The truth, my prayer.
Thank you. Thank you. As Chair of the Awards Committee, much appreciated. Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second that. A second from Mrs. Bowley. Any further discussion? Thank you. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item for your consideration is discussion and approval of the commissioner's evaluation. First, my heartfelt thanks to all of those of you who took time to respond on the feedback form. Dr. Robinson and I were able to spend a lot of time poring over your responses. They were thorough, they were very specific and informative, and so it was really helpful for us to be able to hear from you directly, and your input was invaluable in the process. So just a quick note, and we have another item coming up to approve the process for next year, but just a quick note about how Dr. Robinson and I implemented this year's evaluation. We received your feedback individually, and then together, we implemented a coding process, a qualitative process where we looked across the CCSSO performance indicators, you will call instructional leadership, strategic leadership, human leadership, cultural leadership. And, and so we just coded those in such a way that we were able to start seeing themes as they emerged. as they emerged. So, together, we worked through a process, so we had feedback on all five CCSSO indicators, as well as emergent themes that, that spanned your responses and appeared often enough that it was clearly a theme to be captured in the responses today. Many thanks to Dr. Brewer, who provided us with former evaluation, summative evaluations of commissioners from the past, so we had some notion of what those look like in the past, and, and we opted for the letter that you see in your portal right now. It still exists as draft pending our conversation today to make sure we feel like we have collectively captured the year-one summative feedback for the Commissioner. So, if you haven't already, please go ahead and open up that document. And then I'll just open the floor for conversation, especially if you have any question about process, let's start there, and if not, we can get into the substance of the evaluation. Our goal would be to capture any additional agreed-upon feedback and, and then move forward with this evaluation. And then I would be remiss if I didn't start by saying thank you to Dr. Glass for leading us through perhaps even arguably one of the most tumultuous times that educators across the world have experienced. I'm pretty sure when we saw him in Colorado in that first interview, he didn't know he was going to be leading us through a global pandemic, yet he has certainly done that with a steady hand, and there have been so many times that I've just appreciated the stoic way that you have led us through the, through this pandemic and through the crisis. And so, that is much appreciated, and I hope indeed that we have captured that in the evaluation. So, first, any process questions, any feedback about that? This is kind of foreshadowing the next item. Were you comfortable with your engagement in the process? Excellent. If you do have any suggestions on that when we come to the next item, we'll be sure and capture that, so please don't hesitate to share. And now, to the substance of the evaluation. Any comments, questions, or feedback you'd like to offer?
I'm just applaud this education leadership. I've been here, I don't know if you've done statewide tours, to establish that some work for education continues. I think as we talked earlier about selling the concept of education, product of education goes from pre-kindergarten hallway through, you know, P-16 or working college. And you can't sell it if you don't know what's going to happen from one step to the other. And the fact that you have this continuum now is a sellable commodity, because people, as they have, seem that kind of cooperation. You always talk about articulation agreements between community colleges and universities, and you get a lot about that.
High schools.
But you don't, or the council and high schools. And so, if we can let people know that you've got cooperation between the workforce effort, CPE, and Commissioner Glass, I think that's a pretty good component to try to help people think differently. And then you can sell the concept of division. So, I really applaud that. It takes work, and it takes strength. Can't even people want to own their issue and say that they can control that, but to spread it open, open it to others, shows that you've got a lot of self-confidence and they believe in that too. I applaud that, but.
Excellent. Thank you, Lee. I also think, one more time, you do such a good job of drawing a bright line between our conversation around goals and the feedback that we've included in the evaluation. I appreciate that. But quickly, forgive me, I forget that we have information on this item that the public doesn't have, so thank you to Meredith and team for a few slides. So, let me hit those instead of speaking as generally as I did about them. So, Meredith, I see we have the Commissioner evaluation notes here, and you will, what's included here for our viewing audience is we tried to capture specific quotes from board members around the areas that we noted in the coding process here. So, I think I spoke to these, this first overarching issue in my comments a little bit earlier. The next slide will show you those five focal areas that the Council for Chief State School Officers includes in their recommended chief or commissioner evaluation process. And then the next one is when we start looking at those themes that emerged from your responses to the Commissioner's evaluation. The first is strong, effective advocacy and voice. You'll see accommodation there for Commissioner's interaction with legislative committees, at the same time appreciating his unequivocal views in a respectful way. So, that, that quote captures one person's quote, but several persons' sentiment in that process. And feel free to stop me, or I'll open up further discussion after I zip through these slides. The next one, we've discussed a lot today around goal vision and high expectations. One board member wrote that from the time she first read Dr. Glass's application, she felt his expectations would be set high, and he would accept nothing less than the best from those around him. So, I almost never use sports analogies, but I'm always reminded when I talk to Dr. Glass about the famous Wayne Gretzky quote, that we should always be skating, not to where the puck is, but where the puck will be. And I think that really makes sense to me, I think. So, I appreciate that and commendations in that regard as well. The third one was not surprising in that he was just finishing his first year, but what was surprising in this conversation about managing the transition, there was a lot of really clear feedback about the way you approached that. And you and I have talked about this several times, Dr. Glass, and I know that Dr. Robinson has had these conversations with you as well, and that is, you really have been very circumspect and prudent about not wanting to jump in ahead of the message. And so, really, Lee's mentioned this today as well, really accepting first launching and then accepting the feedback from the listening tours and using that in a very active listening kind of way to frame your agenda for this past year has been much appreciated. We've talked a lot about leading through the pandemic. That was one of the strongest coded elements from your all's responses, and appreciate that very much, Sharon.
You know, one of the things that Jason pointed out in his reflection that really helped us to start thinking about how we wanted to reflect on this performance, transition was not just to a new job. This year brought a transition. I added it up this morning. Dr. Glass has moved his family three times.
Last year.
In one year. And he's still standing. The children seem to be thriving, and his family seems to be managing through all of this as well. This process gave us a chance to see how what we see on the job reflects the person who is in the job, and that's a person who can manage change. I mean, moving once. You know, moving writes right up there with life's big traumas. And so, I do want to add that there is clearly a person who sees challenges as opportunities to implement a plan of action and get it done. And that really, I was impressed by that, because I moved this past year.
Never again.
And, you know, it was, it was traumatic. Any, what we, what we saw in this performance reflects a lot of skills and a lot of heart.
Excellent, thank you. And one of the things that we do think about often when we evaluate leaders is not just the knowledge, but the skills, as Sharon mentioned, and the disposition. So, the disposition to lead us through historically turbulent times, I think, has been really bubbled up in the conversation. Mrs. McCrery?
You did join us in the midst of a storm, and as captain, you have taken us through a very, very difficult time, and I appreciate that, young measures. As a matter of fact, you have had moments of rockstar. I hope that as a board, we've been able to come back through and say to you, yes, we made the right choice when you pulled you, when we pulled you on board during this storm. I also want to say that I appreciated hearing earlier, as you were going through your process of reflection and discussing the communication about it. I'm one of those who I want more rather than less. I want to hear it deboard. It becomes public so that I'm prepared to respond to things. So, it made my heart happy to hear that you're actually hearing that too, and that came across in your reflection. And to be in the position that you're in and to continue to be so reflective is a gift to us all. So, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mrs. McCrery. And that was a great foreshadowing of the next slide as we discussed that goes back to one of his goals. Mr. Johnson?
Just wanted to say, a good leader can lead you through a turbulent, tumultuous time if there is a roadmap. You came into a situation where there is no roadmap. You had to carve your own roadmap, and you've done a great job, and I want to go on record to say that.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. Yeah, no roadmap. And hopefully not one that we will ever need again. And so, then that last slide, Meredith, too, around communication, I think we've touched on that really, really well. I really appreciate the way Mrs. McCrery just framed that in terms of now we have the opportunity to, to hear, to share with and hear from Jason very specifically about what the, what those communication themes might be for us moving forward as well. So, other, let's just pause. Anybody else that wants to add comments or feedback or ask any questions about the process before we consider a motion about this evaluation? Mrs. Bloodworth?
I, I feel, I mean, I, I think this has been a really good process, and this may not be the place to ask this.
Oh, sure.
But I would be interested, as a board member, in ways that you feel that we could be better. And so, great question.
Well, thank you for the question. I, I haven't considered a lot of responses to this, because I really think the work stands on its own. But I would say that all of the success that I've had and that we've had this past year has been because of the incredible support network that I have, and that includes this board. This board has been incredibly supportive of me, needed to bounce ideas off you or think through difficult things with you. You've been there and been available to you, especially you, Teri, and Robinson, too. We have biyearly calls, where we get into a lot of complicated things. Oftentimes, boards have to deal with the very most difficult decisions that states face, and it's been true with you as well. So, I have deep respect and appreciation for, for that responsibility that you have, and also grateful for the support that you've provided for me. So, I, this is a wonderful board to work for, and I'm grateful for that. I also have incredible support with the staff of the Department of Education. They're really exceptional professionals, dedicated, talented, knowledgeable, and they have, have made me look good in spite of some decisions that I've made. So, that's, that's an incredible support that I would acknowledge as well. The other organizations that work in education in the state, the K groups, Project Committee, CPE, have been incredible to work with and have been a great support. And as Dr. Robinson was saying, I have an incredible thing. You've been very supportive of, of me throughout this, all the time and disruption. And I think that it's been three moves this year, but I think in, just in the time Sarah and I have been there, I think we've moved 12 times. So, so, we, we know how to do it, but it is, it is disruptive, and it's always, every one of those moves has been, or something professionally. So, they, they did it again, and we're really happy. We're really happy in Kentucky, and our family is thriving, and I'm just grateful for all the support that I have.
Thank you, thank you so much for that question.
I do have one comment. As all of you know, we usually hear from people who are dissatisfied with things. So, it has been very encouraging to me to hear comments from administrators, teachers, parents, community members, and members of the KDE on complimenting us on our selection of Dr. Glass. So, I think when you hear positive comments from the community, I think that speaks for you. So, thank you, Dr. Glass.
As all of you know, I have a, a social media presence and a huge gathering there of people in education across the state, and many times leaders are often afraid to be in that space because they feel like they're, they'll want to say things or say or respond to things that maybe they shouldn't. But I will say from day one, Dr. Glass has been in that space, and though he may not always say things, I know he's there, he's watching, and he's getting that information and listening to what people have to say. And there's sometimes when he does respond, likes things and says stuff. So, I think that also goes to show that he's really there for us and that he's not afraid to step out and do what needs to be done to hear things that are going on. So, I really do appreciate that. I know the educators there do as well.
I also have something to add. Especially with student incorporation, this past year has been tremendous and most valuable. And I think Dr. Glass has done a great job in incorporating those students, and that, and that is in everything. When we have listening tours, he wanted a strong presence of students. When we have our student council discussions, he's always so present and wants to stay there the majority of the time, and I think that's not typical for many education leaders, especially in the years to come, but hopefully it is being more normalized, and I'm glad that Dr. Glass has trailblazed that movement and really been a large propeller within that.
Excellent, thank you so, Rhianna. Yes, Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Dr. Young. I would be remiss if I didn't say that as Jason, being my counterpart in K-12, I mean, he and I, we, we partner well, I think. He may disagree with that, but we have real conversations that you all don't know about. We have conversations that go to how do we work to ensure, obviously, this P-20 relationship that we need to have in Kentucky, but also what it means to consider what is good as, as, as a reaction in a variety of places, I will just say. So, I, I do want to say that it's been a joy to work with Jason this year. It's been also, though, what I would consider to be, and I'm speaking from my role here, and I'll watch what I say. I'll just say that these jobs are not easy. They are not. And if you make it look easy, then it's probably, says a little bit about leadership, but they're not easy. They're political, they are headache, they are 24/7. I can tell you right now the reason why I'm not with you, because I'm dealing with 24/7. And so, I, I will say that more than anything else, Jason has been more than amenable to some conversations that I think has helped Kentucky in ways that maybe you folks don't even know, but from my vantage point, I get to see. So, Jason, it was great working with you this year, my friend.
Excellent, thank you so much, Dr. Thompson, and we do so much appreciate that kind of shared perch that the two of you experience, and your feedback is really helpful. Thank you. This feels a little bit like all day church and dinner on the ground, so. But I don't want to cut it short if anybody, any other board members have anything to add. All right, again, thanks so much for everything. Thanks for participating in the process and your candor and authenticity through the process has been really, really helpful. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the Commissioner's 2020-21 evaluation. Do I have such a motion?
This is Jamie Foley, and I would love to make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowling. Do we have a second? Holly Bloodworth, I second. Thank you, Mrs. Bloodworth. On that motion and second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the evaluation, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Excellent. Thank you so much. The next item is just to codify the evaluation procedures and communications procedures as we just discussed. And I, we do have a couple of slides. We make sure, again, for our viewing audience, that we touch on this very specifically as well. So many thanks to the support of General Counsel Todd Allen and certainly for Dr. Brewer in helping us frame up our evaluation and procedure. So this is looking forward, just gave you where that puck will be, and looking at our procedures as we move forward. So the first item would be establishing this evaluation plan that we'll be considering today, moving forward from the goals that we just approved and have been established. Your role in that would be that second bullet following the Commissioner's self-reflection around his goals and our priorities, strategic priorities. The communication plan includes these, we did look at these about a year ago, and again, knowing that that last bullet is at play, that any additional targeted communication with board members that we talk about individually and collectively would also be included in this plan as well. So two-part consideration for your approval about how we will, how the evaluation process will unfold over the coming year. Questions or comments about the process, especially just on the heels of this most recent experience, anything that you would like to consider? All right. All right. I'm talking to Michelle. Oh, yes, Dr. Pope.
Help me out with the second or last bullet item. I'm not quite sure. Is that a communication plan for the Commissioner to you and their, or you and him? I just didn't.
Yes, so this, again, we looked at this a year ago, too. This would be, and you saw this threaded throughout the goals as well, that as of now, before the individual calls and that last bullet, then these are the ways that the Commissioner is proposing that he would communicate with us very specifically over the course of the year. So in addition to the formal feedback that he provides us at evaluation time, you also have this opportunity to hear from him throughout the course of the year. And, and Dr. Pope, we could, if there's anything you'd like to put on the table to approve there as well?
No, I was just reading it, and I just, I didn't, I'm going from the headlines to biweekly check-in with Chair and Board Chair. That's him doing the targeted communication with board members as needed. I guess on that targeted communication, I would just add, when there's specific items that we know that's going to be coming up to, let's say, the board for a vote, that we kind of get a heads up on that so that at least when it is published, that's something that we can know that we're going to be getting more specific information or feedback with you directly as opposed to per se going through the board or Board Chair if there's specific information. And right now, our training has been in the past, and I just want this clarified for you more so than me, is in our training, it's been, we should be asking the Board Chair those questions. Board Chair is getting with you. So I don't want you, at the same time, having to get off answering 12 to 14 different conversations on something, too. But at the same particular time, if we kind of know big items coming up, just like the Kentucky Summit, what's coming up with the Summit from the Listening Tour, we may have questions that we can direct to the Chair, to you, instead of asking you directly, but we don't know those sometimes until the last minute. And then that's kind of hard, I think, also for the Board Chair to get questions the night before a board meeting or two nights because of people's different busy schedules when they're reading that, and to try to get answers back from you at midnight as opposed to, if we know those are coming, we might have questions we're going to ask in two, two weeks ahead of time that you're going to answer for us, and we'll know that at least that conversation's there. If that makes sense.
Yeah. You told Randy and I were texting last night. So yes, absolutely. Thank you. And I think it also speaks to both the formal and the informal nature of the communications as well. Mrs. McCrery and then Dr. Robinson?
In the area of communication, you've done a fabulous job of keeping the advisory committee in place and keeping the pulse on what's happening with every area. I wonder if there's a way for you not personally to communicate what is taking place in those, but perhaps someone designated from each group to let us know what's happening within those groups and how they are responding to issues. That helps us make a decision to support the people who are out there, the students, the teachers, the business individuals. That just keeps us better informed as well.
We appreciate both of your thoughts. Just following up on what Dr. Pope was saying, I, I think that over this past year, we've had things that have happened quickly and things that have become media issues. And honestly, we should have worked to get more information to you. And I think that's my reentry to the state and all the things that we were managing contributed to that. And then also with the disruption that we had with Jeff Fraker and then to Dr. Brewer, now we're getting to a point where I think we've got the capacity to do a better job looking ahead and thinking about what does the board need to know and how can we make sure that we're proactively communicating with them. So I think with, now with Meredith having, the benefit of having done this job while myself as well, I can assure you that we'll make gains in those areas. Specific to the committees, we also need to make sure that all of you are receiving the regular communication updates because the, all of the committees, even if I'm not at them, most of them I'm at or at least some part of it. Some of them, if I'm able, I'm at it for the whole time. But our communication team does a great job summarizing what happened in that and usually the same day, if not that, by the next morning, issuing news stories about that. So we need to make sure that all of you are receiving the really abundance of communication that, that we put out around the things happening. That's a real strength that Kentucky has that I see, having worked, this is my third state agency, I've worked in Colorado and Iowa and here, but the capacity that we have around reporting and keeping people updated through the communications team is really unmatched from what I've seen. So we need to make sure that you're all receiving that.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Robinson?
Well, Dr. Pope's comment prompted me to ask another kind of question, which is, what is our responsibility to each other to help address the communications and keeping everybody informed? We have, in addition to the, every other week check-in, we have a call that involves the board, the Chair, the committee chairs, and the staff to go over the agenda. Now, maybe we can publish the agenda to the board earlier and, you know, offer to answer, you know, we're available to answer calls and check-in because I do think it's important to, you know, maintain certain protocols with respect to communication with Jason. Our Board Chair has that responsibility, and she serves us in that regard. But I think maybe we need to serve each other better by, you know, we, we looked at the agenda with the information, some of, most of the information was already in the portal when we did the, the Committee Chair and Chair and Vice Chair call, and the staff were on board. And, you know, we could dig into questions there. We could send a summary or alert or something, but we could talk about how we can get it to you so you can be raising additional perspectives and questions.
And I wondered, I wonder if on that same front, I've thought about this, Todd, without convening a quorum, we could also invite board members on a rotating basis to join us for those monthly calls as well. One of the things I'm hoping to do is build capacity on this team so that whoever's ready to be Board Chair next can step up and do that. So that might be another way to engage folks because we, we get to nitty-gritty at those calls, Holly Lee, Sharon and I, with the team, and we get to hear directly from associate commissioners and directors in that process. So I think that would be a good experience as well. Again, sensitive to forum, of course, but that may be something on that targeted communication bullet that we think about as well. I think some of you would really enjoy that. And of course, you don't have to. You know, you, we can invite you on a rotating basis and kind of watch the sausage being made, as they say. And then there are times, Sharon's right, most often we get that, the portal is well populated, but then at the same time, we also know that there are times like on the compensation study where the department is down to the 11th hour, working as fast as they can to put together the information, and we don't always get that out. And that would be an example, Randy, or something I think you would have liked to have seen two weeks ago, for example. So always working on, you know, kind of scanning, finding that darn puck, and then what the need to know is, I think is absolutely appropriate for the conversation. Patrice?
Can't move on without getting a shout-out to our media portal that is so helpful.
Absolutely excellent. That's what I rely on, too.
And being able to watch much, much more.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you, Patrice. That's so helpful for me. But then again, I, I can watch it or not watch it, too.
Could I add that maybe rotating invitation could also apply to some of the advisory committees? Because there's times when I'd like to see what's going on in those, but I couldn't do it every time, and I'm sure what you agree, but maybe that's something else that we can do is at least once occasionally be invited to kind of sit in on those just to see what's happening and have the, hear the conversations. That would help us to be more clear of the things happening there.
Yeah, I, I love that idea, too. I had a chance once to sit in on a student advisory group, and, I mean, I was just in Hulk Heaven the whole time, just, you know, watching what was happening in that experience, and I loved it. So, yeah, I think that's a good option, too. And just inviting, again, no quorum, but inviting individual members seems totally doable.
I'm a little excited.
Also, always text me if you have a question.
There you go. That's right. We also have our Meredith. Now, Dr. Pope?
I just want to say, I mean, you know, the purpose of it is engagement. It goes back to, it's hard for us to communicate out in our regions, in my case, out in our state when I'm there, about a particular issue that doesn't come, that came up and went, and we didn't even per se know about it. Jason addressed it very well. This year with COVID, there was a lot of moving things, but at that same time, you know, moving forward, because we're just talking about how can we get better here. It's not a criticism. I mean, we heard all the positives. I commend all that. Just moving forward because, you know, moving forward out of COVID, you know, and I don't want to get into specifics, but when we're, when we're spending X number of millions of dollars on an initiative, and somebody says, do you, did you, why, did you approve that or what was other options? You say, well, you know, I read it in, in the media. It's a little bit harder to explain. I mean, because you, when you, when you're pinpointed by somebody, you want to tell the truth. I've always said, if you always tell the truth, you never caught the line. So you don't want to say, oh, well, this, you know, and make up a story. So I think just, you know, harder communication. So I think, you know, going forward, and, and, you know, I've been in Jason's shoes in the district, not, not on the state level, but, and I wouldn't want to have to be communicating through all of us at all times. So I think what Sharon's saying is, or my thing is, is the communication to me is the only real way for us as a board to be engaged. And you can always hit click. I don't want too much information. I, you know, it's, it's hard enough to get there, but on action items is where I'm talking about, not, not consent agenda items, that's routine business of the day. But when we're going to have action items that are there, that's the type of thing. So if there's committees, I know that, that we have people on, and they represent as well. So it's not me wanting to take their place, but me, as Sharon's saying, wanting to know what that committee discussed, what they thought of, so that I can explain that, too, instead of just saying, oh, well, yes, I voted because the committee voted X. That's all.
Super helpful. Thank you.
Some thoughts of response?
Yeah.
The, for the committees that we have, one of the capacities that we've added because of COVID is that we televise our rooms, we live stream, so they're all available in real time. And that's something that we intend to continue going forward. I, I think that it, doing those in a video conference format has saved a lot of time because we have people, we try to reach the whole state, and so it's much easier for people to conduct those in a video conference, for example, where our teacher advisory committee, we don't have to pull them from all across the state. And they're these busy people, we can stand it up, and in a couple of hours, everybody can come together. So I think that's a capacity that we continue, I don't think, it will be a capacity to continue going forward. A couple of elements that I think are just best practice for boards. One is to provide as much advance notice on substantive matters as possible. I think that you raised that, and that's, that's a good practice, and where it's possible, we will, and where it's not possible, we'll tell you why. Here's, here's what we ran into. Some of these things do change, you know, like really 24-hour things shift. And then I think where we can get better are things that are going to generate, that we anticipate generating either positive or negative media coverage and advance on that. And again, I attribute that to Spirit, relative to your experience. So that's a very, you know, you can, you can.
Yes, please. I love that there are all these committees are live, and I do watch as much as I possibly can. I'm usually in the classroom, so I'll watch later. But I think actually inviting one of us to be in the space goes back to what we were talking about earlier, that the board members are engaged and that they're seen. So that allows the people there, they don't know I'm watching later, or they don't know I'm watching live. But if one of us were in that space, they would know then that the board members are engaged and are curious and interested in what's going on. But not just for us, it's also for the members to know. So I think that makes a little bit of a difference. But I am glad there are five of us that are going to continue to do that because a lot of people do watch and get information that way.
Definitely. Yeah. Oh, I was just scratching your arm. I thought that was a secret signal.
Don't talk, I don't keep it a secret.
I like that about you. All right. Thank you so much. Very helpful, and I see lots of notes going on here, too, and I know Meredith well enough to know she's got the list already prepared. Todd did note that we are at forum when we include our committee chairs in our calls, but he said, for example, that he and Meredith could then do a follow-up call, again, on a rotating basis, so as not to achieve a quorum, and make sure that we are spending that additional time with you guys as we move forward as well. So thank you for that offer, and I think that's a great workaround as well.
Just continuing on the committee involvement discussion, I think, I want to think about that, so I'm going to tell that lady.
Okay.
The, the committee structures are advisory to the Commissioner, and it does change the tenor of it if there are board members present at that. So I think we, we just need to establish some roles and norms for what that might look like.
And some of them are constituted by statute and law as well, in terms of who can actually be there. So, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll dig into that further, Allison, and get really specific about that request.
Well, we should find some ways to.
Absolutely. Yes, certainly by invitation. That's, that's how I was able to join the student advisory group, for example, to say hello, tell them what our role was, and then listen in on the conversation without adding whatever comment.
I just want to say, I agree with Jason, and we don't want to cross the line. So this, you know, the conversation is not about crossing the line in the management. It's just, how can we be engaged, or at least I'll speak for myself, how can we be engaged in departmental decision-making that goes to a board vote type of situation? That's my part.
Right. I appreciate that.
And I just also want to say, for record, I've never, have not had a question ever answered. So, you know, it's not, like we said, it's very much best practice. It's rarely situated by evidence, but information, more than enough.
Thank you. Meredith, you are enough. No, I really appreciate that, Randy, and you and I have served at the will of a board before, and, and of course, we are always taking every precaution that we not cross that line into micromanagement. Saying that out loud is truly appreciated, Dr. Pope. Thank you. All right, excellent. Great conversation. I believe we do not have a motion on the table, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2021-22 evaluation procedures and communication procedures. Do I have such a motion?
Madam Chair, you do.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second? Dr. Pope, thank you so much. Any further discussion? Noting that we will expand on the communications as we've discussed today under that last bullet. Hearing none, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you so much. My favorite time on the agenda, turning to good news. And we have some slides, yes? Thank you. All right, retired teachers. Doctor, or Mr. Johnson?
Sergeant.
Is this Mr. Johnson? Okay. Let's, under the portal, Mr. Johnson, we have one.
It's in your folder as well.
Oh, it's in your folder.
Oh, okay, excellent.
We have one that we'd like you to share, please. It's entitled, Retired Teachers Are Going Back to the Classroom After Passage of Senate Bill I. And this does not mean you have to go back into the classroom, Mr. Johnson. Don't be scared.
Oh, I think I got it, yeah.
Good God, just a second.
Yeah, retired teachers going back to classrooms after the passage of Senate Bill I. Retired teacher Joanne Samuels returned to the classroom at Harrison Elementary in Jefferson County on Monday, September 20. A 22-year-old, 27-year veteran teacher, Samuels is one of the first retired teachers to take advantage of the incentive in Senate Bill I. The legislation was passed during the special session last month, permits Kentucky teachers to return full-time while already getting full salary and retaining 100% of their pension. The salary slash pension incentive gives districts across the state that are recruiting to help fill these vacancies, resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, and in some cases even before. Jefferson County Public Schools taking advantage of this too, and actively recruiting those retired teachers. Many retired, many retirees, though, they still have something to share with students. Samuels said she has a passion to give and to guide students to their education. She said she hopes other retired teachers enjoy her and returning to the classroom full-time.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
And I might add that, that is something that is very much needed as we go into this teacher shortage. Like in every other business, every other career, there is a shortage, and retired teachers who can go back and not affect their pension, that's really a great incentive to the districts around this state.
Indeed. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. And then to Ms. Sloan for Ed Rising.
Mr. Johnson gave a great segue there. And to, speaking of our teacher shortage, we are having difficulty in Kentucky, as many other states are, with recruiting and retaining teachers in our classrooms. So I'm glad to share today about our Ed Rising program in Kentucky and showing the growth across high school and collegiate chapters. Ed Rising is just a way that we use our students in our classrooms in high school and prepare them to become educators and teachers after college. So Ed Rising is seeing a new growth across high school and collegiate chapters across the state and increasing engagement. There are 46 schools that are offering both the teaching and learning pathway and educator's rising chapter. 13 schools have an Ed Rising chapter. 36 schools have a teaching and learning pathway. 13 new Ed Rising chapters started in the 2020, 21-22 school year. There have been steady teaching and learning pathways, student enrollment increased over the past three school years. There are five Ed Rising collegiate chapters at Bellarmine, Northern Kentucky University, Murray State University, Campbellsville University, and Western Kentucky University. There are 10 university-college educator preparation programs offering dual credit for teaching and learning pathways courses. And I hope, over the next year, that we report this again, and those numbers are even higher, and I think they will be. So I'm very proud of this program.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and I love it, Meredith, that you designed it in such a way we could look on both ends of that pipeline in terms of early preparation and those retirees back in our classrooms. Thanks to Allison. The next item, school districts recognized for best practices at the Continuous Improvement Summit, and that's to Ms. Batt.
Well, I am so pleased to be able to share the names of seven schools and two districts for being recognized at the Best Practices Summit and the Continuous Improvement Summit on September 23rd. Each of the winners was presented with a $500 check that can be used towards school improvement. The schools that were recognized were John F. Kennedy Montessori Elementary in Jefferson County, the Cambridge Elementary School in Bourbon County, Hancock County High School, Heritage Elementary School in Shelby County, B. Atkinson Academy in Jefferson County, the Martha Lane Collins High School in Shelby County, and the Jacob Elementary School in Jefferson County. Now, the two school districts were Mead County Schools and Jefferson County Public Schools. And I'd like to offer my congratulations to each of these winners.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and congratulations as well to all of those represented at the summit. And then the next item to Ms. McCrery.
Another excellent segue here. There we go. You know, when one celebrates an anniversary, typically what they do is they choose to go to a favorite place. They're probably a restaurant, perhaps, just any place that makes them feel wonderful. Well, our commissioner did that very thing on his one-year anniversary, and his favorite place is obviously the classroom in his old stomping grounds. To celebrate his first year anniversary at the Kentucky Department of Education, Commissioner Glass did what obviously he loves most. He returned to his alma mater, his old stomping grounds, at Mead County High School on September 17th to co-teach in a ninth-grade science class with Jonathan Mangan. How exciting was that? Did you love it?
I did love it.
Is it like riding a bike?
It was great. It was really fun. I had a great co-teacher, a lifelong friend, and someone, he was a veterinarian here in Frankfurt for many years, and so teaching is his second career, so he brings so much to the classroom there. But the building in the classroom we were in was an elementary school when I was there, and there was an attempt to teach me math in that same room.
Well, along with all of that fun, teaching in the classroom and all those memories flooding back, you got to attend homecoming festivities as well. So, did you purchase the wife the big, or something? And then attended the football game in the evening. So congratulations on your first year.
Thank you. It was a reminder what a great school system that is, and how much it's given to all the graduates who've come through. And of course, you've got Todd Allen as a graduate of Mead County High School, and Dr. Darrell as well, so we're slowly populating the.
Well, we owe Mead County a debt of gratitude for turning out. But you know what? I'm not going to stop there, because there's still more good news, and I get to talk about that, too. You have also, our own Commissioner Glass, won the KWLA Award for Support for World Language Education. So not only do you invest in your local areas, but this is a worldwide recognition. Dr. Glass is the recipient of the Kentucky World Languages 20, the World Language Association's 2021 Amici L'Oréal, Friend of Languages, and I think I just mutilated it, award in the education category. He received the award on September 17th during KWLA's virtual awards ceremony. And here's a quote from our commissioner. "Here at the Kentucky Department of Education, we are committed to providing a more equitable education system for all students. Introducing them to world languages and cultures is vital to providing our students with a global perspective that will benefit them greatly as they work toward not only bettering their state and country, but also bettering their world." The Amici L'Oréal Award is presented each year by the KWLA and recognizes individuals or organizations who are not directly involved in teaching of world languages for their significant contributions to the profession. Alfonso de Torres Nunez is the chair of the KWLA Awards Committee, and he said, and this is a quote, "Our committee was most impressed with Dr. Glass's efforts to reach all students in the state of Kentucky, no matter the language, and his passage in protecting them during these difficult times and helping them reach their potential. It was also impressive to learn of his efforts to inspire students to use their language skills to explore avenues that may lead them in the future to future jobs, success, and opportunities in life." Dr. Glass was recognized for his work in supporting the revised Kentucky academic standards for world language, and for his endorsement of the seal of our literacy. This is a seal which is placed on high school diplomas. It recognizes students who have studied and become proficient in at least two languages." So congratulations. We're terribly proud of you.
Amy Sotacianes, thank you, Patrice. Excellent. And now I'm turning over to Jason for the commissioner's report.
Do you have Dr. Thompson?
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry. I was looking at my slides. Lieutenant Governor, we are going to move her to the afternoon, but Dr. Thompson, CPE report.
Thank you, Chair, for forgetting about me. No, that's okay. I get it. That's what I get for not being there, right?
That's fine.
Thank you, Chair Young. It is important that I do mention that so much of what we're doing anymore that we got to celebrate has been a P-20 effort, so I will say that first. The continuum has been meeting. As you well know, we've got a lot of good stuff done. We're ready, we've prioritized, we've gotten a lot of input, and we are ready to move forward, possibly with some budget ask, but more than anything else with some real ideas about how people in Kentucky who's in this game of education, P-20 education, feels about helping all of our students not get caught in those potholes I talk about. A few things I'd mention, and I'll go fairly quickly. We were just awarded, from Lumina, along with Complete College America, a $550,000 grant to do purpose-first strategies and advising. And what that means is that when the folk from your institutions, K-12, come to us in higher ed, we will talk with them in a very proactive way about what it means to think about a career and advising them with that in mind. We'll look at all pieces, the social, the emotional, the cultural, the understanding more than just the academics about helping them to do that. It's really turning career services on its head, if you will, and putting it in the beginning rather than at the end, and we're very proud of that. Kentucky was chosen, and we like being chosen as often as we possibly can, for good stuff, that is, I should say. We were also, we, with some help from Lieutenant Governor's Office or the Cabinet of Education and Workforce, we issued three grants to our public universities to increase their K-12 teachers with underrepresented groups. The Commonwealth Educator Diversity Program in partnership with the Education and Workforce Development Cabinet, we will distribute $400,000 among Western Kentucky University, the University of Louisville, and Northern Kentucky University over this two-year period. Now, they're working with K-12 constituencies, co-ops, and other districts to make this happen. If you haven't gotten a chance to read the full report, I would invite you to do that. As you all know, there was a recent, it's been a couple of months now, executive order by the governor to give CPE responsibility for assessing KSU's financial status. We're in the process of doing that. We have independent folk that we've hired in my shop, looking at all the finances coming out of KSU, working with the Board of Regents at KSU and the interim administration to ensure that we get KSU back to financial stability and put forth some, what I call strategic efforts, to make sure that KSU have programs and areas that will serve Kentucky for a long time. I've not been shy about stating that KSU is our only public HBCU, it should remain independent, it should be, it's been here 135 years, it should remain here, at least for another 135 years or longer, as an HBCU, because it still has relevance in our society. But we have to ensure that it thrives, and so CPE will be working probably for a long period of time to ensure that that takes place. We were also chosen by Association of Governing Boards and the John Gardner Institute to be the first state who they believe has a good governance system with our higher education, to be the beta for developing a set of standards for most higher education boards to go by. So for the next three years, we will be working with AGB and the John Gardner Academy to do exactly that. So we look forward to this. Once again, Kentucky was judged to be one of the more progressive states in the way that we train our boards. You've seen me testify here a lot lately, I won't go in great detail, but we had a chance to talk, I will bring up one, chance to talk with the State Commission on Race and Access opportunity about what we've done in closing gaps in higher ed. As you well know, we're proud to say that we're closing gaps as fast or faster than almost any other state. We're a four-year institution, we're at about an 80% retention rate. I'd never thought we'd get there, but we are, and we're only a couple of points behind with our underrepresented minorities. We're also, educational attainment rates, we have doubled with our underrepresented minorities as an example. Over the last many years, we've had 17.5% increase in degrees and credentials, but with our underrepresented populations, almost 37%. And we're using that triangulated approach that I call it. One is the performance funding mechanism on the front end that has kickers, if you will, riders that give more money as we actually educate more people of color, more low-income students, as well as more in STEM areas. And we then have our strategic agenda that we set by the state that our campuses have to put into their strategic plans that focuses heavily on equity. And you'll see our new, you'll see our new agenda coming up that goes to 2030 that has equity running through everything. And then on the back end, we have a very progressive diversity policy that works to not only increase participation on campus and faculty, staff, and students, but also, in fact, help campuses develop a cultural competent system, if you will, that cuts down on institutional discrimination, that would invite everybody to come and not feel like they're having an immigrant experience once they get there. So I'm proud to say that our campuses are doing a really good job in this area. We're also closing graduation gaps, so something that I had a chance to talk with the commission about, and I think they appreciated it. We also have released an early economic return on higher education investment, where once again, we took a class that graduated in 2011 from our high schools in Kentucky, and we followed them for eight years and have been able to show exactly the return on investment for each. on investment for each one of those students, those 40-something thousand students. And quite impressed, you know, we only had 60% of that class go to college, and those that didn't go to college aren't doing nearly as well as those that did. So once again, higher education matters. So if you haven't had a chance to read that report, I think you'll be quite impressed. Kentucky, we're doing it a little bit different than other folks who are doing return on investment. We're taking the actual student and looking to see what happened with that student within this eight-year span. And once again, I say we have a new agenda coming up. If you haven't had a chance, I know Jason has been a part of this conversation, but if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, I think you will enjoy it. It really connects, we have it in our agenda, the connection, the transition connection between P-12 and higher ed. So this is going to become a part of our strategic process now with our campuses and be the first time we've had this big connection that goes to a strategic process. We have our upcoming meeting, November 4th and 5th at Transylvania University. If you go chance, please come. It's not quite as exciting as the Kentucky Board of Education meetings, but it is exciting, so please attend. So Madam Chair, I'm happy to take any questions. There's a whole lot going on, as you all know, and I won't take up your busy day by going through all of it, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Thompson. What questions might you have for CPE President? Dr. Thompson?
Dr. Thompson, thank you so much for that report, and congratulations on the many reasons to celebrate that we can add to our agendas as well. It has been really gratifying to observe the relationship, I'm going to call it the linking and leverage relationship that has developed between CPE and KDE, and I'm going to say has become enriched and ever more productive under the leadership of both you and our Commissioner. And as you seek to kind of establish these relationships as a part of the responsibility and the strategic mission at the community level, I just want to urge both of you to keep an eye on the support of more challenging outreach between the colleges of education and local school districts as we develop a really robust network of clinical settings in which new mentored teachers can be trained to bring what they've learned in the classroom to be translated through the skills that they will enact as a practitioner while feeding into the research agenda at those universities so that we are ever learners and we focus our learning on problems of practice. And to have that principle become established as an aspect of the strategic relationship would just help us all so much as we seek to serve all learners with their inevitable diverse requirements that should be honored in every center of learning, in every setting that they enter as a client, as someone that we are blessed to have a chance to serve. So I salute the effort and just ask that you add that as a strategic aspect of what we're doing as we get more and more local with the enactment of our strategies.
Well, Dr. Robinson, I appreciate you saying that. Needless to say, that is one of the tenements of what we're doing and what we want to do. I will go one step farther and say one of the items that we're working with KSU on is to, what I call, revision what a school of education looks like. I mean, how it actually builds the pipeline for underrepresented teachers, how it builds a professional development system along with a teacher prep program that builds cultural competence among our students, how we envision building a clinical process that starts early that even reaches down into our P-12 community. So we are wanting to build a beta at KSU, if you will, but while building out those points that you're talking about with all of our teacher ed programs. And if you get a chance, by the way, read those three proposals that Northern, Western, and Louisville put forth for the recruiting of minority candidates in their program. It will show you that we're starting to really think differently about this with a P-12 system. The other thing I'll throw in that is important that this board talks about, and hopefully we'll get a chance to go in depth here, is to create what I would consider a formative professional development system between our local districts and our higher ed with having in mind that this marriage is possible and this marriage is valuable, and that it can create exactly those sorts of things that you're pointing to, Sharon. So I would hope we can have some real focused conversations in this area fairly soon.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I might ask Dr. Brewer to talk with Dr. Ellis to get us copies of those proposals as well as that return on investment, Class of 2011 report that you talked about. I have seen those, run across those in our continuum work, but I'm not sure that the board members have received those, so we'll make sure you guys have access to those reports if you're interested. Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Thompson. And then to the Commissioner, back in order, for your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have slides that are coming up. I'll start off by recognizing new staff who've joined the department.
Next one.
I don't have any clickers or anything, so I'm trying to use the force. In our Office of Finance and Operations, we welcome Perla Hernandez, Demisha King, and Kendall Hall. In our Office of Career and Technical Education, Maria Bailey. And in our Office of Continuous Improvement and Support, we welcome Marsha Van Hook. Welcome to all of these new staff members. We look forward to meeting you in person and getting a chance to work with you more closely. Also want to celebrate our five Kentucky schools that were named as 2021 National Blue Ribbon Award winners. This is a very prestigious honor, and there's only a handful of schools in each state that are chosen every year. The five schools in Kentucky chosen were Anchorage Independent School in Anchorage Independent, Garmalial Elementary School in Monroe County, and I may have mangled that too. And Monroe County, Greathouse Shire Rock Traditional Elementary School in Jefferson County, Heath Elementary School in McCracken County, and Rose Parks Elementary School in Fayette County. The Kentucky schools were among 325 public and private elementary, middle, and high schools across the country that were recognized this year. The National Blue Ribbon Award Ceremony is slated for early November at National Harbor in Maryland, and we congratulate our five Kentucky schools that were awarded this incredible acknowledgement. Shifting gears, another celebration. Willie Edward Taylor Carver Jr., who is an English and French teacher in Montgomery House County High School, was named the 2022 Kentucky Teacher of the Year in September. Carver was also named the Kentucky High School Teacher of the Year. He is in his 10th year teaching at Montgomery County High School. Also selected were the Kentucky Middle School and Elementary School Teachers of the Year. They are Hallie Booth, an eighth-grade math teacher at Valley Shamlin Middle School in Boone County, and Ashley Ritchie, a second-grade teacher at Beachwood Elementary School at Beachwood Independent. Carver, the national teacher, I'm sorry, the presumption, I'm assuming, he's that good, he's that good, he's going to win. Carver will have the opportunity to serve a semester-long sabbatical at KDE and will represent the state in the National Teacher of the Year competition. Be remiss, not at this point, to also acknowledge Donnie Piercey and the great job that he's done in that role over this past year. So Willie's got some big shoes built following Donnie, but we know what he's up to. The winning teachers were among, were chosen from 24 outstanding educators, all of whom received the 2022 Valvoline Teacher Achievement Awards. This is the 21st year Valvoline has partnered with KDE to honor Kentucky educators. Congratulations to the three Teachers of the Year. Thanks, Valvoline, for your continued support. There were three finalists for the 2021 Special Education Teacher of the Year Award. The three teachers' names were Stacy Hutchinson from Glasgow High School, Kristi Pellerin from Hillard Collins Elementary School in Boone County, and Jennifer Packwood from Newport High School in Newport Independent. Nominees applied with three letters of recommendation, including one from their principal and supervisor and one from the district's director of special education. Finalists were also required to submit a short video. Each finalist will be awarded a one-year KYCEC membership and a cash prize of $250 from KYCEC and the Kentucky Council for Administrators of Special Education, KYCASE. The Special Education Teacher of the Year will receive $500 from KYCEC and KYCASE along with a scholarship to attend the Special Education Legislative Summit in Washington, D.C. Winner will be announced in November 21st through the 23rd in Louisville. Update on our ATCs, and then the School for the Blind and the School for the Deaf. During July and August, the ATCs' open houses were held at the Wayne County Area Technology Center, Estill County ATC, Lake Cumberland ATC, in recognition of their new facilities. The new facilities will offer state-of-the-art equipment and instructional opportunities for students. The 52 ATCs are currently implementing universal masking for the protection of staff and students. Additionally, the ATCs are using elementary and secondary school emergency relief or ESRT funds to provide after-school remediation and address areas of lost learning from this past academic year. 21 of the ATCs are working with Northern Kentucky, working with Northern Kentucky University and the Kentucky Campus Compact to secure career coaches to work with ATC students on post-secondary goals. The ATC staff are also conducting fall site visits and working with ATCs on improvement plans, rigorous and relevant instruction, and providing layers of support for emotional well-being throughout the continuation of the pandemic. Shifting to the Kentucky School for the Blind, KSB had a great start to this school year. Registration Day was held on August 8th and was the first event of the new school year with students and families, and we know that they've had an incredibly disruptive year this past year. Registration Day is a time for families to visit the KSB campus and for students to tour campus facilities, meet staff, and hear about important information relative to the school and complete the necessary paperwork. Families, students, and staff were greeted by a Kona ice truck, and a DJ played an 80s tunes with theme for the year, Back to the Future. KSB students and staff are out of this world, and I'm currently exposing my kids to all of the hit 80s movies that I watched. They are nonplussed by these movies. KSB continues to implement COVID-19 mitigation strategies to keep students and staff healthy and safe. Some of these strategies include universal masking, social distancing, deep cleaning, and hand washing. Athletics, KSB has 14 students participating in track and field as part of the North Central Association for Schools for the Blind. Students will be competing in a virtual track conference on September 28th and 29th. KSB students will compete against students from Indiana, Ohio, Tennessee, Illinois, and Missouri schools for blind. And shifting to KSD, Registration Day at KSD was also on August 8th. While Registration Day is typically held inside schools, the KSB moved as much as possible outside as a COVID-19 mitigation strategy. Leadership team met with families to discuss the COVID-19 procedures and expectations in place to keep students and staff healthy and safe. Again, this is different than a lot of schools in that both these campuses sit in residential spaces. Some of the procedures, including universal masking, social distancing, deep cleaning, hand washing of staff, grilled food for students and families, had also had a snow cone truck that seems to be a theme for us. We don't have one of these. Kona ice truck. In-person instruction began for students the next day, August 9th, and the staff spent time during the first week of school focusing on KSD pride, expectations, and COVID-19 mitigation procedures. KSD hired a part-time ASL specialist, and it's critical for KSD students to build a strong foundation in ASL. Strong ASL skills are vital for success in English, as well as a strong predictor for school success. We see here a newly enrolled student showing off her ASL vocabulary. KSD is currently in the process of updating several instructional and student life common areas with more than furniture. Construction projects are continuing, including the Jacobson Hall Boiler Project, which is mostly complete roofing and HVAC projects on several other buildings and repair of the pool. Campus, the campus beautification project is also continuing with work around greenhouse, planted trees, and shrubbery as the fall weather continues. KSD was invited to host approximately 15 teachers from all over the nation at the National Association of Agricultural Educators to tour KSD's ag program, the farm. KSD partners with Center College to grow produce that can be used by each of the school's food programs. Produce grown this year includes kiwi squash, beans, kale, corn, watermelon peppers, and a variety of my favorite tomatoes.
Excellent.
With that, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Welcome to new staff. Congratulations to those amazing teacher winners and finalists, and I always look forward to catching up with our ATCs and Kentucky School for the Blind and Kentucky School for the Deaf. So thank you. Any questions for Dr. Glass about his report or comments? Excellent. Thank you so much. Make sure, oh, and the Lieutenant Governor is going to be with us this afternoon, we hope, so we will just push her report forward a bit. And at this time, we will turn our attention to approval of the consent agenda items. As a reminder, these items, which as consent does require a vote, consist of the consent agenda and allows for approval in one action. You received the consent agenda in advance of the meeting, and time for you to review. At this time, does any member wish to have any consent agenda items moved to regular Hearing none, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda. Do I have such a motion?
And Chair, I'll send those.
Thank you. Motion for Ms. Adams, do I have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Bowlen. On that motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you so much. And then I'm happy to turn back to Dr. Glass with presentation of the Kelly Award for Business and Education Partnership.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joseph W. Kelly served as a member of KBE from 1989 until 1998 and provided exceptional leadership as the Chair of the Board for seven years. He was a strong leader and the fundamental early years of implementing Kentucky's nationally recognized school improvement efforts. The respected business leader and education advocate Kelly did firsthand the critical role that the business community plays in supporting Kentucky's public school system. His career exemplifies the significant contributions that members of the business community are making in support of Kentucky students. This award is given in the ball of each year to a Kentucky businessperson or to a business who has partnered with the public school or district to provide outstanding leadership that promotes school improvement and student success. Criteria for this award include creating or sustaining strategic partnerships between business and school or district that leads to improved student outcomes, including but not limited to post-secondary success and workforce outcomes, and significant contribution to a school or district that will likely lead to increased, improved educational outcomes or opportunities, or improved educational post-secondary or workforce outcomes. At this time, it is my honor to announce the 2021 Kelly Award for Business and Education Partnership to Ms. Harper Smith. I'd like to take a few minutes to share with you what her nominator had to say about her contributions. Harper Smith, Senior Manager of the Kentucky Chamber of Commerce Foundation's Workforce Center, launched the Bus to Business program in 2019. Bus to Business is a statewide initiative focused on connecting students with employers and bringing classrooms to careers. The goal of the program is to show students what career pathways are in their communities. She helped turn an idea from their Board of Managers into a reality. Through this program, students are given the opportunity to tour businesses, complete hands-on work-based learning activities, and speak directly with employers and industry leaders about career pathways available in their organizations. Students learn about what careers are in demand in Kentucky and what it takes to attain them. And I think we have Ms. Smith with us. Hi. Hi. Yeah. Come on up. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go. We have an award for you, and we'll take some pictures, and then I think we'll, we'd love to have a few remarks from you. Is that okay?
Okay. Great. Yes.
Yeah. I'm not sure what's in that candy or...
She's interested in candy.
Yeah. Here.
Thank you so much.
You could go to the microphone so that all of our thousands of viewers at home can...
Right there, on the end.
Yeah.
And so, thank you all so much. Like you said, I'm Harper Smith. I'm the Senior Manager of the Foundation at the Chamber of Commerce. We're really excited to continue our third year of the Bus to Business program, starting, actually, next week. We're going to be doing mostly virtual programming this year, but I'm going to continue to build on the program we've built over the last two years. Over the last two years, we've engaged over 40,000 students in this program, so we've got some really exciting programming coming up that will be released next week. So, I'm hoping to engage students of all ages. We typically just engage high school students, but we're expanding now to engage more elementary and middle school students as well. So, thank you all so much for this honor. I'm really excited and hope you all will share our program with your constituents. Thank you so much again. Congratulations.
Congratulations again, Ms. Smith. And on behalf of the Kentucky Board of Education and all of us here at KBE, I want to personally thank you for your dedication to Kentucky students. Thank you so much. And now, Chair, going back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Included on today's board agenda is a dedicated public comment segment. As stated on the board's publicly announced agenda, public expression was accepted in writing via email as we continue to limit in-person engagement through the pandemic. The board will only review information and feedback about matters listed on the board's agenda. Please note that public expression is not a question-and-answer session. So, for this meeting, we did receive one public comment via email. That comment received on September 30, 2021, was from Mr. John McGlone. The comment was sent to KBE members in advance of the meeting and is also posted on the KBE portal for public viewing. On behalf of all of us, I want to thank Mr. McGlone for taking the time to share his feedback with the board. You may recall that he had some comments as well as questions about vaccine protocols and finance. The Kentucky Board of Education always appreciates the opportunity to hear from constituents, so thank you again, Mr. McGlone. At this point, we're ready to dismiss and reconvene in our committees. Right on time, Meredith Brewer. For those viewing the meeting remotely, you will get off this link and onto the livestream for either of the two choices. The Operations Committee is available on the KBE media portal as well as the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee... Oh, I'm sorry. That one stays on this link. So, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee will meet in here. If you want to view that meeting, stay where you are. If you want to move over to the Operations Committee, then you will find that link on the KBE portal. Operations members, we will move to 516. To room 516 for the Operations Committee. You have not had a break, so please, on your way, or everyone, please take five minutes until we come back, and then after the committee meetings, we will break for a month. Megan? All right. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you for the indulgence of that recess and thank you to all the board members for all of the time and effort you've engaged this morning in the first half of our meeting. At this point, I want to say hello to and welcome our Lieutenant Governor, an ex-OKC member of this board, Jacqueline Coleman, who looks like she's a passenger not driving right now. So, hopefully, you are safely able to present your report. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Yes, I am not driving, but I am coming back from an event in Louisville, so thanks for adjusting the schedule so that I could give you guys an update. We have been doing lots of really good work in the cabinet, mainly around workforce development as we kind of emerged from this pandemic and are getting folks back to work in really high-wage jobs. I'm sure you heard the governor's announcement last week about Ford making the largest economic development investment in Kentucky's history that will create 5,000 jobs in a town that has two restaurants and one stoplight. And so, we're going to have to take a really good look at Hardin County Schools and the surrounding counties as well as ECTC and think about how to support that future workforce in that area. If you think about it, the first crop of employees that they hire are probably 14 to 18 years old right now. And so, the work that we all do as educators, as you all know, is think about how we can prepare our students for what's to come. So, that's a really good goal to have. We've had really two pressing priorities that have taken quite a bit of time and energy and focus on our end. One is the nursing shortage. As I'm sure you all know, we had a shortage before the pandemic. There were 6,000 nursing jobs in Kentucky that were open before the pandemic hit, and I would say 6,000 that require some sort of post-secondary credential. So, let me clarify that. And so, the pandemic has only highlighted and really increased the urgency around this issue so far. I would say the last year, maybe year and a half of the administration, we have been trying to need find, in fact, find, from our hospital, the heads of our hospitals, from the heads of our nursing schools, to figure out how we might solve this crisis. And so, the reality is, as I'm sure all of you know, there are not 6,000 nurses just sitting around waiting for us to ask them to come back to work. We have to educate them and train them. And so, we're a good four years away from closing that gap simply because of the timeline of what it will take to be trained as a registered nurse or an APN. And so, we're working on that long-term solution that will provide stability to the nursing profession and healthcare in Kentucky as it's one of the fastest-growing industries in Kentucky. But also, how do we close this gap in the immediate so that we can allow that long-term plan to come to fruition? So, it's a pretty complex issue. There's no, you know, single answer to it, but we've been working diligently for months now on finding answers to those questions and operationalizing those solutions. And then, another major initiative that has taken our time, which is where I was today, is the Student Mental Health Round Tables that we are hosting across the state. And I have to tell you that this has been one of the greatest experiences that I've had, and I'm not even a part of it. It's all about the students, but it's really been remarkable. And so, we are having 10 Student Mental Health Round Tables hosted in different regions of Kentucky so that we have a really nice diverse spread of participants. I have to tell you that the last one we had, we had 180 students from Eastern Kentucky that participated. It was unbelievable. It was overwhelming, and we all had a moment of panic, but it was a good problem to have. And then today, I was in Louisville. And so, what we're doing is working with the Student Advisory Council through KBE. They helped our office plan these events. They are the ones that are facilitating the conversations on-site, and they are also going to be the ones that present to lawmakers at the end. So, the goal of all of these round tables is to elevate our student voices and to really get to the source of the challenges that they face. And I say that because I hear a lot of adults talking to other adults about student mental health, and I think they mean well, and I do think that they're trying to help, but I also think they're missing the point if they're not actually talking to students and asking the experts about their experiences and what solutions we may be able to work together to find. And so, that's the whole purpose of this. I actually said today to the students, I said, you know, we believe that, excuse me, we believe that you deserve a seat at the table, so welcome to your seat at the table. And they love that. They love that their voice has the ability to change the experience of students in Kentucky because of this work. And so, I look forward to presenting these findings at Commissioner Glass's annual education summit at the beginning of November. We're really excited about that. And also, to working with our student leaders on presenting the findings and actually offering up solutions to lawmakers when they return for session in the winter. So, there is so much good work being done, and of course, it's being led by our students. So, that is a lot of the report from EWD C in addition to the other workforce issues that we are working on, which involves agritech and how we can fuse education into the agritech field. Aviation is another shortage that we're working through, line tech positions. So, it really is a wide array of everything from, you know, green jobs that we're seeing come with the Ford announcement of the electric battery plants in Kentucky to student mental health. So, we continue to try to cover all the bases and have great partners in the commissioner and this board, as well as President Thompson, on all of the work that we're doing. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant Governor. I'll give board members a chance to ask any questions that they might have. Ms. Blum?
I don't have a question, but I just want to share a cute story having to do with the mental health summit. I had a student at my high school who passed me in the hallway last week for the Eastern Kentucky one and said, "Ms. Blum, I know your classroom's empty a lot. May I use your classroom? I'm getting on an event with the Lieutenant Governor." And I replied, I said, "Oh, that'd be great." I said, "I'd love to pop in and say hi to her." Well, she gave me the oddest look, and I realized and recognized the look of like, "Why would you want to say hello to the Lieutenant Governor?" So, she was like, "Let me explain." And I was afraid of the Lieutenant Governor, so she was like, "Oh, that makes so much more sense." But while she was there and listening to her facilitate one of the sessions, and it was amazing, and watch her beam of pride and being able to do that was also amazing as a student. So, she's really excited for the event, for her involvement in this, so I was really glad to see that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I would just also add, Jacqueline, that I appreciate your participation on this board so much, and it's becoming clearer and clearer to me all the time why that move to have you on this board is so genius in that you always remind me of that bright one from workforce development. So, when you said 14 to 18-year-olds, it's like, yeah, those are our kiddos right now. And it's sometimes easy for us to forget that symbiosis between the work that we do and workforce development. So, I really, really appreciate you always calling our attention to those details.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? All right. We appreciate you. Please travel safely, and we've got a really riveting agenda ahead if you want to just continue to listen along. So, we're going to... And I something to mention since the Curriculum Committee got to meet our next-gen team. Lieutenant Governor Coleman is a student at University of Kentucky and taught for me in Jessup County and is a deeper-learning gal all the way through and through. So, I appreciate yet another way she adds value to our board all the time. In that regard, then, I'll turn it over to Ms. Blumworth for a report from the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee.
Yes. Well, on behalf of our committee, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, I want to thank the team from the UK Center for Next Generation Leadership for their presentation on the graduate profiles at state-level colleges. The information was invaluable to us as we adopted a goal related to this today. So, that information, along with what we continue to learn and gather, is going to really be invaluable to us as we implement this goal of building a profile of a learner for our state.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
And thanks to the committee, too, for just such great questions and really good discussion and conversation around this. So, thank you.
Excellent. This board continues to surprise and delight with the way you guys engage so authentically with the presentations that we hear. Thank you for that. And then to Dr. Todd, who will present the five items for consideration by the full board as they came out of committee today.
Can you call for a vote for each one of these individuals?
Yes, a voice vote.
On behalf of the Operations and Management Committee, I move approval of the site acquisition request of the Jessup County School District. They exceeded 10% of the maximum project budget, but the service feels it's within bounds of what they need to be doing, so we recommend approval.
And so, it's coming out of committee, so that's the motion, no need for a second? And so, then you can just call for the voice vote, Dr. Todd?
All in favor, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you have a similar sign, that's okay. Then again, on behalf of the committee, I move to approve the site acquisition request in the elements of the easement waivers for Campbell County School District. They exceed the 10% as well. I'll say a little more about that when we finish, but they have an existing facility on this big piece of property and room to put another facility on there later, and so it's very reasonable that they priced it at, I mean, that's somewhat because of the facility, so they exceed 10%. We move to approve that easement. There is a gas line running through there, and there is a regulation we have. You shouldn't have gas lines within a certain distance of the facility, but they've had it looked at in several different ways and have had...
mitigated.
...have had it in certain states, so we approve.
And I'll follow the script here and handle the voice vote for you. All those in favor of approval of the Campbell County request, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
Okay. Third one. On behalf of our committee, I move approval of the request for site acquisition by the Madison County School District. Again, they exceed the 10%, I'm about 1.5%, so they're over just 1.5%. I thought that was relative to the bounds of what they need to be doing, so we approve that as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Todd. And on recommendation from the committee, all those in favor of approval of the Madison County request, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
Okay. Third one. On behalf of our committee, I move approval of the request for site acquisition by the Madison County School District. Again, they exceed the 10%, I'm about 1.5%, so they're over just 1.5%. I thought that was relative to the bounds of what they need to be doing, so we approve that as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Todd. And on recommendation from the committee, all those in favor of approval of the Madison County request, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And I will say at this point, a couple things about the 10% limit that's been there for a long time, and when you look at property in one part of the state versus another part of the state, the value of those properties are going to be drastically different. Fortunately, the staff have put together a committee to look at some of these things that might be changed or amended in some way, and I really appreciate that. I asked the superintendent of Madison County how much trouble did it cause him to have to request over just 1.5% over that number, and he kind of smiled. He had a lot of other issues he had to deal with, but that was one that he probably could have done without, so we need to be looking at that. Number four is different. The last two, on behalf of our committee, I move approval of the request to waive 702 KAR 40160 related to total allowable floor area for a new middle school in the Bad County School District.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. On the motion from the committee, any further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Similar way, the Operations Committee moves approval of the waiver request relating to floor area and accessible allowable space for the particular Independence School District.
Excellent. Thank you. Also out of committee, this motion does not require a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
One thing I would add about these last two, about the additional floor space that we found refreshing, is that the expansion is due to inclusion of offices for health, mental health, and social service professionals, and additional common space for anti-bullying, mental detection, and other security measures. These are things that were asked for people to do, and they had additional space for that.
Yes, Dr. Todd.
When the committee's looking at the 10%, hopefully, they can also look at the model regs about computer labs.
Size.
Because computer, I was looking at that... Because computer, I was looking at that. They asked for a waiver when we're 1 to 1.
Right.
It's just wasted space that could be utilized.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And Associate Commissioner Kenny actually brought that up as an example of the antiquated nature of some of the regulations that our districts are required to abide by.
Because just the fact that, like you say, the time to ask for a waiver for something that's non-relevant today.
Sure.
Please, I can be, that would be meaningful. Same thing, not as often as you do, but I'm not.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. At this point, I'll invite Associate Commissioner Robin Kenny to the table to share with us. I don't see Lynn here.
She's online.
Oh, okay. Hi, Lynn. And Lynn McGowan-McNear.
Hello.
She is joining us right there virtually.
She looks like she's at the beach.
Yeah, she's somewhere exciting, I'm sure. So I'll turn it over on this compensation items in your portal. If you want to go ahead and open that up, and then I'll turn it over to Robin and Lynn.
I'm also, good afternoon. Thank you very much for having us here this afternoon. I've also invited Che Ritter, my Director of District Support Services. And the reason I have Che and Lynn online and in person with me, Che's going to help me as we navigate through explanation of the data that we pulled as we were doing our salary and compensation review. And Lynn is our Human Resources Director, and so she knows while Che knows the district side of the house, Lynn knows more the KDE side of the house. And what we're trying to do is really examine both sides of those houses as we look at leadership compensation here at the department. As we all know, and I'm going to kind of set the stage for this discussion just with a little bit of background, you do have information in your portal. I think as we talk about KDE, the Department of Education, as we talk about any service organization, this could be local school districts or anything else, where basically we are here to service our customers in that regard. And our customers, of course, for us, are local school districts, superintendents, parents, students, the General Assembly at times, and sister agencies. And we couldn't do any of that without our people. It is our highest and most valuable asset when we're talking about the people of our organization. It is what makes it go. Without them, nothing else would happen. And so I want to start and kind of set the stage with that as our introductory remarks. We are going to focus on leadership compensation today, but I think the other point that I want to set the context for the discussion is to really, this is a discussion to inform you of some history that has been happening here in state government and really as we compare ourselves to other markets. And it really does challenge us at all levels of our organization. So while we're going to focus on leadership compensation, it is a challenge for our entire organization as a whole. So for every person, from the people that answer the telephone when you call, to the people that do our data crunching, all the way up through our leadership team, we are losing valuable staff, and we are finding more and more difficulties in trying to recruit our staff. You know, when I think about when I first joined state government, one of the big draws was it had a great retirement system, and the health insurance sounds pretty good. And at that time, really, financial compensation wasn't the primary draw as to state government. And that was the case for many, many years, and we just didn't compete with the private sector in any way, shape, or form. And unfortunately, that's probably still the case. In most of our positions, we find it very challenging and difficult to compete with the private sector. Of course, retirement has changed over time. You know, that's not nearly as attractive as maybe it used to be, and the health insurance has changed over time. So we still don't keep up with the private sector. But within state government, there's been a little bit of activity recently that I want to share with you that is starting to recognize the challenges that we face with state government employees. In 2019, the Personnel Cabinet actually adjusted what we would call our salary schedule here for merit staff. And merit staff here are afforded protections in the merit system, and they really, if we're thinking about a comparison to our local school districts, they compare more closely with the classified staff. So if we can think of that in the context when we're doing this comparison to our local school districts. KDE, as a result of that, in 2019, they adjusted their salary schedule for merit staff, and they increased the midpoint for all those positions. Everyone was so excited until we learned that we didn't get any additional funds to implement those increases in our salaries. So what we had to do is think of ways through either attrition or savings. We had to come up with the money to try to help with that. KDE was kind of slow in coming toward that, trying to figure out how we're going to realize those savings. But this past summer, in 2021, we actually made some increases for all of our staff in accordance that were under that salary schedule, but we were limited in what we could do financially. And what we did is there's an entry point and a midpoint. And what we did is we brought the salaries of the staff in between, so to the middle of that. If you were below the middle of entry and midpoint, we brought you up. It impacted about 200 of our staff. It was a minimal thing that we did, but felt it was really important to show to our staff that we think are valuable. We have also started, as we bring in new hires, in accordance with permissible avenues of state government, as we bring in new hires to our organization, for every new hire that comes in, we can bring them in up to midpoint. So we're bringing in people at midpoint, and then anyone that is below that, in the same classification, the same office, with similar education and experience, we bring them up too. So it's another opportunity, a gift for our merit staff, to get up to that midpoint. We're also, and we'll talk about this in our ABR discussion in the budget part, but we're also doing an additional budget request, as long as you all approve that submission, for a 1% across the board for all of our employees. This was part of the LRC and the Office of State Budget Directors' budget instructions to us. All agencies in state government on the executive branch will be submitting a 1% ABR. And that may not seem like a lot, but I would share with you, KRS 188.335, which is a statute that governs merit staff and all staff in the 18A system, generally provides by statute a 5% annual increment for employees. And what has happened over the years is that 5%, which is statutorily required, gets not withstood. It's a budget language that allows the General Assembly to not withstand their statutes and take a different course of action. So that has become kind of a regularity of not withstanding annual increments for state employees. So there's not been any annual increment of any amount since 2015, and none in nine of the last 11 years. Nine of the last 11 years. It is challenging to be a state employee and not even get a cost of living adjustment. So as a reminder, to kind of put this in context, you know, back about 10 years ago, we went through this little thing called a recession, you know? So things were happening in our environment, in our fiscal environment. And I think that for those first couple of years, state employees really understood that. But then, the private sector, and commendably for a lot of our local school districts, they found a way to still provide increments for their staff. State government hasn't done that. So in the recruitment of staff, you know, our primary market is local school districts. That's where we pull our talent from. KDE staff, really, we benefit so much from having local district people come and decide to work with us. We gain perspectives that we just don't have. We can't be the boots on the ground. And so we love it when we have local school district people that want to come work for us. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen very often. And when it does, they usually come through us through a contractual mechanism called an MOA. It's a memorandum of agreement, and the benefit to that person is they get to keep their local district's salary. So they can come and work for us, but they get to keep the salary and compensation they get through local district. And that's difficult. It's a difficult recruitment sell to say, "Come work for us right now." It's also very difficult to retain our staff, and we are seeing people leave. Compensation is just not where it needs to be, and it's very, very challenging. We have some of our staff that have not received any type of bump, increment, pay raise at all for years. And yet, they come to work and continue. So it's time for us to look at compensation. We are already working on the merit staff, as I've explained, but let's talk about leadership compensation and kind of what's happening in that area. We do have certain classifications that we deem as sort of leadership positions here. They are in charge of financial policy, management of their staff, from deputy commissioner, associates, division directors, policy advisors, and program specialists. So those are the people that we're talking about. These are people that make leadership positions and are charged to manage, supervise, direct, and inform. They regularly appear before you. They regularly appear before our legislative body, and they regularly interact with our local school districts. So as we started looking at, and I do think it's important that we note that the continuing Board of Education has the sole authority through budget bill language to establish those staff that fall into exempt from the 18A salary requirements, and also you can set their compensation. And the language in the budget bills specifically asks us to look at comparable markets. So what we've done, and let me preface this by, there are probably 100 ways to do this or more. So this is not the only way. It is one way, and of course, we invite your discussion of other ways to look at this. But what we did, and this was an internal review by KDE staff, pulling information from the local school district databases, PSD and CSD, we reviewed salaries of the six largest school districts in Kentucky. And somebody might ask, "Why did you do six? Why didn't you do five, or why didn't you do 10?" And I'll be very candid. We did five. We started with five and realized we'd left one out, kind of in the middle. So that's how we got to six. They are our largest school districts, and we really thought about that as the measure because of the depth and breadth that those local school districts have as far as service to their school district and educations and students. We are also a very large organization here. We are smaller than we used to be, but we're still a large organization. And so we are looking for those comparables as far as structuring size. Again, we tried to do some comparison. We pulled the data from September 2020, which was the last full report that we had. We compared our associate commissioners to assistant and deputy superintendents, chief of staffs, and other chief positions. And for our division directors, we pulled division directors and then looked at district-wide staff and central office staff. So we were not trying to get down into school-level positions, no, no principals or people that weren't only at schools. We tried to keep it at that district-wide look, again, comparable to the staff that we have here. We calculated averages in median salaries. And then those associate commissioner and division director positions in the comparisons, not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but sort of the job responsibilities and duties kind of sounded similar as far as depth and breadth. But when we started looking at policy advisors and program specialists, which are other leadership positions in our organization, we struggled. We struggled because the policy advisors, we couldn't really find people that really look like them in the local school district. These are people that do a lot of our heavy lifting as far as regulation development, staff notes for us, enact as policy people across the department. And so we had a hard time really linking them. And likewise, our program specialists that we have labeled, these are people that do high-level, like, data work for us, as an example, and they really kind of do pieces and parts across the department. They are people that we sought to really retain in many, many aspects. So those became more complicated to really match as a class across our local school districts that we looked at. We developed a low for the associate commissioners and the division directors based upon our current lowest-paid personnel here in that class. And then we used sort of those lows and those ranges, the midpoint, to then extrapolate 10% below for our policy advisors based off the division directors, and 10% off our policy advisors for our program specialists. So that's sort of the methodology. You have in front of you the information and how we crunched the numbers and where we ended up. I want to get to the questions because I know we've got a lot on the agenda. It's a real high overview of what we've done so far. But let me also say, before we get into the discussion area, these are presented to you based upon our analysis of the data. Again, there are lots of other ways that it could have been done. And they are ranges on paper right now. You know, anytime you're talking about ranges and increases of salary or compensation, you have to have the money to make it work. So at this point in time, these are ranges only on paper for discussion. It does not mean, and I want to be very clear to even our listeners, it does not mean even if you adopt these ranges, everyone's going to get a raise tomorrow. That's not what it means. It is about recognizing and acknowledging that staff have value. And so it would still require us to make sure that we have money to achieve these goals. We would still look within the ranges to set certain positions and people based upon their education, skill, experience, depth and breadth of their job responsibilities. So there's still a lot more within the ranges that would have to be discussed. And we would hope that once those ranges are established, that the commissioner would be authorized to, within the range, be able to kind of establish where people ultimately end up. It also gives us flexibility to recruit and retain. At the end of the day, that's what this discussion is about. It is about the ability to honestly recruit people to come and work here with us, and it's also about retaining the valuable staff that we have right now. I am losing my voice, a little leftover from the UK-Florida game here. So I did scream really loud. I'm convinced that's why we won.
You and everybody else.
But I apologize because I am losing my voice right now. But let me stop here and invite some conversation and invite some comments.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And don't forget that we do have Lynn on the line and Che here. If you have some more specifics, Lynn helped me a lot when we started talking about this to understand kind of the context at the state agency. Let's just open it up to Robin's invitation to talk out loud about what you're thinking about in terms of this item. Dr. Robinson?
So I'm trying to understand what would be, is there a more compelling option? I mean, we're talking about getting market-based, and theoretically, that means more competitive. And that, I want to get to, how do we present a rationale in terms of the state legislature to support this? I mean, and is there another basis for making, setting up a compensation system? I mean, we're talking about one that's market-based and performance-driven, okay, if I can call it that?
Uh-huh.
As opposed to, I guess, a merit-based system that would be credentials for entry and presumptive performance or some... How do we make the case? The case is what we want to figure out, because we've got to get the talent.
So I think Dr. Robinson's making the nexus all the way to the additional budget requests.
Yes.
So it is the authority of the State Board of Education to set these ranges, but as Robin has been so careful to indicate, unless the money's there, the raises don't happen.
Exactly.
So what does it look like for us to? And I agree. I think we have to make sure that we're taking care of our own house in this conversation. And how do we?
So I think there are a couple of things that are already in play. The personnel cabinet has testified in front of the appropriations and revenue committee about sort of the conditions of state government employees overall and where pay is affecting the ability to recruit and retain. So that's, that's part of our budget request, the 1% to get everyone going. We would do a separate and distinct additional budget request for this piece of it and calculate based upon the discussion results from today. If you all adopt a salary range, we would then calculate a separate ABR and start advocating in that manner. So we will work with Chuck Truesdale, our legislative liaison, and start informing sort of the challenges that we're facing here in the Department of Education. The Kentucky Board of Education is in a very, is in somewhat of a unique position in being able to do this for the non-merit staff and set those salary ranges. Not other, not all other state government agencies have that ability.
Is it also my understanding that LRC has opened a similar discussion?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Sheri Young. LRC has also engaged a study of their own staff because they have not kept up the competitive market for their own staff. And so they are doing the same thing, trying to analyze what the competitive market is pulling their staff away from them. So that's happening right now as well.
Other questions or comments? Dr. Pope?
First of all, thank you for detailed report and additional information. I guess some of the concerns are the questions I have. First of all, it's sad and ridiculous that in the last nine of 11 years that people haven't received a little bit of a particular increase. So I'm all for bringing an appropriate increase. Some of the concerns that I have, when I was, you know, going through this, and you're right, methodology, but I've been through, you know, multiple different studies over time from different things. Then the thing that's hardest for me to, to, to grapple with this, and I'm not opposed to a new salary range, two things. One, when we did a salary range in the past, KTRS came back and said, no, you can't do a salary range. It has to be based on steps. Are you saying that you have an exemption to that for KTRS? Because when we had salary ranges in Boone, they disallowed that come retirement time. And then they went back and said, no, those aren't considered regular step raises like the other staff. So my concern is the same thing Sharon's. If we're going to a performance-based system, how do we then say to the legislature, we're not willing to do that for teachers at the same time? I think we've got a little bit of a problem there in image on that. So I'm not as opposed to a salary range, but that salary range at the same time has steps built into it. You know, you said we went from, let's say, low to midpoint, from midpoint to maybe high. That those should be, you know, based on that spread, that those should be separated out. That's one thing. Instead of an employee going from, let's say, for example, a low salary of 125 to 140, you know, automatically, or to 195, that's hard to.
Well, and let me, let me clarify because they would not automatically go from the low to the mid or the mid to the high. It is about setting that range for our staff that we still may have some staff that we, we may be able to do like a 1% for everybody, which is just move them incrementally. Our goal is, you know, midpoint is sort of the aspiration, I guess. If it's more than that, then you're looking for those exceptional candidates that are, have additional education, experience, knowledge, hard to retain, hard to recruit. So I want to be clear that the, the range is just that. It's to be able to look at it from an average in the middle. And that midpoint really comes from looking at the average in local school districts as a comparison. So, you know, even though we've put that in there, we could easily just pull that out and say a low and a high. It's really just for reference purposes of the way we looked at the data.
Yeah, but then that's what I'm saying. I think that gets into Ms. Robinson saying that that's a performance-based system based on experience, but what they're bringing to the thing versus that. So that's one concern that I have. The other concern that I have, you know, of hearing out there, you know, that the, I think that, you know, once again, I think there's a, there's, there's almost something in between because the, the midpoints here, you know, for these are then higher than, you know, superintendent salaries on average across the state and the other things. I know you did it based on the six highest districts, but there's two districts in there that really skew that information one way. So I would, you know, and this goes back to my earlier thing earlier today about having a little bit more time on some types of issues that we would have a working committee on some of these things. Because I'm not opposed to this. I'm not opposed to giving our people an increase. But I am opposed to the spread of a midpoint being higher than maybe 90% of our other particular districts out there. Then I think it's also, it's just hard to justify to the people out in the field that the differences on being skewed by Fayette County and Jefferson County State. You know, I think that there's a medium approach as opposed to an average approach that could get to a very good compensated system, but not one that somebody's going to look at and say, these are, these are very significant numbers. I mean, and you're right. I guess maybe the, you know, the thing is in the, I don't have necessarily a trust, issue of trust, let's say with Jason, but there are other individuals that could be sitting in that particular seat at different times that I've experienced over time that I don't necessarily have that trust issue to go to an entire performance-based system. I would rather see if we had a low point, midpoint, and high point, that we had points in between. There are, it doesn't have to be here, here, and here three midpoints.
Just clarification. Can you tell the people more when you say a performance-based system? Tell me.
Okay, well, let's say that I'm coming in at 10 years of experience and Allison is coming in with 10 years of experience. Are we basically receiving the same thing? But if you're going to take our experience and then say Allison's was job at this was X, so we're going to give her a little bit additional compensation by that versus myself? That's a performance-based system. I mean, if I have two science, if I have two science teachers coming in right now and they've got 15 years of experience, they're both getting 15 years based on that step. Right now, that's not necessarily the case based on this. You could determine exactly what you want to pay. And to me, that's then performance-based because you're going to value one's worth over another person's worth coming in based on what you're going to give them to start with.
So that's helpful. I think talking about setting the initial compensation is the conversation there. And I think that those will likely be much more black and white, like years of experience in related fields, educational attainment, not Allison did a better job than Randy when she was doing the same job. And so moving forward, we're not talking about a performance system based on differentiated compensation or bonuses or that kind of thing. So just for clarity, it helps to understand, Randy, where you're coming from and the use of that term as well.
I think it's, one of the questions is how do you set the initial compensation? So where are you working with? So we need a range on that that recognizes that we are competing in a labor market. And so what Robin and her team have done is tried to identify the labor market from whom we would be competing with talent for. If we want to include superintendents into that role, that's different. Because in what, the analysis that she did, the only people that I would say are analogous to a superintendent is my role. So that's a chief executive. I would say it's a different function. But we could include that in the methodology. So I think that's a methodological critique. We could change that. It's also, I think, a decision on the methodology that we use, whether or not to include Jefferson and Fayette County. The rationale for including them is that they do compete with us for staff. Typically, it's a one-way path. They leave us and go there for the reasons that they're included here. And the specific roles that a lot of the staff that those two districts have. And, you know, Boone County and some of the other larger districts have some of these positions as well. They're, they're very specific roles.
Do we pull the salaries from UNIS or did we actually take the ranges in those districts for those positions for low and high also? Or did we just take their salaries and say, this is the current salaries? We didn't take years of experience that those people had in.
Right, we pulled it right from the SD, CSD.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you didn't, I mean, we're established in a range here. Let's say just pulling on the associate commissioner because it's up here, from 115 to 170. When you looked at, let's say, Jefferson or Boone or Canton, did you go based on those ranges or you just did the salary of those people, divided them out by average?
Yeah, but that our low that we've established for the classification is the actual salary of the lowest paid person here at KGE in that classification. So that's where the 115 came from for the associate commissioner.
Okay.
And so if you look at the chart on page three, Randy, the low for the district group would have been the lowest paid person identified at that district in that role. And the high would have been the highest paid person in another district.
Correct. And I understand that. But let's say that the district person that knows typically in a district school might have 25 years' experience. I don't know what they have here at KGE one way or the other. They probably have just as many. But I see a comparison with apples and oranges here too versus ranges for that. That's why I just need more time. But, you know, that's, that's why I'm, you know, I've got lots of questions. I have no problem with increasing the range. If I increase a range to a certain amount, I just want to feel that I can justify that.
No, no, I appreciate it.
And I think everybody here deserves that. But when you're doing ranges, take people out of the equation. And I got to explain to that range. And I just don't know how, you know.
No, 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 we hear you. And I absolutely hear your heart in this. Robin said very valid legitimate questions. Thanks for that. And what we don't know, Randy, to your point, is that that low salary at $89,897, we have no idea looking at this data, how many years' experience he or she had. So the likelihood that some are high experience and others are low experience is probably pretty high just by the nature of the randomized pool. But, but we don't know. And so one of the things that we can certainly talk about as we take a look at this, and I think I feel a little bit more sense of urgency than, than perhaps I should, but I do want us to consider a recommendation in that I don't want to miss the opportunity to establish this. And it seems to me at some point we will have waited too late to make that decision. Is that fair, Robin, in terms of?
Yes, if we're going to ask for additional funding this month, they never request, we would need to do that with our budget submission. And that's on the agenda for today. Now, with that said, I mean, if you want to come back and revisit it, you could. This is not just set at one time and walk away from it and never come back to it. You can certainly always come back. The board has the authority to come back and revisit it. But I guess we would request that you come up with some kind of range, which would then permit us to start calculating some type of additional budget request to, toward that opportunity that we don't want to miss to have that conversation with the general assembly. I mean, I, I support what the commissioner has said. I mean, it is, is very possible that we will not receive additional funding from this. And if that is the case, we would have a range. And then we will accordingly try to effectuate change through savings and attrition and not through the general assembly.
So this is just a moderate kind of compromise consideration. I'm not sure I love it. But if you look at the summary section at the bottom of page five, and I know I'm messing with your algorithm here, Che, but I'm wondering if, if we look across those lines and we see a low of 125, a mid of 140, what if the high, I'm just sensing that maybe it's the high that causes more heartburn than not. What if the high were simply the difference between the low and the mid added to the high? So it would become 125, 140, 165, 115, 140, 175. Yeah, the math gets going over there, doesn't it? But in some way, the high salary isn't quite as high as the high salary is noted here might be a compromise stance. I don't go really strongly about that. But if that is in fact the source of heartburn in some cases, then I think we could certainly consider that.
My question is, should we adopt a salary schedule, high to low? And let's say there are three associate commissioners. Do all of them have to plug into that same? Because to me, that ties the commissioners' hands if he wants to hire. Let's say, do we value all of them the same? Are all these positions valued the same? So I, if I'm chief bottle washer, I would like to have some leeway in determining where to plug these commissioners in, in the salary schedule, rather than everybody who's an associate commissioner gets this and everybody who is a policy advisor gets this. Is that what we're saying here now?
Yeah, I want to make sure that I let Robin answer that question because the way you posed it, Al, this is really interesting to me. And because it's causing me to think about those, instead of the initial hires and the initial setting of the salary, those that are already here, if we have the money to offer raises. So how would that work, Robin?
Yeah, so I think that, and it is difficult because we are not a school district, so we do things a little differently than school districts. The range is just that. It is to allow and establish and give authority to the commissioner to then make those incremental decisions within that range. He would have that flexibility to do that. You know, but as the commissioner also said, you know, part of managing your staff and thinking of salary and compensation is to make sure that you are keeping a cohesive team across the board. So you don't really want to mess up the apple part by, by creating great differences, right? And I think really for our leadership team, we've tried to do that. When we look at opportunities for advancement, we do look across the board. We usually do not look at one person to do that. But the commissioner would have the flexibility to make those decisions within the range that you have established.
Please.
Pardon? Just to follow up on Mr. Johnson's question. I think the very unsatisfactory answer on how we would handle it is it depends. And it again comes back to what does the labor market require? So for example, if we're hiring, if I had to hire a CFO or a, someone to replace Robin, it may well take more than 115 to get someone of her caliber. Or a general counsel, we lost time. And those are higher paying positions, so they may take more. At the same time, I think we'd have to balance that against the staff that we have here and how much of a disparity do we create? An internal pay equity problem by bringing someone in way exponentially higher than someone else? Because creating ranges is likely to also bring in some variability in what you pay people. But I think it's, that variability would be limited by always looking internally and saying, can we with a straight face look at your own staff and say, I'm paying you fairly?
Ms. McCrory?
I'm, I'm sitting here and I've had this little battle inside of me thinking, yes, I was a teacher for decades. I actually had some years where my salary backtracked because of insurance and other issues. And raises were few and far, just almost nonexistent during the course of it. And then I thought, this is the board who takes care of you all just as our local boards take care of our school districts. And we should be the individuals setting an exam. We need to take care of our people just as our local boards need to take care of their people. My concern here goes back to this internal equity issue. And if our main goal here is recruitment and retention, both, and keep it as equitable as possible, how in the world are you working up a budget to present, to make everybody fair? To make it all fair and equitable?
So, so for our merit staffers, is those people? So for our merit staff, there is those pieces and parts we're trying to kind of get together that we talked about earlier. For the leadership team, it is difficult. I mean, it is about finding the money to be able to not only provide that salary increment, but also to sustain it. I mean, because, you know, once you make that investment, it's a recurring expense that you got to keep paying for. So it's not just like, well, we'll find the money this year and, you know, keep moving along. But it's worth it. It's worth trying to find it so that we can make the advancements for our staff. We're just gonna, we're gonna lose people otherwise.
Looking on recruitment side, I don't want to call it a dangling carrot, but is that what it's going to be right now? We're trying to get this, so this is what we're trying to get from work for us?
No, we would never hire staff without having the funds available to make that commitment. So we would never do that. But where we sit right now, I mean, people look at our compensation, and they know right now we're not getting annual increments. You know, they know that's a fact. We are hopeful that the general assembly will take action on annual increments for all of our executive branch employees. They do that, that would certainly help our recruitment efforts to build up. But, you know, right now, the challenges we face are, we don't look like a great place to come to work because of financial compensation. I will say, it's a great place to work, because of the people we get to work with, but not due to compensation.
Are we bleeding employees?
I wouldn't say we're bleeding right now. You know, this cycle of the work that a lot of our people do, you know, there are peak times that you leave here or come here. You know, it's during the end of the school year, summertime, and then you're off again. So a lot of our people do stay and kind of finish off the year, just like you would say in a school district. But for those non-school district employers that recruit, you know, we are losing some people there.
I just have a question that goes way lower than the talking here. But I'm not sure I understand the range issue. You know, I come from the public schools where one to four years, four to eight years. So when you're talking about the low, mid, and high, are you talking about people coming in at this and move to this, or is that just, is the range just from the low to the high?
It is just a range, it is just a range. That middle is there to kind of inform of comparison to the local school district. And we do operate different than local school districts. I mean, we are a state government agency, we're not a local school district. So the rules about local school districts where you advance based upon so much for years of experience and stuff like that, we don't really have that in our world. We do in the merit system, which is that other group of our staff that we talked about. And that's the classifications that you fall in. You might need a minimum of X number of years of experience to go into a certain classification. But generally, for our leadership staff, and I think it's important to remember, you know, we serve at the pleasure, we serve at the pleasure of the commissioner. And so the things about you getting a certain pay for certain years of experience, that doesn't exist in our leadership world. It's very different.
Between the merit program that you were talking about and this proposal, does that cover all employees, or is there somebody left out?
All employees. Yeah, well, MOAs are not really our employees, they're here on a contract basis, yes.
What's the percentage of merit versus non-merit?
The hospital district, it was 50/50 certified classified.
Well, yeah, but she's saying, don't compare.
Yeah, just giving an example. Sorry, I don't have that number. Lynn, are you still on the line?
I'm still on the line. Is he asking for the number of non-merits that would be affected?
Non-merits versus merits. So if you could give us the non-merit number, if that would help us in the compare to the non-merit, it is not 50%.
Okay, I'll give you that number in just a moment.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
I have a couple of questions, we're waiting on that. My first question is, you talked about we're hurting employees at K E. Are we hurting more in the leadership role for employees and recruiting people? Or are we hurting more in the rank and file, the merit position employees?
It's both, it really is both. We are losing both leadership positions as well as our merit employees. In sort of our, in our merit world, the way that you can increase your compensation most frequently is you leave your job and you go to another agency or another position. That's how you increase your compensation. Because if you sit in one place, I mean, we saw the annual increments, you're not going to get anything else. So for merit staff, you move around in order to effectuate that compensation.
So Allison, that's a really good question, in that if we were doing that study, the market analysis for merit employees would be other governmental agencies, as opposed to the leadership.
My second question, and I may have maybe totally misunderstanding this, so just I kind of want to clarify a question. I thought I saw somewhere in this, or we may have spoke on it, that if someone, and this may have been more for a different position than leadership, I'm not sure, but if someone were hired, let's say for the associate commissioner position midpoint, $140,000, then those that were behind them would automatically be bumped up to that salary?
That is for our merit employees.
So that is not for the leadership?
We could do the same thing with the leadership staff. It would be permissible to do that if you brought someone in, you could bring other leadership staff up to the same point, and you could look at similar education skill, experience, et cetera. You could cross those and cross those, I think.
And I asked that because my concern was that, you know, let's say one person was brought in at the $140,000, there were three people still at the $115,000, and they automatically got bumped. That would be a lot more money that would be retired within our system, which would then affect possibly the decisions the commissioner makes on what he brings someone in on. And, you know, and that's possibly a $25,000 jump for someone. And is there any, would there be any qualifications on that, you know, their work evaluation? Would that be take place in that? Because you could potentially, I mean, not that I think anyone here is not doing their job, but there could be someone who's not doing as an effective job as others that automatically get $25,000 raise. And in my world as a teacher, and not getting any raises for years, you know, or in a lot of other people's, you know, in your merit employees, that's a lot of money for one person to get in one step, just because someone else was hired. So that was my concern, is why I was asking that.
And to follow up on your question, you know, it's a recruiting tool to have for the commissioner. If people are already here, then are we just going to jump everybody up to that level? You know, I don't know, that is a whole lot of money. It's like, well, I hired her because I couldn't get her unless I paid her $140,000. You already make that, so we hire her, we just going to bring you up to $140,000? You know, we live in a world where people know there are differences, you know. Differences, you got to do what you got to do to get them and retain them. So I don't know like that. I don't know about moving everybody up because you hired somebody at a different level, but that doesn't seem to make a lot of business to me.
Other questions?
I do have one question. I know that someone asked about different groups of people. The federally funded time-limited F F T L, are they included in any of this? Or is that a separate thing as well as the M O A people?
Federally funded time-limited employees are actually employees of the department, so they are included. But it depends on whether they fall into the merit classification or the leaderships. But they would be treated wherever they fall.
Whichever, okay.
Oh, Dr. Robinson and Dr. Poe.
Well, I'm not trying to close off the discussion, but I am trying to discuss under the framework of a motion. And I want to offer the motion to approve the leadership compensation range pursuant to HB 192. There's a second, I'd like to speak to my motion just for.
Thank you. Still knowing that we have a discussion period coming up, we do have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ms. Ba, we have that motion and second? Commenting on the motion, Dr. Robinson, and then further discussion, Dr. Poe?
Yeah, I just want to just give us a chance to think about this as a structure by which we can create a recruitment and retention tool in the form of compensation ranges that will be administered by an executive who understands the importance of cohesion in an organization, who understands the importance of differentiation, not just in the labor market, but differentiation and succession planning within the workforce, the ex-stand workforce, who has the capacity to use the ranges to incentivize people establishing career learning objectives and projections that they are going to challenge themselves, because there's some hope of being recognized for that new capacity and putting that new capacity at work at market. So there's, under, there's no compensation system where you say to the executives, here is a template with connect the dots, and you may only do that, because anybody would find a way to do what they need to do to get done what needs to get done for the benefit of the organization. And you can't, we can't cover every possible contingency in any kind of template anyway. So I do want to encourage the notion of considering these ranges. I think that the floor is open for some modification of the actual high number, or we could direct that that be done. But I'd like for us to consider the idea first, and then I think we have a argument to take as a way of supporting additional budget requests.
I need a clarification on the note, because that last part confused me. So are we approving then a range without these numbers? So that, is that what you're saying? Or we're approving that range because, that's a clarification. I'm not sure what the motion is based on that last comment. If we're just approving a range, I don't care without numbers, but if we're approving a range with numbers, we can't say, here's this range, and then we can contingent on another range. I'd rather have that other range, I just need a, for a question.
Here's the proposal, this is the motion, and I was just referencing a previous comment that.
I have another question.
I think she means as presented.
Yes, presented, absolutely.
So I have another, I just have another clarifying question. So because you said we have to have, you know, first of all, I will always hate to be rushed. I'm just going to say that. I can't stand to be rushed, because then we're making decisions without appropriate input. But anyway, with that being said, when you said we have to make that decision because we have to give it to the legislature for things, so that means to me, and I might reading in this, you already have potential where you're going to make increases versus just getting a range, because it's got to be within the budget, because why can't we come back next month or have a special meeting by the commissioner to approve a range based on a budget? I mean, you're going to be putting a budget, this range in our total budget is not going to be that much.
No, it's not, it's not.
I don't understand why it has to be immediate without, or some, you know, change in that high range. I mean, because the first thing is, as I'm being understood, is we're not going to go from 125 to 195. The maximum you would go, begin with, is 125 to 140, because nobody's at these midpoints, correct? Currently? I mean, we could approve a range with the fact that we come back and do a high salary range later, because nobody's at those midpoints right now.
I think that is correct. Lynn, Lynn may need your way in, but I do not believe anyone is at the midpoint right now.
No one is at the midpoint at this point.
I don't think that midpoint bothers anybody. I'm speaking for myself. Midpoint does not bother me whatsoever, okay? I'm just going to say the high range is due, based on the limited study of not comparing salary ranges, but salaries of individuals currently in a position, because, no offense to Todd, but Todd could leave here and go to Jefferson County like his peer did, and get a lot more, but he also had a lot more experience. I mean, you got to take that into consideration when you're going to salary range.
Dr. Poe, I think that's a good point. What you could do, and what we need in order to make the additional budget request, is we have to have something that's directing us so that we can then calculate. So if, I offer this only for future discussion, I guess, if you would like to direct us to, as part of our additional budget request discussion, to use midpoint for existing employees right now, that would satisfy what I need to make that additional budget request. That doesn't mean that we would automatically move everyone to midpoint. It would give us a dollar amount that we could justify and defend to the general assembly of the path we're moving forward. I feel like I have to say, if you stop at the midpoint, I think that does limit our agency. If you make that the high, that does limit our agency in really being able to actively recruit and retain employees.
I'm not proposing the midpoint, be it, I'm just saying for a budgetary standpoint.
Yes, I think we could do that.
I just think, I'm just, for me to go where we want to go, or you want me to go, I have to have more justification in that high salary.
I respect that very much.
You know, I have no problem whatsoever, and I have no problem even if we pass that high range, because I think that people do that, it's just for me to be able to go out there and say that I'm willing to support that high range. I mean, I think that's just a steep jump from where we started to where we're going. Do I want to get there? Yeah, I think everybody here deserves, if they're making that, commissioner says they're making it. I just, you know, carte blanche, it's a difficult time with, I know we're comparing ourselves with districts and then not comparing ourselves with districts. So, I mean, districts aren't giving X number raises. Do I think that these people deserve what the others are getting? Yeah, I just think that one district skews a lot of things here.
Very helpful, thank you, Randy, so much. And at first I thought perhaps we were considering a friendly amendment, but I believe we landed at a place where the motion can still stay on. And then, Robin, you heard, in terms of, and Jason, you too, in terms of kind of what our comfort is with moving anywhere significantly beyond that midpoint. I mean, we can certainly ask for that feedback as those budget requests are approved and salaries actually change.
And if we would like to revisit at the December board meeting to work on the other part, if that's the pleasure of the board, we could run numbers differently, if that's the pleasure of the board. I think it's very helpful if we can, if the board is in agreement for us to calculate that A D R based upon up to midpoint, as reflected in the stack.
We hire a C E O, this is how I've always come down. If Dr. Glass is comfortable with this proposal, and I know he has put some input into it, and he's studied this, whereas we might not have had the time to do it individually. You know, we got to trust him. But that means automatically somebody $195,000. I don't think that's what it means, it's just the adoption of a, of a, of the schedule. And so, I plead, you made the motion.
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
Do we have a second also?
Yes, we do. Further discussion?
Yes, motion and second. Andy, start the discussion.
I want to summarize what I think your options are. You have a motion and a second to, as you guys presented. So you propose Robin, the rationale behind that methodology, the way I did that, that's one option. My second option is to reject or just not act, in which case we continue forward with a status quo. The impact of that would be what we've been doing for years, so nothing changes. We won't make a budget request to the general assembly. That's not, wouldn't likely have gotten anything to support this anyway, so practically not a large effect from that. It would mean the flexibility that I would have to make any changes through attrition or reshaping roles. or reshaping organizations is still limited, but it's status quo if you don't take any action. You could delay, bring it back at another time, so December or some special meeting. That's, that's an option, too. A sort of a middle point on that between act and accept what you have or don't do anything is to offer an alternative to the motion or ask to amend her motion. One suggestion I would have for how you might do that, if you look on page five of the presentation, one of the calculations that they've included there is called the spread. And the spread is, is a measure of what's the minimum or the low salary point, and then what's the high salary point. So you see, most of those are around 50%. So if you wanted to shrink down the high end, you would lower that spread number to something like 0.4 or 0.35 or something. So for example, if you had 115,000 and then you multiplied that times point, 1.35, that gives you a high end of 155,000 and something. So that's, and I've seen salaries that are calculated that way. You just have a numeric number that you use. You have the minimum, then you use a formula to drive what the high end limit is from, for a budget estimation of cost limiting purposes. So I think those are three paths that are available to you. You can approve as presented. You can not approve or not act sensibly for the purpose of bringing this back at some point in the future because I've heard that there's an interest in doing something. Or you can modify it to closing.
I call for a question or a motion.
Call for a question. Thank you so much. And so we have a motion on the floor and a second. To reiterate, that motion will be as presented to approve the leadership compensation range for student hospital 192, 2021, as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please respond like sign, or with no.
No.
All right. Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, for grappling with this. Robin, you need a little bit of a break, so we're going to adjust the schedule a bit. And thank you. And we would appreciate, as you've heard from Dr. Poe and others, some follow-up on this at the December board meeting, as you kind of go back to the drawing board on some of these issues as we have discussed today.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for the very good questions. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And right here in front of me just a second ago was the very capable commissioner of the Kentucky High School Athletics Association, Julian Tackett. There he is. There he is, right there. So if you would, please, we will be coming back to the biannual budget requests. Let's give Robin and team a bit of a break. And so we will move to item C, Amendment of 702-KAR 7:065, designation of agent to manage middle and high school interstalatic athletics. And I'll turn it over to General Counsel Todd Allen and Commissioner Tackett for this item.
Thank you, Chair. I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Tackett and his team at KHSA. We have the three annual amendments to the KHSA regulation. Keep in mind that the board by statute designates the Kentucky High School Athletics Association as its agent for managing high school interscholastic athletics throughout the state. They go through a process on an annual basis of having their constituency groups review all of their bylaws, constitution, things of that nature, and suggest amendments. So that is the process that is coming before you today. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Tackett and Jeff.
Thanks, Todd. And I'll be more brief than normal because I know you're, you're running a tight schedule. We've only had one thing that's come up since the last time we talked to you. We had an election among our school representatives in the Board of Control that basically created an unbreakable tie. They had enough faith in us that we were going to be fair, that they found a way to break it, but we felt the schools needed to codify that. So one of the amendments you'll see in the Constitution does create a tiebreaker point, and that was important for us. I don't think that either myself or whoever follows me needs to be in the position of making an arbitrary decision as it comes to selection of board members. So it was good that they got that done. The majority of anything else we brought to you different than it was a year ago is simply changes in our rules that are necessitated by the passage of Senate Bill 128. There are some waivers that are specific to 2021, 22 that that bill necessitated. We've worked with the legislature and with Todd's office. Todd's been fantastic to work with, and we really appreciate that. And I think we've got it all covered to where we can try to fight for another year in a good way.
128 was to supplement the school year. Those are allowed students throughout the state to repeat and supplement the school years, which had a big impact on KHSA athletics. So you should have in your portal both the amended regulation, amendments appear with underlining and strike through, and then the big changes that Commissioner Tackett was talking about are actually the documents incorporated by reference that are also attached to the portal.
Board members, what questions might you have for Todd, or Chad, or Julian? Yeah, good staff note. There we go. All right. Thank you, guys, so much. At this point, I would be happy to entertain a motion to approve the amendment to 702-KAR 7:065, designating, the designation of an agent to manage middle and high school interscholastic athletics to the KHSA. Do I have such a motion?
I do, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Here you go. All those in favor of the motion, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, no. Any queries? Commissioner Tackett, just keep managing middle and high school athletics.
Trust me, if you think you have a hornet's nest now, have somebody else do this. We're not the target. I would say this, Chair Young. I do want to thank Dr. Glass and David Couch and the entire staff. The last 19 months have been extraordinarily difficult on everybody involved in management. Communication's been outstanding, and you've got the right people over there in charge.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Commissioner. And to say back to you, our friend, for the partnerships that you've shown the Commissioner and to this state board in the time that we have been assembled as this body, we appreciate you very much. I joke with you, Julian, that I, the last thing I want is to be designated in charge of middle and high school. So I'm so happy that those guys are doing that. All right. Thank you so much. And then also with us, moving to review items, this is section 17, item B. Joining us today, I'm so happy to see the team from the Pritchard Committee, along with Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster. This is around the work of the Pritchard Committee for Academic Excellence in Family Engagement. Brooke Gill is with us, and I also see Executive Director Bridget Lam Ramsey with us as well. So Brooke and Kelly, if, Brooke, if you would, go ahead and share with us about the missing piece. Somebody may have, I, I went out of order, so she may also be online.
Probably not. I think I saw her.
We did see her earlier, so maybe I'm donning the running shoes now. Amy, the foremission, I'm just, Associate Commissioner, Dr. Kelly Foster.
Good afternoon. I don't believe those are our.
No, we're advancing to slide number 87. It was a big slide, dang.
I feel it. I feel it. I just wanted to rest, right, and then I thought you guys would go back to the budget, so I followed up.
I just want to keep you on your toes.
That's right. That's right. All right. We'll go ahead and get started. First, I want to thank Pritchard for joining us today. And I'll give you a little bit of background of while we're here and while we wanted to share the work and collaboration between the department and Pritchard over the last couple of months. And Brooke has led points from the Pritchard Organization, and in my office have worked very closely with them. So on March 30th, 2006, then Commissioner Jean Gilfley gave the Commissioner's Parent Advisory Council members this instruction, and it stated, "My goal is outstanding practice to involve parents of every school in the state. Your charge is to pull together an agenda for the state and produce a document that builds on what exists and pushes us to higher level." And out of that document came the missing piece. Go to the next slide, please. So the missing piece document has been used across the state in schools for many, many years now. It is a piece that local school boards and site-based decision-making councils have used. It is a document that we have used with family resource centers and parents, as well as turnaround schools over the last 10 to 15 years. And so one of the things that the Pritchard Committee or could want to talk to you about today is the work they've done to revisit this document and update this document. And so they reached out to the department to find a way that we could partner and collaborate on how they could revise and refresh this document to help the work across, across the district.
So Brooke, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today. This is my first time coming to a Board of Education, so very exciting, and I'm honored to be here.
You're not, you're not thinking the word exciting?
Well, thank you for having me. We know now more than ever the importance of partnering with families, and we're hearing from schools that they understand the urgency to kind of pick up their game when it comes to how do we build relationships with families, how do we partner more effectively. Not only do we not have in-person events, so typically our family engagement looks like events happening at the school, in-person parent-teacher conferences, those sort of things. So all of that is on hold, but it also opens this door so that we can rethink what family engagement should look like and how it can really be at its best. So we have a research quote up here that we, that we often reference. This isn't one research study. This is a meta-analysis across hundreds of research studies that continue to show the same thing. The best predictor of student success being to the extent in which the family is involved. We see it not only represented in grades, but also in attendance. We also see it with social and emotional skills, and a lot of us are probably like, yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. I'm not surprised by that. So we were already taking on the task of updating the missing pieces before COVID hit, and that really accelerated our work and created a bigger demand for the work because schools really wanted to know strategies for connecting with families. So if you go to the next slide, a couple of the things that we know are really important for family engagement. There's a quote to the side from MetLife survey in 2005, and I would argue that it's even more pressing now than then, that family, engaging with families is the number-one area where teachers do not feel prepared. In Kentucky, you do not have a mandated amount of hours that you have to learn about family and school partnership in your teacher preparation programs. So some teachers get some education and skills about engaging with families, but mostly you learn it on the job, and some folks are really kind of natural at it, and others really struggle with it. So when we're looking at you, just want to click through this slide. That would be great. So when we think about where our schools are at right now and knowing that teachers are already struggling in this area, we know family engagement is important to increase the capacity of our schools. This allows schools to partner more effectively, not only with their families, but their community-based organizations. We've seen, too, that especially with mask mandates was one of the examples, when families are at the table and things don't go as planned, they're a lot more understanding because they saw the process beginning to end. They saw how it works, the different layers of decision-making. So we know that families want to be at the table when these big decisions are being made. If and when we have to go back to remote learning, we know that the schools that already had strong relationships with their families fare better than schools that were trying to build relationships in the middle of remote learning. So it's really important that we think about family and school partnerships as we think about success in remote learning. And finally, we really have the opportunity to reimagine family engagements since our traditional ways of engaging families are not happening right now, like the in-person. So I bring you to what we've been doing for the last couple of years and why we are here today. Kentucky is one of 12 states, I'm not sure if you all know, that we are one of 12 states to receive the U.S. Department of Education grant via statewide family engagement center. We are really proud of being one of those grantees. Again, that was before COVID, but as soon as COVID hit, these 12 states have been in tight collaboration with national partners in understanding more innovative ways to partner, families and schools to partner. So Sipul is the, Pritchard is the home of Sipul, which has been around since 1996. So we were doing family engagement before it was cool, and we, we really credit the Sipul to the, to the receiving of the U.S. Department of Education grant, which has allowed us to take on this work at such a large scale. And our partners, National Center for Families Learning, based out of Louisville, Learning Grove in Northern Kentucky, and Partners for Education at Brea College and the KDE have been invaluable in everything that we're doing. So we took that 2006 missing piece of the proficiency puzzle, and we intended to just create that first box, which was the guide. But it took on a life of its own as the demand kept rising and as each collaboration kind fed into the next. But I want you all to know, as the board, what we have created and will be launching November 15th, which will be Kentucky's first family engagement and education meet. The governor will declare it Kentucky Family Engagement Education Meet for the first time. We will be launching all of these materials. Right now, we are testing them with 59 schools, and I have a list for you all, cut out of those 59 schools that are testing these resources right now. We have the guide. We also have the online training to supplement the guide that walks schools and families and district levels with all audiences. We've created a research-based school self-assessment so that schools can measure themselves on their family engagement, level one, level two, and level three. What complements that self-assessment is the digital playbook, and it's really neat. And on the next slide, you can actually click into it if you're able to. If you click on that image. So we have put the, there you go. So we've put the five areas of the self-assessment into a digital playbook so that schools and families can click on one of the tabs on the side, and it'll take them directly into evidence-based and research-informed best practices for family engagement along the different objectives. It's age indexed and audience indexed so that schools can assess themselves on how good they're doing in family engagement, and then they can go straight to the resources that will help them improve in that area. Once schools have reached a level three, we've also created the opportunity for schools to apply to be family-friendly certified. So this is also in partnership with KDE. And what's been really neat, working with Natasha Stein and her crew, is, is seeing how schools can complete the self-assessment certification process while also checking the boxes for their school improvement plans, their Title I requirements. So they're starting to see it as one kit of information that will check those boxes in a way that's very intentional and high impact in the relationship building rather than event participation. So right now, we see that a lot of schools are hitting those family engagement markers through event participation, and we really want to change that to relationship-building best practices. So I think that summarizes enough for you all to know what we've been creating. Again, a couple of those marker dates, September 1st launched the family-friendly schools, and then November 15th will be the statewide release of all the materials. The goals and metrics that we're tracking, we are part of a national research study, which is really neat. The NYU Metro Center is a third-party evaluator, and we're using our U.S. Ed funding to contract with them. They will be following these 59 schools through the fifteen and a half years to measure the impact family engagement has on kindergarten readiness, third grade reading, post-secondary attainment. If you click through that. If you click through, that kind of goes through all of the metrics that we're tracking through this work. So, we want to make sure we're not doing family engagement just for the sake of family engagement, because you know it's great. But is it really having an impact on student academic success? So, these will be the goals. And I'll be back in two and a half years to report all of our success that we're having these days. And then, I think the final slide is just how is the board, could you support this work? I think first is being aware that it's happening and know what we're doing with these schools and especially celebrating these 59 schools, that in the midst of everything that's happening, they've taken on this Learning Network challenge to learn how to increase their family engagement practices. We really want to create a unified approach in Kentucky that gets us away from family events and newsletters when we think about family engagement and towards strategies that help staff get to know families and build authentic, trusting relationships. And we'll be releasing the school certificates in November, so look for those schools to be celebrated. And then, finally, would just be that Family Engagement Education Meet. We'll be partnering with KDE, KET, Community Action Council, and our regional partners to make that a really big deal this year.
And also, thank you for all of the work and knowing we want to talk about as a recognition you've recently received from the U.S. Ed and the KED partnership.
Yes, thank you. So, we have our quarterly check-ins with our federal officer about the U.S. Department of Education grant, and we continue to update them on our progress with these materials and our partnership with KDE. And they have just noted that it's really rare for an organization to partner so effectively with their Department of Ed. And so, on our annual call in November across all national partners, Kentucky will be presenting on how we're partnering so well with our SBA. So, they want to know, "How did we do it? How did we partner so effectively?" And we have to share our secret thought here in Kentucky so other states can replicate it, which is just a testament to how supportive the KDE staff has been with this work.
And we will continue to highlight this work, as she mentioned, with the upcoming November 15th through 19th Kentucky Family Engagement Education Week. We will continue to highlight that from the department through the Monday email and senior content webcast. We just really appreciate the partnership with Pritchard. And I'd also like to recognize those people in my office that have worked side-by-side with Pritchard the last three months on this project. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you both. This is McCrary. Just couldn't wait to get in. Just want to tell you. I spent almost my entire career talking to new teachers about the importance of working with families and having them be partners with you, and that communication does not just mean to, it means with. So, this is with with a capital W. I love this. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Other comments or any questions for Brooke or Karen? All right, thank you so much. I cut my teeth on the missing piece, so I'm so excited to see how it's grown up. And I didn't realize until today that the playbook was interactive, so I've been distracted by looking at all the great resources.
Yes, we hope you get distracted enough.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And I brought some copies of the self-assessments, the new school self-assessment and the new guide, which is the new missing piece.
Okay, great. So, do you want to, yeah, thank you so much. And Bridget, thank you so much for being here and continuing to lead this work side-by-side with us from the work of the Pritchard committee.
Yeah, absolutely. Chair Lou, Chair Lou, Chair Young, thank you. It really is a testament to the collaboration that is being moved in in Kentucky that this has been such a success and recognized at the national level. So, kudos to the State Board of Education and to Kentucky for always being such a good collaborator. And so, thank you, Melanie, for the time of your staff.
And we acknowledged earlier that equity and partnerships are at the core of the DNA of this school board, so really appreciate that. Getting us back on track with the agenda, I believe, Robin, you are back in the hot seat, moving from review items now backwards to Section 16, action and discussion items. This is 16B, approval of the 2022-24 biennial ABRs, budget requests. And Robin and Karen, I saw Karen earlier, Karen Mert, are here to talk about that. You guys have had a few bites at this apple, but now we have a chance to have Karen and Robin walk us through the process and bring us up to today.
Thank you very much. Karen's going to walk us through some of the, sort of a revisit of some of the things that we've already talked about. There's not a lot of new material in this presentation. It's really more about us focusing in today on setting budget priorities. And we talked about that at the last board meeting, how, you know, we have all these ABRs that we'd like to include in our budget request, but we really need to focus in on those three to five top priorities of the board. That helps us as a support staff to be talking to legislators and really focusing on advocacy for the ones that are most important to you. We've been listening again to your goals as you've been setting those goals and also listening to your discussions just across, probably for the last six to eight months, about kind of the direction that you see the board heading in.
So, I'm going to try to, if you have these slides in your portal, if you find it easier to follow along.
And many of these will look very, very familiar. We're kind of recycling a lot of those just from a familiarity prospect. And then, we're going to get to one picture, and we're actually going to talk about kind of trying to prioritize from that one picture. But I would like Karen to get us caught up, kind of a visit to the past, and then we'll get you up to speed.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you all for having me here today. It's funny, I'm not presented in front of you all in person since I've been in this role, so you're a good-looking group.
Way to soften up the crowd.
Yeah, we're talking money here, so. This is our biennial budget request. This is going to be our final presentation to you all, and you've all been with us through this journey since February. And I really do appreciate your attention to this, as it is a long process, it's a very important process for the department. Meredith, are you advancing slides for me?
Yeah. Thank you. So, there is a statute, KRS 15624, that directs us to bring our budget request, any formal budget request, to the KDE for review before we submit to the Office of the State Budget Director. And that's, we just wanted to share with you the statutory requirement around your conversation and approval today. Next slide, please. This is just a visual of where we've been. We started back in February. We started talking about capital plan. We said, "Okay, we need to get our six-year capital plan together, capital funds to support our state-operated facilities at KSB, KSD, and our FFA leadership training center." So, six-year capital plan allows us to request capital funds in order to make the improvements and the repairs at those campuses that are so, so needed. As we've talked many times, the need there is great. And those are some of our students that have some of the most specialized needs. And it's a residential facility as well at KSB and KSD. So, we got our six-year plan together in February and April. Then in June, we talked a little bit about the baseline budget process. We started talking about ABRs, additional budget requests, and what those were. We started talking about your goals in August, and now we're here. It's October, and we're going to put it all together for you and try to get some priorities done. So, next slide, please. This is just a recap of your capital plan. This is the six-year figures that we put together. That information had to be entered into the capital plan system by April 15th. So, it's basically our first leg of the process. Those numbers can be revisited, and we are constantly looking at those numbers for new estimates, new dollar amounts, so that we can make sure that we're requesting what we need to actually meet the need of those campuses. Next slide. This is what we call our baseline budget summary. So, we talk a lot about baseline, or we refer to it as base. And this is basically the money that we have now. So, when you look at this chart, you're going to see that 23 and 24 look a whole lot like 22. And that's because it's just really a continuation of our funds. Now, what we have now is going to continue on out as our base, okay? Anything that we ask for over and above our base is considered either a defined calculation or an additional budget request, which is an ABR. So, these numbers, they are subject to change. As we get into more calculations, receive more information from the Office of the State Budget Director, those, these numbers will change. But that will be based on information that we receive on our CEAC appropriation. We look at consensus data. We work with the consensus forecasting group in order to try to make the most accurate requested CEAC as possible. So, the numbers you see here, there will be some changes. Also, wanted to bring attention to the federal line. You can see that there's quite a jump, 23 and 24. Basically, that is a result of needed appropriation increases based on COVID funds. So, we've gotten all these COVID funds, and those appropriation levels give us the spending authority to actually spend those funds. So, you will see an increase in our out years for federal funds. Next slide, please. This is just a breakdown of our CEAC and CEAC-related lines. You know that CEAC is our biggest appropriation. We have three here at the department that request funds in. We have CEAC, and then we have LAIRS and BOSS. CEAC is about 72% of our general fund. So, that gives you a little bit of context as how much money is actually going out to our local school districts. Next slide, please. Defined calculations, okay? These are the things that we don't control. So, it's mandated in budget instructions that we use the numbers that the Office of the State Budget Director gives us to use in our budget submission. So, they will give us either increases by percentage or additional dollar amounts that we need to build in. And we'll build those onto our base as a defined calculation. They've given us some of the numbers. You can see we've got some things listed there, but we've not received direction from them on everything that we need to add in. So, we continue to monitor their website till we get that information. Next process we'll go through is the ABRs. We wanted to kind of get through this quickly because we know that prioritizing those ABRs is really the big area of discussion today. So, I'm going to return it back to Robin. Let her start that. Thank you.
So, the next several slides are ABRs that you all have seen before, we've discussed before, we've talked about all of them before. We have refined the numbers just a little bit. So, starting on Slide 8 or Page 8, you'll see just listed every single ABR that we've talked about with you. The thing that is new and different this time that I do want to point out, you'll see three that have identified in a green color. And the significance of that green color is we are going to pay for these additional budget requests out of federal funds. So, we have federal ESER funds that we can pay for these out of. So, that is the Kentucky, Revised Kentucky Teacher Induction Program, all the equity initiatives that you all have talked about previously. And then, fingers crossed, we have one that we've highlighted in green. It's actually on the third page. It is a request to really kind of redo our education financial application. It is the application that we calculate CEAC in. And it's highlighted in green with fingers crossed right now because we have an outstanding request to the U.S. Ed for permissibility to use ESER funds to pay for that. If that does not happen, then it'll be back on our list seeking general fund appropriations from it.
What's that called, Robin?
I'm sorry? It's the very last one. It's called education finance application. Well, it's the last one before.
You don't have anything for it?
No, not yet.
No acronym?
So, there's no acronym yet, and here's why. Our CEAC system, of course, we call it the CEAC system, and then we have SAR, and we have, you know, we have all those. But the goal would be to try to develop and build something that all the inputs that go into CEAC would also be part of this bigger system. So, it would be people transportation and SAR and all those other things feeding in in a more automated manner into CEAC and then doing the calculations. So, we don't have a great name for it yet. We'll take suggestions if anybody has one.
How about the Wizard of Oz?
The Wizard of Oz. Don't look behind the curtain. That's true. So, we had not planned on going line by line through all these that you've looked at previously. Have any questions, we can answer those. Karen's here, and so she is the keeper of the master things cost and how we calculated those things. So, if you have any questions, we're here to answer those. But if we go to the next slide, please, Meredith? Keep going, okay. So, you know, Karen and I, as we stop on this slide, you know, we're the bean counters, we're the number crunchers, we're not the best put it into a pretty picture people. But we have tried for you because we thought this might be a different way for you all to look at budget stuff that really supports all the conversations that you all had and sort of your goals and how our additional budget requests align with your goals. You know, the way, one way that an organization shows what they value, they put their money in alignment with their goals. So, Karen and I, with some help of other people that can make this pretty, put your goals together. And we see at the, kind of at the center, we have this equity achievement, collaboration, and integrity because everything we do should support that. So, we use that as kind of like the spoke, and then the spokes, or the center of the wheel, and then the spokes coming off of it. Your goals include diverse, high-quality educator workforce, portrait of a graduate, new accountability system, early childhood education. And then, we added a bubble there at the bottom, supports for districts, since so many of the ABRs could end up really in a supports for district category. The significance of the purple boxes, we try to get really flashy here with you. So, the significance of the purple boxes are ones that we have specifically heard you all talk about. It may be that there, some of the ones in the black you've talked about too, but we've sat and listened to you talk about some of these things in the purple boxes. That doesn't mean it's any more important than the ones in the black boxes. It's just, we know that we've heard you all talk about things. So, that might be like a place for you to start your discussion today in looking at what's in the purple boxes and, you know, how you feel about prioritizing those. And then, the ones in the black boxes still fit under each one of your goals, and, but they are no less important as far as the staff here at KDE is concerned. All of these things are important, and they will all be included, if you are in agreement, they'll all be included in our additional budget request. So, every single one of these will get a page in our big binder that we submit for consideration. It's just that we are trying to narrow the focus to get the priorities from the board for those between three and five things that you really think bubble to the top. Let me, and we've put our little restaurant dollar signs beside them. Sometimes we get really overwhelmed with what the actual dollar amount is, although you can flip back to the preceding slides and see what that looks like. But I thought it might, just for purposes of this visual, to kind of put the, it costs $1, $2, $3 when you're thinking about the context of funding. Please remember that when we do things and ask for budget requests, because we are servicing 171 school districts, the dollars get really big really fast. I mean, it's just sort of the way it works. So, we don't want to dissuade you in any way, shape, or form just because something has a big dollar amount. If it's important to you, that's what we should put at the top of your list. So, let me stop there and see if you have any questions first, and then Chair, if you'll help us lead the discussion.
Absolutely. So, thank you. Thanks for the graphic. Thanks for all the backstory too. It's really helpful to go through those slides and kind of reorient ourselves to the budgeting process. In case you weren't aware, Karen and Robin and Che and Matt have been stalking you since the April meeting, listening all the time about what you talk about in terms of how important, what our values are and how we would think about enhancing those. And that's where the purple boxes have landed today. Robin and I had a chance to kind of talk through about what was purple, and I just want you to make sure you hear her, that the ones in the black box are still on our list no matter what. Procedurally today, if possible, for the sake of clarity and also to inform our legislative advocacy work moving forward, we'd love to get your top four, our collective top four or five of these ABRs, keeping in mind that nobody is left on, or kicked off the island. Everybody will remain on the island, but how can we talk so that Robin and Karen and the team know what we value the most moving forward? Again, try not to get bogged down into how much does this add up to? There's no, there's no line arbitrary or real about what number we can't exceed. So, again, just thinking aspirationally about what we would like to accomplish. And one, real thanks to, I think Karen is responsible for working with the graphic artist, but really kind of capturing- but really kind of capturing and aligning these conversations around our stated board goals and the goals of our commission. So let me hush, and they're still stalking us and still listening, so please feel free to comment on the priorities at hand for you individually, and then we'll coalesce those.
Holly, I think the full-day kindergarten funding is at the top of my list. I feel that personally, that is really important. And then also, I went to one of the regional school board meetings.
Yes, thank you for doing that.
And they also had that as a pretty high priority. They, I mean, they, a lot of what they talked about were unfunded mandates, where several of those things pop up in our purple. So I do, I do feel it's important that we listen to our superintendents.
Yeah, I appreciate that so much, and I would echo that sentiment. Dr. Poe and I had the chance to hear from superintendents last week, and just as a reminder, that $120 million for full-day kindergarten plugs a giant hole in the local school district's budget, because otherwise, they're paying for the other half of that day. I think we're down to less than half a dozen school districts that are not yet able to offer full-day kindergarten. So that in turn, Holly, and the reason I think you heard it so clearly at KSBA and what we heard at KAS, gives school districts then the flexibility in the local decision-making and control about how they can use those funds that they otherwise would have used on full-day kindergarten. So I concur, that would also be at the top of my list.
Echo the slide.
Oh, Ms. Patton and Mr. Johnson?
I want to echo what Holly said. I, the full-day kindergarten is hugely important in my view, but I also put up there the preschool funding, because I think that that is such an equity issue for both our kids who have learning problems and difficulties, but also for our lower socioeconomic families who need to have access. And when you think of the payoff of those, that, that education in those early years, it's something that this dollar figure doesn't really reflect. So I think every dollar we invest here is something that does pay off later down the road. And if we can put more money there, I would love to see more go to preschool.
Excellent. Thank you. And Karen, just for clarity there, restoration of preschool funding is different from funding universal preschool, and this takes us back to 2008 levels or something?
It takes us back to the 90 million, which is, I believe, 2016 maybe was the last time we had 90 million. Universal, of course, has a much larger dollar amount.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I was just.
Amen?
A great, amen.
Amen over here.
Excellent.
I think, okay. You are my people.
I think we hear clear consensus around full-day kindergarten. Any questions?
Passion.
Passion.
You all are doing so good. You're making this easy.
So easy, so easy. None of the wheels may not fall off. So Ms. Adams and then Ms. Sloan?
The SEEK funding for transportation, I think, is very important, because right now our students are really being impacted by the transportation. There's not a day goes by that I don't get a message that this bus is going to be 70 minutes late, these kids are going to have to stay 90 minutes after school because we don't have the drivers, the buses. And also, I feel like, of course, full-day kindergarten and preschool are my top, top priorities, but I feel like full-day kindergarten and that SEEK transportation, which I think I voiced this opinion before, they really help all our districts, and that gives us a lot of bang for our buck. Like, if the districts have more money for that, then they're able to put their own money into some of these other programs as well.
Excellent. And I also concur for the same reasons that we talked about with full-day kindergarten in terms of the flexibility it affords local districts. Very helpful. Thank you. Ms. Bowling?
Yes, under social, emotional, learning, and mental health, I feel strongly about providing district mental health providers to our students. I think that is a real need in our area, and I think taking care of the mental health is extremely important.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Poe?
I don't think you can argue against any of these things, but I'll.
Agreed.
For full-day and preschool and SEEK. But I also think for the other end, when our curriculum committee was meeting today, we were talking about profile of graduates and candidates on career and technical education. On the opposite end of that, because they're filling regional need, and as Dr. Todd has talked about, we need workers and we need entrepreneurs, but we need highly skilled workers too. So if we're not, we haven't replenished career and technical in so long, and we keep, I guess it was the governor who put $75 million out for competitive grant this year, or otherwise there wouldn't have been any money there. So L-Vax, we encouraged L-Vax to take over ACTs, and then we haven't funded them as they took them over. So once again, funded versus unfunded mandates. But, I mean, how can you argue that mental health be the?
Excellent. And we're not. And that's the good thing. Nobody gets kicked off.
That's what I'm saying, so.
Very helpful. Thank you, Dr. Poe.
I guess I'm back on the handwagon of the law and rule side, the Kentucky Tech stuff. Is that very dear, or is that? I don't even, not sure what's funded it now, but I've seen some results from it. It was very impressive at times. I think there are about 130 some odd schools right now.
Are you thinking about the Governor's School for Entrepreneurs?
No, no, this is, it's called Advanced Kentucky.
Oh, Advanced Kentucky.
Been around for a while. We've heard of that, like, I don't know, we're standing, there's some process, but I just, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of the career and technical education. You see, if you look at the Ford plant, that type of thing is going to drive a deep air. But we don't have some people that are out there that are being told, like your brother, who's an astronaut at this point in time, you're on town. There are people we've lost over the years, but we just don't put enough distance on the tech that they're frightened of to be nationally competitive. I just, I see where we put an increase in the gift of talent, and that's something that there's a strong base for, and I appreciate those, but that's not the same group, way that we beat off the drills.
So we currently receive about, I think it's 1.7 billion in our budget for Advanced Kentucky.
Eight billion.
So we currently receive that. It is a line item in our LAURS appropriation. So, and then we also receive some advanced placement dollars that we're able to pay college board for AP exams for free reduced lunch students. And then there was an additional 2.6 million put in Hospital 192 for first come, first served students taking AP that didn't fall in the free reduced lunch. So we do have some budgets going. But Lee, I do want to capture, you talked about this at retreat, the second half of the retreat, and I do want to capture that this notion of profile of graduate is in fact bigger than CTE. CTE is critically important in that conversation, but it's developing those individualized learning plans for students who demonstrate those sets of knowledge, skills, and positions that we say all committed graduates have demonstrated. So I do appreciate that admonition in terms of the purple. That box should be more expansive as we work towards those essential skills.
Bottom line, we want it all. And we'll ask for all of it.
Ms. Sloan, follow up on this, Blumberg?
I'm not specifically seeing what I want to talk about here, but I think it can fall under the professional development. For at least eight years that I've been trying and fighting for it, we have literacy legislation that we continue to fight for every year, and it fails mostly because there's no funding behind it. And the majority of that legislation is based around professional development, training of teachers on the science of reading and being able to teach children how to read appropriately as they came through level. So I'm hoping that under professional development, we can specifically secure some funding for literacy legislation in Kentucky. I think it's extremely important for students and their achievement.
And I appreciate that comment, too, in that I have heard very consistently from virtually every member of this board around the notion of teacher quality and the fact that teachers have not had the, as many, neither the access nor the opportunity for high-quality professional development that we would aspire for them. Professional development would be high on my list as well.
I had a question.
Yes, Ms. Blumberg?
On the other page, it was green about K-Tip?
Yes.
Is that different than the induction program?
No, it's, it's the same. So, so the K-Tip program or the, we are actually going to pay for our ESER funds.
Okay.
So you might not have to request it here?
No.
Is what you're saying? Okay. And then as far as National Board supplement, I mean, I'm always for that, and that's another thing that I feel like superintendents are always requesting too, is just, it's an unfunded mandate. And I, I love the fact that it encourages teachers to pursue National Board certification, and every student in Kentucky deserves a National Board certified teacher. So I would be all about anything that would encourage teachers to pursue National Board certification.
Mrs. McCrery? I think I'm equally too, as far as gifted and talented. I mean, we've got to grow them from the very start to the [inaudible]. I'm glad to see gifted and talented still on here.
We're getting dangerously close to moving all the black into purple.
I'll look them up.
Doing what Jamie said just goes. We'll take all of that.
Yeah.
But I think we would be remiss if we did not reiterate our support for Kentucky School for blind, Kentucky School for the deaf, and ensuring adequate funding there. The way you approached capital requests for them was impressive and very helpful, and I know that will go a long way to supporting our students at our residential schools. All right, so what'd you get?
I think they're playing nice in the [inaudible].
So is there any desire to couple some of these together?
Bundling?
Bundling, maybe? You know, full-day kindergarten and preschool, you could couple those together and it becomes early childhood as one. We would still delineate separate dollar amounts for each one of those. You may have members of the General Assembly that feel strongly one way or the other, maybe not necessarily both, but you could kind of package this together. This could become your top priority if you feel strongly about that. SEEK funding, I'm trying to think if any of these other ones, I also heard professional development and National Board certified salary supplement for teachers kind of go together fairly well as supports for our teacher professionals. So we could probably get down to about six-ish, which I think is still a good number for us, because if you give us five, we're going to have to pick number six anyway when we start ranking. So I think, I think if we can kind of work with these. Do you have any strong feelings about the order within the ones we've discussed? I think I hear great consensus on full-day kindergarten, maybe, maybe preschool, if we lump that together. Is there any natural two that kind of bubbles up from the discussions that we've had?
I definitely think we lead with full-day kindergarten, early childhood.
Well, we are seek funding.
Uh, SEEK transportation.
Seek transportation.
Does that feel like the number two? Sounds good. That's right? Right? Again, it offers so much flexibility at the local level. Danger.
Plug for Dr. Borshin's.
Okay.
See text, David texty.
Yeah.
I agree that National Boards and professional development could be put together, and I think that's extremely important.
So Robin or Karen, if you'll read those back, I think I could entertain a motion after we hear what you landed on.
So what I hear is full-day kindergarten and preschool. We bundle that together, sort of as your priority number one. SEEK funding for transportation would end up number two. Career and tech ed as three, and then professional development, National Board certified salary supplement as four. And then the others that we heard about were social, emotional, and mental health, gifted and talented, KSD, KSD personnel. And we, we talked about the entrepreneurial idea from Dr. Todd and shared some information on that, but we don't have that as a separate ABR at least right now.
So for the sake of keeping the graphics alive and relevant, if we could move those into purple moving forward, that would be helpful.
I have a good comment, I think on the social, emotional, learning, mental health, if that includes money for more mental health workers in our schools that could relieve some of the duties of guidance counselors, then I think that triple affects other things, because then our guidance counselors have more time to work with students, and then they also work with testing and all kinds of other things. So I think that impacts many things within our schools than just the social and mental health of that.
The proposal does include additional staffing in local districts. The Education Continuum, the work group that I served on, did include that as well for support for matriculation to higher, to post-education.
So can we reach consensus that that becomes the number five? So to read back, full-day kindergarten and preschool becomes your number one priority. SEEK funding for transportation is number two. Career and tech ed is three. Professional development and National Board certified salary supplement as support to teachers as four, and social, emotional, learning, and mental health as five.
Okay. And some shifting from black into purple. I would add a hug for your consideration around the employment of KDE leadership personnel, as we discussed earlier, to move into the purple category as well. And then as Ms. Bowling so aptly stated, if you could just get us all this, it would be a job well done.
Say, where's Chuck Gray?
Yeah. Yeah, where is Chuck?
Is that enough information? If so, I would entertain a motion to approve the leadership, excuse me, to approve the 2022, '24 biennial budget requests, as Robin prioritized those.
I think, now should we approve?
Thank you. We have a motion from Mrs. Bowling. We have a second.
Second.
Now, second from Mrs. McCrery. Any further discussion? Hearing none, except yay, we did it. I would ask all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Yay! Go make a big binder.
Yeah. Love your graphic, too.
Let me, let me express our appreciation on the part of our staff for all the good conversations that you all have had, that we have listened to you and been able to have enough information to really build a successful budget. We will advocate strongly on behalf of all of the items, of course, and, and you're right, it is a daunting challenge because there are so many needs, so many good things that districts can do. They receive the vast majority of this money either directly, indirectly, or we pay on their behalf. And so I really appreciate that you are here sitting as a board really advocating for funding for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both so much. Board members, we are running a little bit long, not typical for us, but you also have really endured. If we could take a short break and reconvene at 3:45 after a short bio break, and then we'll get right back to our agenda. Thank you. And back to our review items. Item 17A, a report, a financial report from the Ashland Independent School District. And again, back to Robin and Che.
I'm going to let Che report out very quickly on Ashland Independent.
Hello, thank you again. Good to see everybody once again. So I only have two additional things to add about Ashland that kind of happened lately. We found out a couple days ago that Ashland will be filing for an audit extension. We talked to their current finance officer, or rather, I did, and their auditor just wants a little more time to get their bank reconciliation a little bit stronger, more clean. We think this is a good step, so this will go in front of our state audit committee and probably get approval, we're guessing. The other, I think, good news is the next board meeting, we'll be bringing you all working budgets for every school district. And to give you a preview, Ashland, what sort of got them in front of you all was their contingency balance was less than 2%. And the upcoming budget, which is a brand-new next board meeting, it's now 8.01%. So we're very happy to see that. The district, the finance officer, have continued to work through the issues, doing a lot of training. They brought in some outside trainers as well to talk about student and equity funds. Everything sounds very positive in that area, so we're very happy.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Chuck? Very good news. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item is 17C. And for this item, we'll invite Associate Commissioner Rhonda Sims and Division Director Kevin Hill to the table. They will provide an overview of the recent school reports, hard data, and answer any questions that you may have about the new release. Good afternoon. Monday, Kevin.
All right, good afternoon. Of course, we have a whole team of people that help do this work that are probably watching online, with exceptionally forbidden Jennifer Stafford to watch today because she's having a vacation. With the exception, we've forbidden Jennifer Stafford to watch today because she's having a vacation. So I want her to enjoy that. Michael Hackworth, our policy person, is always in the back there as well. We appreciate some time on the agenda to just kind of go through some highlights out of the briefing packets, see what questions you might have of us. You know, obviously, we've had two extraordinary years for schools. So I think, you know, we're going to look at some things that reflect that. And, but we're pleased to be with you and kind of walk you through some context so that everyone has sort of a common context of what was occurring as we got ready for the assessments, how it interplays federally as well. Meredith's going to operate that for us. As we get started, just some topics we'd like to highlight for you today are listed here. So we do want to talk a little bit about our situation with waivers federally and federal classification. We'll give you a little bit of overview of the reporting for 20 and 21 for the 2021 school year. Let's talk a little bit about the quality of school climate and safety data and a little bit around opportunity to learn, which was a new piece of information that we reported and put into the briefing packet. We'll highlight some of the assessment data. Today, before you, Kevin will walk through much of that. And then the graduation rate we'll discuss. As we think about the data, you know, this became public on 9/29 on Wednesday at 12:01 a.m. And so we probably saw some news coverage at that point. And we will want to make sure that we kind of highlight it for you, those pieces of information we've shared earlier, such as the press release and the briefing packet. So we'll work from that as we spend some time with some slides today. So obviously, an extraordinary couple of years for schools and multiple penalties and also for testing and for accountability and what's federally required. So as we look at the next slide, we want to highlight a couple of things for you. Kentucky did receive approval to waive federal accountability for this school year, so for the 2021. But USED did require assessments be administered. Now, they waived a number of rules around assessments. For example, one consistent rule is you must test 95% of enrolled students. That was waived, and in a few minutes, we'll go through some of the participation numbers. They are obviously lower than 95%, and we would really sort of expect that. And that's true of around the country as well. The identification of comprehensive schools, comprehensive support improvement, those are the schools that Kelly Foster's team works to support. There was no new identification of CSI or TSI. Remember, that's looking specifically at group performance of student groups, or additional targeted support, ATS. All of those identifiers and expectations were waived for 1920 after the 2021 school year. So schools that received a federal classification of CSI, and in Kentucky, we only have ATS. Schools that are on that list back from 1819 school year, they'll continue to receive support from Kelly's group in this upcoming school year. So in the 2122 school year. There was no, in the sense, there was no new schools who entered this classification. There was also more schools that exited the classification, is something another one to think about that. Obviously, at the time that we got the notice of assessments would be required, Commissioner Glass made some statements for our school districts at that time. We felt there were other assessments that probably would have been more meaningful, that were more formative based, but that was not something that federally was approved. And we're expecting a summative assessment to be administered for this spring. Now, as we look at the overview and reporting for 2021, a couple of things I want to highlight for you. Our schools and our districts made extraordinary efforts to get that assessment administered. So we had around 329,000 students tested. And Kevin in a moment is going to highlight just the participation rates across the different levels. But, you know, we normally do visits during testing, monitoring visits, that's a federal expectation. We continue to do some visits, but we set them up as sort of interviews to just kind of ask people, you know, how has this experience been? We're always wanting to learn from and listen to those experiences. And we were so impressed by the efforts that people made to get students tested. Because keep in mind that we had an assessment, while it is administered online, it is not a remote administration. So students could not take the assessment at home. They had to be physically in the school building. And we asked our districts to make sure that students that were staying in remote instruction, and we know a number of students did that across the country and across Kentucky as well. We asked that parents be invited to bring the students in for assessment. And really, quite a number of students came in and took the assessment. And remember, by the time we got to testing, there had been very few days for some districts of in-person instruction. This test was mainly administered in the last two weeks of the school district year. And so not a lot of time in in-person instruction. There were some off, some flexibilities that were offered, and Kentucky took advantage of those. One was that assessment administration windows could be adjusted. And a couple of things we did with their English learner testing, which usually done early in the calendar year. Usually typically, we test in mid-January to late February. That was pushed back to give again people time to be in person, to be in school. So we were able to adjust that with our vendors. We offered multiple opportunities to take the ACT. That is not typical, but ACT was responsive to that. And you may remember when we entered the pandemic, we were able to get most students tested at least the first initial opportunity to take the ACT. But we already had about three districts that were out of session. Harrison County for the first cases of COVID were identified was already closed when the initial testing date happened. And then we had some districts closed because of flu as well at that time of year. So we wanted opportunities for students who were juniors last year to have that opportunity. And so we kept bringing up assessment opportunities in the fall of the year. So we ended up with a total of seven opportunities, students that had actually taken the ACT at the state's cost. For the spring summative assessment, and you've heard the term CAPER used. Traditionally, as we have moved to the new standards in a content area and made them operational and testing, we changed the name to Kentucky Summative Assessment. And we have done that now for several years with science. It was the first of the new standards to come through. So when we say new, they're the most recent that teachers have been using since 2019. But because of all the delay in stopping of testing, we had not yet been able to operationalize a test measuring those new standards. So this year's testing was the first time we were fully measuring the current, most recent standards in reading and math particularly. We did have a successful online administration. This is also the first time that all grade levels fully took an operational test online. We had some field testing for elementary, middle, back in 2019, no testing in 2020. And then we had had actually high school testing earlier in 19, operational. So that's another change that's in place for this testing experience. We did have a successful field test. So again, to go back to staff and the efforts they made, we made the field test totally optional. And we said, would you like to sign up and take the field test? We had 113, or 130-plus districts who said, yes, I would like to do that. That means we now can get back on schedule with social studies in Kentucky. We had, I think, something around 54,000 students who took at least a small set of items. The shortened assessment was also a flexibility offered. And Kentucky did have an assessment built that was fully measuring new standards. We did recycle previously used items that could measure both new and old. And we reduced the time of testing as much as we thought we possibly could while still maintaining validity and reliability. So the test was scheduled roughly for 60 minutes. We've heard many of our students, and I've heard Solia and others say this in the Student Advisory Group, really did not need 60 minutes to take the assessments for content area. But we at least reduced that to try to preserve as much of time of in-person being for instruction versus the assessment that federally we needed to administer. We honestly expanded the window as much as we could. We allowed testing to start earlier. We allowed it to be open, sort of nonstop. I think that helped people as well. And again, we, we tried to be very customer service oriented in our shop. And so we tried to do the best we can, help people through what honestly was a challenging year. And again, continued to be impressed with how schools and districts handled that. Once they did the initial, are you kidding me, I've got to give a test? Everyone just kind of dug in and said, okay, we can get this done. And, and did it with, you know, the kind of integrity that we always expect from our educators. Reporting for 20 and 21, we have no accountability ratings or indicators. So nothing is rolled together into a measure for a little talk about reading or math and all those indicators that you've seen in the accountability system. There is no discussion of 100-day students. Accountability is built around who did you have enrolled and worked with them for 100 days? This is about who took the test and where they took it. It's all assessment-based data. Now, for many years, we've always had in the school report card, assessment tabs and accountability tabs. But most people don't pay much attention to the assessment tab. They look at the accountability tab, unfortunately. So really, if you imagine this year, we just didn't have an accountability tab. Everything was about where did you take the assessment? Participation and performance results of the assessment. ARFwood is out there publicly, and that's expected federally as well as the state statute. And if you look at the full card. Graduation rate, we're going to highlight for you. It is one of the few areas where we are showing any trend in data. There has been such disruption, and we'll list some of those reasons in just a second. We're not showing trend, and that's what we talked to you today. But for graduation rate, we will show you a trend. And we've also showed trend for the ACT because the ACT company has said they are going to show a trend. So to be transparent, we are going to highlight that as well. The safety survey data, eventually, climate and safety components are scheduled to go into accountability. We did add several opportunity to learn statements, and we'll talk about that in just a second. We think one of the things that's so important this year as you look at results is to think about the context for your individual school and your district. Some of what we're sharing in these background slides is really to build some context for a state level. You really have to kind of look at what was your instructional setting? Did you have time in person? Was it remote almost completely? What percentage of students got tested? Was there a variety across your groups of students of who tested? And we tried to look at data statewide on some of those things such as hybrid, remote. But what we found as we looked at it and then our quality control is people had really used a lot of approaches to enter it. It was not consistently entered across the state. But at your local level, you know what was entered and kind of fly the rules. So we would encourage you to look at that locally. So the differences that impact the results, we'll highlight those on this slide for you. Obviously, COVID has impacted everything. This board has been right there in the heart of just supporting schools instructional. As a result of testing this year, there were changes in the process, we're fully online. There was a shorter test, you know, many differences about the disruption process. And we would encourage you not to compare 21 scores and go back and look for older data. It's just not a fair comparison and alignment. We think this gives a temperature check related back to the standards of novice apprentice proficient to distinguish which of those are performance levels on Kentucky's assessment. We think it gives a temperature check. I would assume for many districts, it kind of is a confirmation of what they've seen in their formative test. Because remember, as soon as students came back, you began to do activities to look at what students need support on and to build their instructional supports. And we've seen that with the SPLANS of the work we report. So for that, as we look at this data in a moment, I want you to keep in mind, this is kind of that one moment in time under extraordinary circumstances and kind of a temperature check against those standards we use consistently for NAPD. As we move to the next slide, just a reminder of those impacts, things that have pushed this data. Lots of learning disruptions, you know, the school and district closures, a variety of access to technology. We have a lot of technology use and skills students have gained during this last two years. But still, that's not an equal access everywhere in every school or every child. Access to learning supports may have varied. You know, the testing modifications, we had a shorter form, less time to administer that form. And so that's obviously changing what we've had in the past. And then participation rates, a much decreased participation. We're still probably high compared to many states in the country. But, you know, we have historically had 98% of students test. And we have a very high participation rate. You're not going to see anything close to that, obviously, as we move up in level and it gets less. And I think the key that is part of that local context is the uneven participation. Not all groups of students participated equally. And I think that brings up good conversation points to have at the local level. And we'll look at that a little bit in the state data as well for you in just a second. So the quality of school climate, safety, the opportunity to learn questions aren't new. And so I want to highlight just a little bit about that. And we made that a big part of the briefing packet, so you'll go through that. We already had 27 statements for students to either strongly disagree, disagree, agree, and strongly agree with. And we added to them seven opportunity to learn statements. We had two versions, a sort of a lower elementary statement, and then we had a grade six through high school statement. And ask students, again, kind of choose that Likert scale, look, or do I agree or not? We thought it was really important, and we saw a move on this nationally, to get a sense of the perspective of the students, of what their experience has been like. You know, we know it's been challenging. It's been challenging for everyone. But what are students saying about their interactions with their schools? And so the survey was attempting to capture some of that, and we thought it was a very interesting set of information. So we did make that a significant part of the briefing packet. So all seven are in the briefing packet that's been shared with you. They're all available online. We want to point out to you, though, a few of them just here in the slides. So as we move to the next slide, we did combine the percent agree and strongly agree. And that's the green line. So you can see, as our kids get older, they get a little bit less positive. Nobody's shocked by that. Having been a former high school teacher, where I can zilch a little bit. You know, you're not totally shocked by that. We get a little bit more, a little more critical of things. So you see that the three sets of lines were moving from elementary to middle. But the question at the top is, when my building was closed, was I still able to work with my teacher or classmates online? Did I have that connection, that concept? And you can see at elementary, it was really up there in the 90s. Then at middle school, have a little less strong, and then a slight decrease down to 77% at high school. But again, in the midst of what we experienced, I think that's a powerful statement that kids stay connected in that way. So I think that's something to celebrate. My teachers were available when I needed help. And we all know in-person, students also have that experience. Are my teachers available? And there's not a teacher out there that doesn't have time during the planning hour, before school, after school. We're always supporting those kids that we serve. And so here, we had, you know, some different ways of support. Virtual office visits, email, chat, again, using what we, we had at our disposal. Again, you see some differences, slight ones across the elementary viewpoint down to high school at that low level. But you can still see even at high school, a very high number felt that they could get help. They could have those conversations with teachers. The schoolwork helped me learn new things this year. And obviously, our elementary, very strong statement there. And a little less as we get down to high school and middle school. But all the, those were three of the seven. The others are available in the briefing packet as well as in the actual school report card data. Now, I'll pause there to see if we have any kind of questions around the background and the context. and the context of things before Kevin, who has all things data in my office, and he and Jennifer are both right hands. We'll talk a little bit about the results, but let me pause there to see if you have any comments you'd like to make or questions you have this year around the context.
I'm the only person here who actually administered the test this year, probably. I'd like to say this was the year I probably dreaded it the most going into it, but I can honestly say that I appreciate the hard work that you all put into this because it was probably the most smoothly administered test year that I've ever experienced in 23 years of teaching. The online went perfectly well. Our students seemed to really enjoy it, and they seemed to be more engaged because they had somewhat control. And I think that helped them feel more engaged and more accepting of it, wanting to do better. These percentages of what they said in their responses don't surprise me at all, even now that I've been at all pre-graduals. And this year at the high school, I think the only reason the high school is a little lower on the help me learn new things is because the content's so much harder.
It is harder.
And it's specialized. You know, if you can't get that one teacher that is available at that moment, that's it's hard to get, I can't help my students with math, but I can find someone that can help them. So that makes it a little more difficult. But it was a, it was a great testing experience, and I really appreciate the hard work that you all put into making sure.
And I'm sure David Couch is raw-riding in the background there. You know, David is a great partner with our office and his staff on the online delivery. And then we do have a great team that work behind the scenes with Jennifer and I. So appreciate that. We'll dive right into some data.
Go right into the data. Let's go ahead to the participation. So as Ron mentioned earlier, participation, usually we're at the 99-plus percent of participation for all of our levels, basically, other than just medical extreme exemptions from testing or usually herbal tests. So for this year, elementary is our highest percentage of participation at almost 89%. Now, as you see the disaggregated group breakouts, the one thing that really stands out is African-Americans percentage down to 76, while all the other groups are generally over 85%. So that's a concern as far as engagement, even early on at elementary with that group. Go forward to middle school, you see the same kind of trend. Middle school rates drop down to 84% overall, with the same trend with African-Americans being the lowest. Then we go to high school, you'll see that as well, down to 76%. So at high school, 76% of students were assessed, and we mentioned earlier, the assessment was in-person only. So these are students that came in to get, take the assessment of those anywhere on virtual. When we went back to look at data, even at high school, up to 20% statewide kids were on virtual, came in to get assessed. That's the positives. The negatives, I guess, is still looking at African-Americans the lowest, but there's other groups are even falling in the 60s as far as participation.
And so when we're using the word trend here, we're looking at a single-year comparison. So not comparing to anything in the past. We've already said that typically, we have very high participation across the state. We rarely drop below 95%, which is the federal expectation. But I do think when you're building that context and the local context, I think locally, you need to look at that data of who participated and have some conversations around the why. You know, is this something where we can work harder to engage and make sure we re-engage students now that we're moving back to in-person role? So, you know, we're seeing this at a very high, much higher level.
Now, we'll get into performance, and this is percent proficient and distinguished, both reading and math. So on the left side, we have reading percentages and, you know, so math. So reading's at almost at 40%, while math is barely over 30. So these are, this is elementary. And so you'll see the group data is even, large gaps still exist. So that's, as you look at this one year of data, this is consistent with what we've seen in the past, I guess, without doing comparison back to previous years. It's consistent pattern with these groups are generally low performing, same gap exists. And as we go forward to middle school, same pattern exists with group gaps are there, percentages for reading at 44%, math at 27%. And as we go forward even to higher grades, so the high school, you see the gaps are different, differences in groups, even drop off more for ELS and students with disabilities and disability students. So the gaps are even larger kind of get to high school among the groups.
So I think if I just one spot in time, it becomes really important then to say, how do I use this to sort of identify students that need support? And, you know, we know that we have schools working very hard using our SIR funds, knowing that, you know, part of the reason for the federal SIR dollars is this expectation that there was going to be some need to support students as we come back into a normalized experience with schools. So I think this is just another point of data on kind of a single measure across the state that can help schools identify where students need some individualized support or where maybe groups need some, groups of students need some work to sort of begin build that community and that support for getting back into learning.
So before we go to the ACT, I just want to stop every question.
Yeah, we will pause in the next.
We focused on reading and math for presentation, but there's data on the science and writing as well into the briefing.
And no social studies data because it was only the test this year.
Okay. Let's go forward to ACT. As Ron mentioned earlier, ACT is producing a trend for their data. So as we look at 11th grade trends in Kentucky, this is all our students that took the test. Now, the counts are down about 3,000 students prior year. So even though.
Seven opportunities.
With multiple opportunities, the counts are still down. But students did come in to take the test at a higher rate for ACT compared to high school compared to the state assessment. But you see the trend that we're down a point is huge on the ACT scale from 18 to 19 to 18.
We question with ACT their continued use of the trend. That's an explanation of what's been firmly mentioned. But, you know, they are returning to solid transparency, if you want to report it to you in that data as well.
Then next, we see the percent of students needing CP benchmarks. Those are kind of secondary benchmarks for cause rating. And those percentages are down as well, as you can see across English, reading, and math. And I think as we go forward, let's move to the next slide. And these are the group, looking at different groups. You can see those same gaps we saw on our state test you see in the ACT results, those same, look at the demographic group comparisons among the different groups. You see African-American low, along with disability students, and those are dispatched. Next, we'll get into graduation rate. This is the one where we can show trends. And looking at the four-year rate, this is the data which last, previous year, we were at 91. We're down to 90% overall. But as you see, looking at the group data, the trend over time for all groups are pretty consistent, but there's huge gaps among groups with students with disabilities being the lowest, graduation rate from 77%.
And we see an uptick for African-American students rate is, it's gone up.
Slight increase.
Slight increase. So much in the same way, I think this data really supports a lot of the goals and purposes and discussions you have both today and in earlier meetings. I think it just reaffirms that we're on the right path for the needs.
And one thing I'll point out, just in comparison, Kentucky, one of eight states, looking back to 2019, were, that were over 90% on the graduation rate. So this national average, which is calculated consistently across the state, doesn't have variation in how they do that, but it should be pretty consistent in national average for eight, 86%. If we look at the five-year rates, those are just a little higher, especially that cohort given that additional year graduates is up to 92%.
I'll remind you, if we had accountability, we would average four and five together. That's how currently accountability is structured.
Next, the list.
So that's just, again, a highlight. There's more data there. We can certainly point any of you individually to things and pull things together for you. There's some particular thing we wanted to look at. We wanted to just give you a flavor of it and a context of what our schools experienced. But again, the strong efforts they made to even have data for us to look at and how appreciative we are of that.
Excellent. Thank you. And any questions for Kevin or Ron?
Not a question, just a comment. For me, this just reminds us how important teachers are. I mean, teachers are really important.
That's what the data show. I agree, Molly. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you very much. Making the best of a very bad situation would be my title line on this one. Thank you. All right, I see that Karen has joined us. So the next item on our agenda, turn your attention to item 17D, an update on the Commissioner's Strategic Dashboard. I'll invite Chief Performance Officer Karen Dodd to the table, and you also have infographic in your portal.
Thank you, Karen. So this will be pretty quick today. I just have a few changes since we last looked at this in August, and we shared a lot of the changes that were going on with Chair Young and Vice Chair Robinson. So we feel pretty good about what, how this is looking at the moment. The first thing you'll notice is that we do have our new logo on there, and then we changed a lot of the, the whole color scheme really to go along with the new logo. So on the screen, this doesn't look very good now that I'm looking at it, but I think when you look at it on your computer, it looks much better. You can click on any one of those, Meredith, so that you can go in and just see one of the graphs. Again, those colors aren't exactly reflective as you'll see on a, on your computer screen, but we're pretty happy with them. They were all met the accessibility guidelines. So we were good on with that. The other thing we did is we shifted the icons on the main page to make sure that they all clearly reflected what you were going to see when you click on them. So there were a few where we had multiple data points when you click over, and it wasn't always at the top when you clicked over as to what you thought you were going to see. So we just changed things around to make sure that what's on the main screen clearly reflects the first thing you're going to see when you click on that icon. I think one of those examples was teachers of color. When you clicked on that, you, it brought up inexperienced teachers, so we did a little flip on that so it brings up what you're expecting. We also worked on setting goals for several of these that we did not have. When we met with you in August, we had conversations particularly with Dr. Woods Tucker and Dr. Darnell, just to make sure that particularly around the equity goals, that we were on the right track, that we were keeping those goals challenging and yet achievable. So that was really a goal that we had set there. So those goals are all set now. As you go page to page, you'll see goals around all of those. The other thing we did was a look at every single one of the graphics and the descriptions under all the graphics, just to make sure that any questions that might arise about the graphic are answered right there in the descriptions underneath. So there's a little bit of work on that. And then our next steps are just to work on the indicators that we currently have that we do not have data for. Jason mentioned some of that this morning. So if you scroll to the very bottom of this homepage, you'll see there are four down there that say coming through, so we're going to be working on those to get some, some data in there, whether we have to collect that data or find other sources to be able to collect that. That's what we're moving on. And then also determining when and how often this dashboard should be updated. As you, as you look at all of this, it's very diverse data. So, you know, unlike the school report card, everything pretty much comes in at one time. But with the kind of data that we're collecting here, it's at different points during the year when we're collecting it. So we need to make that decision as to how often we want to update it. You know, is it going to be once a year? And what point of the year will that happen? So we'll be having those discussions in our leadership meetings moving forward. And then I also heard you all talking this morning that you want to give more consideration to students with disabilities and the underserved students. So my team will certainly be working on that and figure out how we get that in there as well. Those are the changes.
And it's growing up so nicely, and it really does look great on the small screen. Questions or feedback for Karen or Jason?
That's a feedback for Karen. It's amazing what you and Kevi Stetson put together on this post year. That's really impressive.
Kevi Stetson's been a great partner, and we feel like we throw a lot at them, and they're very responsive, so huge, huge to them.
And I would add my thanks for listening to us this morning and already making a plan about how to incorporate that. Thank you for that responsiveness. Randy?
So like, I'm on KD Strategic Dashboard, dual credit, and I've got increase in dual credit. How do I find out exactly how many kids, for example, took dual credit? Because it's got a percentage, but it doesn't really say like that.
You click that bridge, Meredith, so I can see it, dual credit. If we don't have it on there, I can make sure that we did.
So percentage, I mean, it's like percentage wise. I mean, I've been asked, you know, like how many, like, okay, we've got a gap between white and black by 9% person. But how many, like, total courses? Because I don't know how many enrolled in that. Can we get that raw data?
Yes, we can put that down in the description. That was one I thought we had it in there as a matter of fact, but we'll make sure we get that.
We also, I mean, when we used to, let's say when we were looking at AP in the past, before dual credit, we were looking at AP, growing the percentage of AP total, but also growing, there, there was a gap between the students moving, you should show us, for example. But we had an increase in the number of kids taking the, the overall AP. So it was hard to say. We were narrowing, we were growing African-American population taking AP, but it didn't show up as a percentage because we also had more whites taking it as a percentage. But we were actually growing, but it didn't look like we were growing.
Right, right.
Because the raw numbers of the percentage.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can get that for you. Maybe that we want to change, because if you could just change it on me.
Dual credit is in the school report card. So the number of students enrolled in the courses is on the school report card.
Per, for the state?
Yes.
Yeah, but we can, we can get it added into ours as well. And probably, it might be best if we put it down in where we have the trends. We have the percentages, I believe, in trends. Maybe what we need to do is get those, those raw numbers down in the trend as well. Well, we'll take a look at that.
Matter of fact, it's there. It's just a matter of going, you know, trending.
Sure.
Excellent. All right. Thank you for making the dream a reality here.
Yeah, it was great.
All right. Well, and we have all been waiting with bated breath. Katie, you just, Council Todd Allen will now share an important interview on this. Thank you, Todd. We put you off twice. We are thrilled that you are here. Thank you.
I assume that Dr. Brewer has my, I guess. I'll channel my indications to her to switch slides. Thank you all very much. I think I have 20 minutes, but we'll see if we can run through it much quicker. So this is deferred from the board's annual retreat, just an overview on the Chapter 11A Executive Branch Code of Ethics. Next slide. So when we talk about the big picture, what it is we're talking about, why we have a code of ethics, it is overall to ensure that there is confidence in our system of government. So public servants, which we all are, shall work for the benefit of the people of the Commonwealth. And there are four sub-bullet points there. Public office is a public trust that requires public servants to be independent and impartial. Decisions have to be made through an established process of government. We shall not use our public office to obtain private benefit. And the fourth and final one, which I think sums up the other three, is that the public has confidence in the integrity of its government and public service. So, you know, this is to ensure that we're not operating a system with bribes, kickbacks, corruption, things of that nature. I recently heard from someone who was, who didn't live in the United States and was impacted. His job was unfortunately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, and he was talking about what he did in the interim. And he said that he had to pay a bribe. And he said that he had to pay a bribe to the government in his home country so that he could be a school bus driver, $250. $250 US dollars in the country he was from was a lot of money. But he said it was normal. That's what you have to do to get, he's like, this exists everywhere. This is what we do. And I think not everywhere. And that's the reason that we have the system that exists. Next slide. So BOP trot in 1990 was an FBI investigation that gave rise to the code of ethics. Prior to that, we did not have an executive branch code of ethics. This involved bribes being paid to various members of the Kentucky General Assembly to vote either in opposition to or in favor of horse racing legislation that was introduced at that point in time. So they had marked bills, they were passing back and forth with members of the General Assembly to see who was, you know, getting paid on the side for their votes. And ultimately, it all came crashing down. And as a result, they enacted the Executive Branch Code of Ethics in 1992. There's also a legislative branch code of ethics that we will not talk about. It's not quite as strict as the one we have. Next slide. So all of the members of the Kentucky Board of Education by statute are not only public servants, but they are also officers. We have two classes of folks that we deal with with regard to the Executive Branch Code of Ethics. Public servants, that's all staff, employees of the Kentucky Department of Education and yourself. But then you may also be an officer. Kentucky Board of Education members are specifically included. So you have a few extra provisions that apply. Next slide. Obviously, you want to avoid conflicts of interest. That's what this is all about. Stepping back and thinking, is my personal interest somehow conflicted? Be it my outside employment, my personal financial investments, family members that I may have, gifts that I may receive? Those are the big areas that you want to be looking for. So no public servant by himself or through others shall use or attempt to use his influence in any manner which involves a substantial conflict between personal or private interests and your public duties. Use or attempt to use any means to influence a public agency, that is another public agency, derogation of the state at large. Use your official position or office to obtain some financial gain for yourself or members of your family. Or use or attempt to use your official position to secure or create privileges, exemptions, advantages, or treatments for yourself or others in derogation of the public interest at large. So if a public servant, us, appears before another state agency, we have to avoid all conduct, which might in any way lead members of the general public to conclude that we are using our official position to further our professional or private interests. So if I have a culvert that is in front of my house that's operated by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, I cannot go to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and use my official position as the general counsel for the Department of Education and State Board of Education to try to get some benefit that other members of the general public would not get. That is how members of the public lose confidence in our system. Next slide. We have a few examples. The Deputy Secretary of a Cabinet, and these are all real examples, by the way, based on advice that the Ethics Commission has given. Deputy Secretary of a Cabinet, that's an officer position like yours, is prohibited from calling subordinate employees to solicit campaign contributions from them based on their salary for the reelection of a constitutional officer. You know, old stories of people who worked in state government 100 years ago will tell you that whenever it's time for them to get their paycheck, they still got a paper paycheck. They had to have 10 or 20 bucks ready to give the person in exchange for their paycheck. And that went into the till to pay for the political campaign of the next person to be elected. That was before we had an executive branch code of ethics. Again, a Cabinet Secretary, an officer, may attend a conference hosted by a state vendor but must pay any fee charged to those in attendance. So you don't get treated differently. If others had to pay an entry fee, so do you. Next slide. Endorsements. This is one, we get asked quite frequently for endorsements, and we have to stop and not give those endorsements. Active endorsements are prohibited. So we cannot appear that we're endorsing or promoting a specific product or company that is, if that entity is regulated by or doing business with the agency. So obviously, we have a lot of vendors here at the department, and they may do great work for us, and they want to use our name to get additional business, to say, you know, we did great work for the Department of Education, so maybe the Indiana or Tennessee Department of Education will hire us as well. We can't do that. What we can give is what's called a passive endorsement. That's acceptable. Simply information that a contract existed, what the terms of the contract were, and whether or not the vendor satisfactorily performed the scope of the contract. But we cannot go out of our way to say, you know, one vendor is better than the other, somebody who's doing business with us is better than someone else. Next slide. A few more examples. Preferential treatment of family members. So here, public servants should not interview, recommend, that's the big one. Public servants can't recommend their family members for positions within their agency. They should not directly supervise, evaluate, or participate in disciplinary action related to a family member. There's definition there for family members. It's spouse, children, parents, all the grands, in-laws, steps, and halves. Abuse of state time and resources. An officer traveling to an approved out-of-state conference should not book a more expensive flight in order to travel to an additional location to combine business with pleasure. A public servant should not use his or her state-issued email address, cell phone, office space, and simply to run a private business on state time, even if she is getting her state work completed on time. So just a reminder about not utilizing state time and resources for personal use. Next slide. Disclosing information and self-dealing. Public servants shall not disclose any confidential information acquired in the course of official duties to further their own economic interests. And most of the information that we gather here is not confidential in nature. It is ultimately public information. But an example would be if the state board learned of a real estate, a piece of real estate that a school board was looking at, but it was still confidential that that was happening. You couldn't try to somehow manipulate that to, you know, gain an advantage in that way if you know the person who owns it. You know, maybe even on it, that would be a conflict as well. You needed to refuse yourself from. Public servants shall not receive directly or indirectly any interest or profit arising from the use of loan of public funds in the servant's hands or to be raised through any state agency. So you cannot privately benefit from interests or loans of public funds. You shall not act as a representative for the Commonwealth or any agency in the transaction of any business or regulatory action with yourself or any business in which the public servant or a member of his family has any interest greater than 5% of total value. Can't have a contract with the agency, hold bid-on negotiated contract with the agency. And you cannot accept compensation other than that provided by law for public servants for the performance of your official duties without the prior approval of the Ethics Commission. Next slide, we've got some examples of all of this. So the spouse, some of these come really, you know, straightforward, and you would not think that you would have to ask the Ethics Commission these questions, but they've been asked. The spouse of the director of the division responsible for telecommunications owns an interest of more than 5% in a communications company that does business with the division for which the director works. The spouse may retain an interest in the company up to a value of 5%, but must divest any interest owned over 5%. State employee cannot use her position to represent her agency in negotiations to have a business owned by her husband provide promotional products or events held by the agency. Finally, a Cabinet Secretary, again as an officer, is asked to give a commencement address at a state university. Part of that Cabinet Secretary's official duties involves speaking at commencement ceremonies. Without the approval of the Ethics Commission, the secretary may not accept payment for the speaking engagement. However, the university could reimburse the Cabinet Secretary's agency for time expenses. Next slide. Gifts. This is the one that people frequently ask us about. The general gift rule is that you, your spouse, or your dependent child shall not knowingly accept gifts or gratuities totaling a value of $25 in a single calendar year. That's the big one. You got to total it up over an entire calendar year. Any person or business that does business with, is regulated by, is seen who it brings from, is involved in litigation against, or is lobbying or attempting to influence the action of your state agency or from any group or association which has its primary purpose the representation of such person or business. Gifts are permitted from family member to family member. Door prizes that are available to the public. So if you go to an event, you win a door prize that's valued at $350. Congratulations. So long as that was available to everybody who attended the event, you keep it. It's not a gift in violation of the rules. Tickets for admission to sporting events, if you pay the face value of the tickets. So sometimes those tickets, you know, are, tend to be more valuable than their face value. If you pay the face value of the tickets, then it's not considered a prohibited gift. The waiver of a registration fee for a presenter at a conference training event. So if you're actually spending time preparing and giving a presentation, then you can have the registration fee for the conference training event waived. All gifts, even if allowable from a single source received by an officer, which exceed $200 in value, should be disclosed on your statement of financial disclosure. Recall that you will have to file that every year. And if you receive any gifts that are permitted, such as from family members that exceed $200 in value, they should be included on your statement of financial disclosure. Next slide. If you accepted a gift, this is, seems to happen frequently with gifts. You know, if you go speak somewhere, you open the gift up. When you get home, they can be a vessel bag, and you think it's going to be an ink pen and a pencil, and it turns out to be over $25 in value. Fret not, you can return the gift to the giver. You can pay the giver the market value of the gift. If those don't work, what we call, you know, kind of like the perishable gift exception. It's food or something of that nature. Donate the gift to charity. Destroy the gift. In either event, document how you disposed of it. Next slide. So a few examples. Cabinet Secretary cannot accept reimbursement for the cost of attending a program sponsored by a national association that represents entities regulated by the agency. Because the reimbursement for travel expense in excess of $25 in a calendar year may not be accepted from a business regulated by the agency. Here's another one that talks about the gift. A Cabinet Secretary receives a painting worth $300 in value from an old college friend who has no business or regulatory relationship with the state. It's fine, you can accept that gift. However, the officer may accept the painting but must report the gift on the statement of financial disclosure. That's an acceptable gift because the person has no relationship with the agency. Abstaining from a decision. So this is how you avoid conflicts. If a matter comes before you as a board for a decision and you recognize that you're somehow conflicted in some way, whether it's because of familial relationship, because of personal financial investment, because of outside employment, because of some previous action that you've taken on the matter, this is how you ultimately avoid the conflict, is by abstaining. In determining whether to abstain from action on an official decision, a public servant should consider the following. Independence of judgment, can you be independent? Public confidence, if you did vote on the matter, would it destroy the public confidence in the decision-making process? Would your participation have any significant effect on the disposition of the matter? Do you have special knowledge of the matter that really requires you to make a decision? And would you voting on the matter and the impact have an effect on you that's different from the public at large? Those are the matters to consider. When you do abstain from action, the public servant shall disclose to the body in the situation that you may have a personal or private interest in the matter, and therefore you are abstaining. Next slide. Okay. I didn't time myself, but hopefully that's less than 20 minutes. Helps only if called away. If you're in doubt, always ask before you act. I always serve as the Ethics Officer for the agency, and I'm happy to talk you through any situations that you may have, review resources that we have from the Ethics Commission. And if I don't know the answer, then I will work with you on getting in touch with the Executive Branch Ethics Commission. They're very helpful. They can answer our questions informally. And we can also request formal advisory opinions from them. The good thing about the formal advisory opinion is that it provides you some level of protection and cover in the event that there's a question later on down the road about the ethics of an issue. If you comply with the advice given to you in that advisory opinion, you're off the hook, you're covered. So I'll pause there. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Very helpful. And Todd, I genuinely appreciate your willingness to answer those questions and what ifs. Appreciate that so much. Thank you so much. And Todd, you stay in the seat. And the next item is the Hearing Officer's Report.
Yes, we have posted in the portal, the public portal, the Hearing Officer's Report. That's an update on all of your regulations that have been filed and how they're moving through the process, as well as the ones that have become effective.
And so I noted that is in your portal, the first item. Statement of consideration for 702K AR-1, Poland 191, emergency.
Okay, okay. So next item up is the Statement of Consideration. That's okay. We do have the Hearing Officer's Report there if you have any questions, but it's not an action item. The action item, Statement of Consideration.
Doop-wop, doop-wop.
This one's District Employee Quarantine Leave. The comment period for this regulation just closed at the end of September. We received comments from two commenters. And I will turn it over to Matt and Robin to summarize those, as well as the recommended Statement of Consideration.
Yeah, I think we had one comment, one comment in writing and one from a person who attended in person. This is about the emergency regulation for quarantine leave. The first commenter believes the regulation's requirement that employees must be vaccinated to be eligible for quarantine leave should be removed because vaccines are unsafe and dangerous for certain individuals. The agency did review this comment, and we are not going to be recommending amending the regulation. The regulation does provide quarantine leave for vaccinated employees and includes exceptions, as we had shared with the board before when we were first before you, for employees that are medically unable to receive a vaccine or if they have that sincerely held religious objection to the vaccine. The vaccine requirement is considered, is consistent with the Center for Disease Control recommendations that individuals be vaccinated against the coronavirus. And if they choose not to receive a vaccine, they can use sick days for quarantine. The second commenter, too, is in person, believes that the regulation should include a requirement that local school districts provide additional leave days for employees that test positive for COVID-19. We did, again, review this recommendation and are not recommending amending the regulation. The regulation provides leave for school district employees replacing quarantine, not sick leave. So there was no leave specifically for an employee in a quarantine status, which is why we did the emergency regulation in the first place. School districts are statutorily required to provide those 10 minimum sick days, and they can provide additional sick days as well. They do bear the cost of employee leave, and we've left that decision as a local decision at this time. So those are the two comments that we received and the action that the agency has recommended.
So you'll see that you have a Statement of Consideration in the portal that's marked not amended after comments. The agency is not recommending that the board make any changes to the regulation based on the comments received.
Any questions for Todd, Matt, or Robin?
I do have a question, and it's not directly related to this. It's a little tangential. I received a question from somebody who was asking me about who they should talk to if they have been told by a doctor to go into quarantine because of exposure. However, their school is saying that they cannot get the 10 days. What should that person do? How should they follow up? Because I have heard that not only from this person, but from a couple other people as well.
So in that situation, if a person is vaccinated.
Yes.
And they have a signed statement from a treaty physician indicating that they need to quarantine, at that point in time, they would qualify for the quarantine leave under this regulation. I think they need to contact Human Resources to talk about that. Now, Human Resources can tell them that three to five days of exposure, that they need to get a follow-up test to determine whether or not they would return to working in the quarantine period. That's why, the district does have that ability. But I guess the short answer to your question is, I think that person needs to be working with Human Resources if they're not getting any help or satisfaction at the building level with regard to that.
I guess I think they have worked with. I guess I think they have worked with Human Resources, and they're being told by the district office that they need to return to work despite the medical note. Is that, I mean, so I, I'm like, I'm sort of, like, I don't know.
There is one other possibility, without knowing the exact facts and circumstances. You know, if they are asymptomatic, and the school district has a way for them to perform their job responsibilities remotely, they could require them to do that. However, if, I mean, we would be happy to call the district and just inquire. You know, it's always hard to know what their facts and circumstances are, you know, and share the provisions of the emergency regulations that are in place. It may just be a confusion matter of whether they are actually eligible, we'd be happy to do that.
Sometimes the requirement, service sort of, or, you know, [inaudible]. Just clarifying, on the surface, it sounds like they qualify.
Right, I mean, and, yeah, but, you know, they were saying, well, who should I contact? And I'm like, well, I just called KBE.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
We regularly receive questions at our COVID-19 mailbox, and so if they would like to just send an email to that mailbox, we can give you that address, and then Matt is our COVID-19 at the end of the COVID mailbox. And we, and then we assign that to people in our, in our office to respond on those.
You know, under the new thing, if, given that question there, if they have the test at state program for students, are they allowed to use that for adults too, or?
Our understanding is no, they're not. Not through the Department for Public Health, the guidance and suggestions they've given. It's not the same test at state program. I guess, I defer to Todd for the second part of that, they may use something different, but under the test at state program that is modeled by the Department for Public Health, it is only for students.
I guess our regulation anticipates test to return, test to return only three to five days. If you get a test at state, then the district could have you return.
But under, under CDC guidelines right now, or not CDC guidelines, but if you did have the doctor telling you that you should quarantine, even vaccinated, right now you agree to go to work or?
Oh, yeah.
So it's got to be, you've got to have a doctor's statement saying.
Yeah, and of course, of course, you'd want to be asymptomatic.
I think that's where, yes. That's why they need to call, because you never know what.
So we'd be happy to answer that question.
Were you going to offer a motion?
I will. I would offer a motion that we approve the statement of consideration for 702 KAR 1: 191 E.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Thank you, Ms. Matt. On the motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. And Todd, you may have the whole team stay there with you, it looks like. And the second statement of consideration is for 702 KAR 7:150, home or hospital instruction.
Yes, this comment period for this regulation, and then at the end of August, we received one comment from one commenter regarding this regulation, and it was just a minor tweak, I think, based on some language regarding students continuing to be held for home hospital instruction if they were working, playing sports, or participating in extracurricular activities. The agency is recommending a change to the regulation based on the one comment received. I'll turn that over to Matt McRobbin.
Sure. So the home hospital regulation, going back several iterations, has had a prohibition against people participating in extracurricular activities or working if they're on home hospital. In this, the newest addition, we carved out and made that only applicable to gen ed kids, not kids with IEPs, thinking, feeling that if their IEP dictated something different, then you should be instructing based on the IEP. What we failed to consider was section 504 kids. So the commenter brought that to our attention and said, hey, there could be a situation where a section 504 kid, and that's section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, which provides some rights for kids with certain disabilities. So what we did is we just then went in and made a carve-out for section 504 kids, so it's not applicable to section 504 kids, if their plan says that they should be working or are able to participate in extracurricular activities.
Excellent, good catch there. Any questions for the team? Hearing none. That motion would read, "To approve the statement of consideration for 702 KAR 7:150, home or hospital instruction and the proposed amendments after comments." Do I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bloodworth, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you so much. Matt and Robyn, you're almost ready to run for the hills. The next item from, Todd, is the litigation report.
Thank you. Yes, we've posted an updated litigation report in your secure portal. That reports to the board on all of the pending litigation matters. That is an attorney-client privilege confidential document, so it's in the secure portal. All of the changes since the last time you received the report appear in bold font. I don't think there are any matters that require more action at this time, but in the event that you have questions about any matters, we can go into closed session and answer those.
You had a chance to review the litigation report. Any questions for Todd that you would need to address in this closed session? All right, hearing none, thank you so much. And it has been a long day. The team helped us catch up within 15 minutes, nice job, friends, but I don't want to cut corners on the opportunity for board members to share. Any items of interest or for the common good, please take a moment and share those with us at this time.
I'm born a little bit. Please be sure and register for the education summit if you haven't, and we've got information up around hotel, lodging deals, the United Inn, so we hope to see you all there, we're excited about that.
Excellent, thank you. I'm registered.
[inaudible]. Agenda, yeah. We'll make sure that you get that, it's an event right site, the registration, everything is here, so I'll make sure that you get that.
Dr. Johnson?
I want to call out and acknowledge the voice of students and Soliana's participation and leadership therein. She will be working on, presenting on the panel tomorrow on this very issue. I mean, the irony of having a senior at Eastern High School serving on the board when a student from Eastern High School experienced death at the hand of, in the process of just street violence, physical street violence. And to me, I thought, oh, Lord, these kids, they must be changing organisms because they deal with so much trauma. But the truth is, they wish for peace. They are not accepting violence as their norm and something that they have to get used to. So I just hope they can give us some leadership and understanding how to get there. So Soliana, thank you for your voice on the board.
And what's the event?
Oh, it's, it's an event sponsored by the Courier-Journal about youth messages, or it's gone by.
Excellent. They represent us so well.
I also have one thing. The FASF is out, I don't know how to say it, but I know it's important.
We knew what you meant.
So, yeah, it's very important, especially for seniors and those in post-secondary, so. Pull that up, possibly ten.
Go wait, pull up the FASF. Quickly, just a thank you to the board for allowing me to participate in the NASB conference, Claire, I think maybe you are too, we'll get more to the start of that, certainly, and I did have the opportunity to meet a woman named Denise Placido, Kentucky School for the Blind, charitable foundation, had a lovely chance to talk to her, and just to reiterate, this board has talked about having a roadshow meeting at the Kentucky School for the Blind and Kentucky School for the Deaf, and we look forward to that. I know you all like to see those permanent actions and learn more about their challenges and great work, so it was a great chance to get to talk to her.
I think they're counting on our support in the upcoming legislative session.
That's right. Lots of needs there. All right. Okay, thank you, everyone, for another productive meeting, for all the prep work that went into that, Dr. Brewer, Dr. Glass, and others. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn all the meeting.
Still me.
Thank you, Patrice, do we have a second? Second, an exhausted second, [inaudible], thank you so much. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you all so much.